Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our 2022 council staff retreat. A little different setting, but we felt like it was important to come out here to Upper Road, where we're seeing large amounts of development and growth. And this is part of our city, and it's becoming an integral part of our city. So I felt like it was a good opportunity to be in this area and hold our retreat. So I hope you enjoy the day. We've got the agenda up, and I think the day's a little different than what we've done in the past. It'll be a lot about sharing information. I feel like I have put together three pretty good panels, or very good panels, of experts associated with different topics. We'll start out with sense of place this morning, and then ultimately move to housing, and then DOT, and then we'll close the day with just some conversation with the city council. But I have asked the panelists to be prepared to discuss various topics. This morning, again, is about sense of place, about creating open space, protecting open space, how we think about parks and recreation as it goes into the future. But they've got some comments we're gonna make, but it's really food for thought. And I hope that particularly the council members who are sitting up front here will have an interactive conversation with our panelists throughout the day, and that we can have a conversation. Because the reason we put this retreat together is about, I've been thinking and absorbing all the questions that the council have asked of me and asked of staff as it relates to growth, and what is this, what is our community gonna look like going forward? So that is the theme for the day, is to think about how we balance our community with growth and help to give council information as they're making decisions going forward. Because after this retreat, we're gonna immediately jump right into updating our comprehensive plan. And I think hopefully the information you hear today will give, the council will be able to give staff direction on how to move forward with updating the comprehensive plan. What are you looking for in your comprehensive plan? Because we heard from Holly Springs and Matthews, that comprehensive plan is the foundation for our zoning ordinance, our subdivision ordinance, and how you want the city to grow. So hopefully we'll give you that foundation today, that information. But we wanted to be conversational, hence the way we set up everything today. So I'll stop right there. Warren, anything you wanna add at this point?
No, John, just a morning, everybody. And my role would be to just help keep on track for our sessions. We also have a discussion after our panels this afternoon, so you'll have a chance to really think about what do we take away from this? What do we, well, how do we wanna apply this? So we'll have a chance this afternoon. And, you know, just would encourage you, maybe, John, if just, if we could go just around, you've had a chance to hear from peer towns and communities. You've had a chance to take photos and do some pre-thinking about today. And we'd like to just open up to all of you if there are hopes or expectations you have for today, what you really wanna get out of today's discussions before we start. I would like to just use this opportunity to take a few moments, open it up. Any hopes or expectations that you have for the work that you're gonna be doing today?
I know we're gonna get a variety of opinions on things, which is important. I think that what you hear from people is they don't want anything to change. And it's going to change. And we've got to hopefully get input on how we can do that, but still maintain that sense of place that everybody loves. It's a challenge, but we've got to figure out how to do that.
I think I'll echo what the mayor said, was that for me, it's, what makes Hendersonville so special is this small-town feel of ambiance of it. And so how do we balance growth with maintaining that small-town feeling? And what makes Hendersonville so special? That's why everybody comes. So I know there's a way to do it. I think, you know, we'll learn more after today as far as how we can help achieve that balance. But I think that balance is the most important thing, is we get more.
I'm just grateful for all the panelists, because we have basically professionals in every division of the things that we are concerned are talking about. And so, you know, just having the experts in those areas give us input and give us data to hopefully kind of drive decisions that can be successful in all aspects of the community. So I'm grateful to hear from all the panels that are coming here today.
Growth and development is good. I just hope that this will be impactful for me. I'm newly elected deputy round tree, new council. And I just think that we need to look to the future and accommodate and meet the needs of people. Growth is good, like I said, but we need to accommodate and meet the needs of people.
I think in driving around doing a picture assignment, I noticed a lot of good things happening, you know, as far as the developments that have taken place. And so I think we're certainly not here to reinvent the wheel, but we'd like to keep it smooth as it's, you know, going along the road. So I suppose getting the rough edges off was, you know, what we're tasked to do. So I look forward to that.
Thank you. Well, let me introduce our first panel this morning. I'm trying to help Allison out, so I'll move around a little bit. So we'll start, our first presenter will be Hunter Marks. Hunter is a local landscape architect that many of us know and has done some work for the city. So he's gonna bring a perspective from the landscape architect field, about open space and how we can use it in and amongst development, but also preserving it and creating parks and those kind of things. So Hunter will talk about that. He'll go first. Judy Francis is with Recreation Resource Services, which is a organization, a statewide organization out of NC State University. Right, is that right?
It's a partnership with State Parks and NC State.
They provide advice to us, to the local governments, when we're working through part-of-grants and applications, and providing advice as it relates to parks and recreation, and how communities can use that department and that profession to benefit or create open space. So Judy will talk about it from that perspective. Then Kieran Rowe is with Conserving Carolina. And one of the things that we, as we've been going through our current comprehensive plan, one of the suggestions back when that plan was put into place was a city looking for ways to preserve open space, conserve space. And Karen, I've asked Karen to talk a little bit about how we can use conservation easements, how we can conserve property in the city, even with the growth, and maybe work with, my crazy idea is maybe work with developers to, if they have space that is not usable, can they then put it in a conservation easement to protect it going forward? And deal with the concern that you're hearing from the public and that you may yourself have is how we preserve the green space we have in the community. So that's kind of the first panel this morning. But again, so I welcome our folks, and thanks for joining us. So Hunter, I'm gonna jump it off with you. And as you just, the initial softball questionnaires is, from a landscape architect perspective, how do you feel that we can use our open space, use green space to really create that sense of place in our community and work with our own property, but also developers to really preserve what is such great, what is great for our community?
Well, I'm Hunter Marks, I'm a landscape architect. I don't think, just everybody, and I appreciate y'all having to hear that. And so, and I don't really wanna present anything. I just wanna, as John said, have the opportunity for Round Table and answer questions to try thinking about. As Barbara, Barbara made an excellent point. Hendersonville's growing, no matter if we like it or not, folks are coming here. How do we, how do we get ahead of that? How do we grow in a way that we want to, to preserve what is great about Hendersonville without letting just the market forces determine that for us? To have some kind of a vision to work with, work with developers and do people to come, but not just to have it happen willy-nilly, to have a vision, to have a plan. And Lou is a fellow landscape architect. If I get off course, you stop me, okay? I wanted to talk about, and particularly, let's talk about sense of place. That's one of the things that makes Hendersonville special. That's one of the things that draws people here. And so I've tried to think about, let's look at some other places that have had challenges over time, but have really developed that sense of place. And one of them is Charleston. Think of Charleston. Back in the twenties and thirties, Charleston was still recovering from the Civil War. They were very, not very prosperous. And the first preservation society in the U.S. was established in Charleston. And Charleston has, over the years, developed with that historic nucleus. Charleston's become a special place. When you're in Charleston, you know you're in Charleston. It's developed that sense of place with the history. They've taken the assets they've got, the historical structures, all the history that's happened there. And they have developed that, and preserved that, strengthened that. Let's take another example. Let's take Chattanooga. Before I moved here, that's where I came from. Chattanooga was known as the dirtiest city in the South, Pittsburgh of the South. It was awful. The story when I was there was that in the sixties and seventies, folks that worked downtown would take an extra shirt, because at lunchtime their collar would be gray with soot, and they would change shirts. In the eighties, a group of people had a vision, and they said, you know, we can do more. You know, the river is here, look out, mountain is here. We've got this great opportunity, let's do something with it. And so they created a vision, and they established the Riverwalk, the Tennessee Aquarium. And if you've been to Chattanooga in the last few years, you know Chattanooga's a pretty amazing place. They have done some great things, and they have created that sense of place where people want to come there. And the other one, which I think has a little bit of similarities to the opportunities we have in Hendersonville, is San Antonio. The San Antonio River was basically just a, in the twenties and thirties, a drainage ditch. And there was all kinds of flooding problems, a lot of issues. Someone had the vision to take part of that, and it flowed right through downtown, right by the Alamo. And we can take this and make it into an amenity. And they've created the nucleus of the Riverwalk, which was started in the thirties. If you've ever been to San Antonio, that's an amazing place. They had a vision, they followed up on that vision. It's a long-term thing, you know, a lot of these started years and years ago, and it's an ongoing process. And so, when I think of Hendersonville, now we've got something these other three places didn't have. They all had challenges. They were all kind of starting behind the eight ball, and we've already got a special place. We've already got that vision. And I think, and every time I drive by Motor Creek, I think, you know, this could be our version of the Riverwalk. You know, we've got historic buildings. But the core of the thought is, is let's have a vision, it's gonna take years. It could be fifty years, it could be a hundred years. But let's have that vision, and so that we just don't let things happen to us, because they're gonna happen. People are coming, doesn't matter. Let's make them happen the way we want them to happen. So that's what I wanted to focus on, so.
Great, great introduction, Hunter, and just great thought. And I've got some questions I wanna ask you. But let's, let's, let's hear from each panelist, and then let's have a conversation between the couple of questions I have, and then maybe with the city council too, because I wanna tap into all your expertise. So Judy, if you'll take a minute, and feel free to keep your seat, stand up, whichever you're most comfortable. Talk about how parks and recreation professionals, how cities have used parks and recreation to create this sense of place, and how, you know, the fact that, you know, we had a Parks and Recreation Department back in the day, and now have moved away from organized sports. We do a really good job with maintenance of parks and things, so there's not a lot of, in our mind and from a staff perspective, planning and things kind of come as an afterthought for us. And so maybe talk about from your perspective about parks and recreation, and how that profession helps create that sense of place in the community.
Well, just first, I wanna give you an example of rapid change. Just to give you a little bit of insight, I don't like to admit this to North Carolina audiences, but I was raised in Florida, and specifically Orlando, Florida. And please don't take that outside this room. But, and I'll give away my age here a little bit. But when my family moved to Orlando, Florida, from where we lived in Texas, it was 1970, and the population of Orange County was 344,000 people. Do you know what the population of Orange County is now? I wrote it down yesterday, and it was about Florida. This is just Orange County. 1,429,188 people. That's less than 50, right around 50, okay? So going back to what our first speaker said, change does happen. People are coming, and you better get ready for it. Make that change that's coming. Now, not everybody's gonna have a Disney World plopped down in the middle of the community, okay? We know that. Hendersonville's probably not gonna be getting a call from the Disney company, and thank God for it. But there are gonna be some fabulous opportunities coming your way. And you should be ready to welcome those opportunities. But there's gonna be some crappy ones coming your way too. And you should be, you know, pooping on those. One of the opportunities that you should be rolling out the red carpet for are the opportunities that parks and recreation provide. Because parks and recreation is not just a health benefit. It's not just for team sports. It's an economic development opportunity for your community. And it's a branding opportunity. When you think of parks and recreation, what do you think of? Is it just a ball field? Is it just something for seniors to have a walking track? Is it a weight room? Is it a yoga studio? Or is it a lifestyle? Is it how you envision Western North Carolina? As an outdoor lifestyle? Because that's how the rest of the world is seeing Western North Carolina now. And that's what Henderson, that's the program Hendersonville needs to get with, if you haven't already. So parks and recreation is an integral part of your comprehensive plan. And if it's not there already, it needs to be now. Couple of points I wanna make to you about parks. Why are they important? Well, obviously, you need to be looking at what your population and demographic needs are for what kind of space you need to have. How many ball fields do you need? Okay? That entails space. Do you have space for that? If not, you need to allocate it. What kind of partnership opportunities can you have with the county to provide those spaces? It's not just Hendersonville's role to provide all that. You can partner with the county, or private entities, schools. But kids need stuff, and it's not just kids, it's adults. Passive recreation. Where are people walking? What are those passive needs? Do you have enough facilities to, you know, provide for that already? We know that our demographics are changing. Your comprehensive plan is going to reveal more and more about how the demographics of not just Hendersonville, but all the people in Henderson County and the Hinterlands are coming to Hendersonville to utilize recreation opportunities here. Remember, you may see Hendersonville's boundary discreetly, but the people that live around here don't. So they're gonna be coming from Flat Rock, they're gonna be coming from all the other incorporated municipalities. So really, your recreation programming has to, you know, recognize that. Who are you serving? What are their needs? And what are their needs gonna be over time? Because if you're just looking at a very small, you know, like, segment of timeline, right now, you're gonna get slammed, because those changes are happening fast. We're gonna be looking, when part of the grant program that I work with, we want your recreation plan to be looking at at least a ten-year window. And most people are updating that every five years. That's how fast things are changing. One of the things also that I think it's important for you to recognize is that recreation is also part of something that's a little bit harder to quantify, and that's community pride. And I think when you start, if you're starting a comprehensive planning process, you'll easily see this when you go into your community meetings. Because when you start asking people things like, what are you most proud of in your community? One of the first things that you're gonna come, one, probably one of the responses that you'll see most frequently is either they're most proud of their parks, or they're most proud of the other people in their community. Either the response is gonna be, it's beautiful here, or everybody's nice. Those are the two responses that you're gonna see most frequently. And parks is a huge part of that. That open space protection is a huge part of that, and Karen will talk about that more. But really, do not discount the role of parks in that pride, that community cohesiveness through pride. Because at a time when there is so much division in our communities along political disagreements and, you know, this divisiveness on so many issues, one of the things that, I mean, you're not gonna find very much disagreement on parks and recreation. It is one of the few things that everybody loves. And there has never been a time, especially during COVID, when parks was one of the few places that everybody could come together and enjoy, that, you know, parks was one of the places that brought us together. So I urge you to really make sure that parks and recreation has a prominent place in your public outreach and in your comprehensive planning efforts.
Thank you. It's a great introduction. Thank you. Kieran, take a few seconds, a few minutes, and talk about what you do at Conserving Carolina, and also how the whole conservation easement, protecting open space, and the importance of that.
Stand up so I can see the councilwoman, Round Tree. So thank you, John, and thank you all for letting me join you here this morning. And then thank you all for talking about this issue that my organization exists really because people see the importance of conserving open land, conserving natural resources, farms, forests, parks, trails, greenways. We're excited about the Acusa Trail, starting right here in Hendersonville, being one fantastic destination on one end of that project. So thank you for all you've already been doing to create some parks and recreational opportunities for people and to partner with Conserving Carolina and others on that. So who is Conserving Carolina? For those of you who are not familiar, we're a local nonprofit organization. Our office is here in Hendersonville. We work in Henderson, Transylvania, Polk Counties primarily. And the core of our mission is conservation of lands and natural resources. We do that in a variety of ways. John has mentioned the term conservation easements a few times. For those of you, for those of you who are not familiar with that, it's a way of protecting land, keeping it from being developed, keeping it as farms, forests, natural areas, by signing a legal agreement with typically a private landowner. We've done that, probably, getting close to 200 conservation easements in this region that we're working in. Some of them as large as 3,000 acres. The Green River Preserve Summer Camp in Southern Henderson County to a .3-acre conservation easement heading Upward Road. As it turns into Highland Lake Road, there's a little population of the state's rarest plant up there. So every one of those easements is customized to the property and the natural resources that we're working to protect, and to the interests and goals of the landowners we're working with. So we tend to do those more in the more rural parts of this community. We haven't done very many within the city limits in Hendersonville. But it's certainly a possibility, and we're certainly interested in the idea of finding ways to incentivize, create greater incentives for developers, and other landowners within the city to do that. One of the members of my board is Mike Ekin, who I know is past city attorney for Hendersonville, and he's got a lot of both support of open space and conservation, but also knowledge of how these things can be worked into local ordinances. He and I were talking about, there's a disincentive right now for owners that, for developers, to donate land for conservation. As you all know, around here, many times attractive land will have a wetland, or a stream, or a steep area that makes it hard to develop. There are opportunities there for permanently donating that to conservation, or tying it into a trail and greenway system. But because of the density bonuses that they get from owning a wired piece of land, it's a disincentive for them to donate away for conservation. And Mike, for one, thinks that there are ways that you all can write your ordinances so we get rid of that disincentive. There's, if it's donated for conservation or to a qualified conservation organization, that is something that they wouldn't lose the density bonuses for. So there are a lot of ideas out there about little tweaks you can make that would create more opportunities for this kind of thing. But I just wanna build on what the earlier speaker said, and I think the theme is kind of looking proactively, looking long-term. I think a lot of decisions are made in a kind of a reactive way. And just as someone who reads the news around here, it feels like there's a lot of new residential development projects being proposed, and a lot of community reaction, you know, all over the board. But there's a lot of, you know, we don't want more development. And, you know, there's always a balance to strike, as some of the people have said. But my organization is about not waiting to the point where the proposal, the development is proposed, but rather looking further out to the future. Where are those places in our community that are valuable to conserve? So that we don't, so we don't lose those opportunities. So I encourage you all, and I know you're launching into a planning process, to really, as the other speakers have said, try to identify those places that you, everything, change is coming, development is coming, but where are those places that we don't wanna lose? So those are some thoughts that I've, I'll mention as an example. And John's tired of hearing me talk about a place on Long John Mountain that I've mentioned to the mayor as well in the past. Someone donated to us about a 50-acre parcel of land right on the summit of Long John. There's a neighbor that gets us out to a public road that has... that has expressed their very strong interest in selling for conservation. And if we could acquire that other tract, we'd have the opportunity to create, I think, a signature park for Hendersonville. You'd be protecting the top, the entire summit of Long John Mountain, which would be a scenic resource. You'd always have that visual peak that is protected for the city. Judy talked about passive recreation. It would be a destination for people to go. It would be ball fields, it'd be a place, it'd be Hendersonville's jump-off rock park in some ways, magnificent views. So, and it would be unique to this, to this community. So that's an example of the kind of places that Conserving Carolina would love to work with the city. As Judy and I partner with many, many communities in this region, developing parks and rec proposals, submitting Park and Recreation Trust fund grants. We'd love to work with you all, help raise money, private dollars to match public grant dollars. There are opportunities out there. But I guess the overarching message for me would be, do the work to identify what you want to preserve. And then we'll be glad to partner with you and others to try to make some of those things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. So I'm going to come back to Hunter. Hunter, you talked a little bit about creating this vision and what Chattanooga and Charleston and some other places have done. Talk a little bit more, you know, we've done some initial planning as it relates to a downtown park. And also, you and I have had some conversations too about, you know, and I've got the map here on the corner as it relates to city owned parcels, but also shows floodplains and greenways. And with the Acusta Trail and the linear parks that we have in Acusta and Oklahua, from your perspective, what are some things that, you know, you would suggest that maybe the city look at going forward? And then how we create that vision in that long-term? Because this is a long-term game. This is not something we're going to do in the next five years. This is really a 30, 40, 50, 100-year process, particularly as we relate to the comprehensive plan. Give us some thoughts from your landscape, architect experience, and your love of the community and other places that you live.
Well, you know, as I said before, we're not starting so far behind like a lot of the other cities. We've got some great things. We've got the Acusta Trail coming along. We've got the Oklahua Greenway. Even though, even though the city doesn't, we do have Jackson Park. We've got a huge park adjacent to downtown. We've got, you know, Southside Park, which we really haven't done anything with, but we've got a lot of opportunity there. We've talked about the opportunity for a larger park downtown in Hendersonville. We've had a few discussions about that. And I want to mention, along those lines, there was a guy named William White. I know a believer knows about him. He was in New York in the 60s. And he made this documentary, it's called The Social Life of Public Spaces. And you ought to watch it sometime, you can get it on YouTube. It's really well done, it's humorous. And he talks about how people are attracted to people. Because think about, think about Main Street. If you get on Main Street on the Sunday morning and there's nobody there, would you rather be there there then, or would you rather be in there on Saturday night when there's lots of people down there? Sometimes there can be too many people to know. You know, people are attracted to people. And these common spaces, it's not just parks, it's main streets, it's trails. They provide a place for community to come together, for interaction, for understanding and communication, and that's important. And Hendersonville, again, has these opportunities. They've got great, great things now. The opportunity for more open space and green space, particularly related to the core of Hendersonville, is important. When we were investigating the idea of a park that had, we talked to several other municipalities around the state, one of which was Salisbury. And Salisbury has a new park called Bell Tower Park. And it's pretty amazing. And I can't remember the guy's name, John knows it. He, boy, he's a ball of fire. And he was all about this park and how the community has come together. And it creates a central place, the community people are proud of it. He talked about how, I think it was the girl's soccer team won the state championship several years ago, and they came back. And there was no place for the community to greet him. They greeted him in the Walmart parking lot. Well, this provides a place where community events, recreation, all that can happen as a core for the city. And those are important. They're important. They're investments in our community, just like anything else. I wanted to say one other thing to Karen's comment about, he said something about there's places we don't want to lose. And so I want to say a dirty word, at least a dirty word to some people. And that's called, that's density. And from my perspective as a landscape architect, but also as a resident of Hendersonville, Henderson County, if somebody could ask me one thing we need to do to create our vision and to further what we want is density. We have got to have density in places that we identify that it's needed so we can preserve the places, as Karen said, that we don't want to lose. We can preserve the farmland, we can preserve the natural spaces, we can preserve the visual beauty, all these things that people love about Hendersonville County. My neighbors don't like it. And I know, I'll mention another uncomfortable thing. I know the Greenville Highway thing that just happened with the 70 units, that's a lot of people. But if you look at the big picture, that's the kind of thing that needs to happen in Hendersonville. Those folks can walk to the grocery store, it's walkable, they can walk to the Acusta Trail. That's, you know, I hope there's not people who live, Bill Ross is not here. But in my opinion, as a landscape architect, that's what needs to happen. So.
Thank you.
Picked enough scabs.
This is about having a conversation. Let me, let me jump over to Judy for a minute. Judy, as we were preparing for this, we talked about, and then Hunter and Karen both mentioned PARTOF. There's kind of, this is kind of a two-part question. You know, PARTOF is very, very competitive. We've been fortunate enough, thanks to the great work of our engineering department, and Brendan Shannonham got the PARTOF grant for the next phase of the Oklahua Greenway. But talk a little bit about, from your experience working with that funding source and that grant, about the competitiveness of it and some of the things that the committee really looks for for to submit a competitive application. And even though, and I'll follow the, even though we have gotten PARTOF grants, there's some things that we're probably missing in potential future applications that you and I talked about, that you may want to make sure the council's aware that we need to be thinking about and need to be doing. So talk a little bit about PARTOF and the process and what we really need to be thinking about.
So, Parks and Recreation Trust fund grants are super competitive and becoming more so. You may have heard that the General Assembly did allocate an extraordinary amount of money for the PARTOF in the last biennium, in which we're going into the second cycle this deadline, which is in May. We have no sense that we're going to get a budget like that in future cycles, but it would be nice if we did. But we don't know that. Even with that enhanced budget from the General Assembly, the applications are still super competitive. For those of you who are not familiar with PARTOF, the applications you can apply for are up to $500,000, and it's 50/50 match. PARTOF is pretty lenient with what you can use for match, which is pretty much anything state, local, or federal dollars, but not any kind. So it's a pretty easy grant to work with. But we have a pretty strict scoring way that grants are evaluated. And one of the things, in fact, probably the most important thing that you can do to make your grant competitiveness, particularly with this group of authority members who are really looking at applications, is your planning documents. And there's three sets of planning documents that we want you to submit with the applications. One is your jurisdiction-wide comprehensive recreation plan. The second is a site-specific plan for whatever park it is you're applying for. You know? So if you're, if you're doing a, you know, a 40-acre park, we want a site-specific plan for that park. In addition to your City of Hendersonville Recreation Master Plan. And then the third one is a capital improvements plan that shows that recreation capital improvements are part of your overall budgeting, capital budgeting for the city at large. It continues to stagger the imagination how many local governments in North Carolina are still not doing capital budgeting. Hopefully you're not one of them, but.
We're definitely doing it.
Thank you. But there are many who are not. And, but anyways, you will get points on your PARTOF application because you're doing capital budgeting and because recreation capital improvements are in that budget. So. In addition to that, you're scored by what kind of recreational amenities you're asking for, whether or not you have a professional recreation department. Okay? If you have professional recreation department, you get a certain number of points. If you have a public works department that does your recreation management, then there's a certain number of points, which is only half as much. If you hire Joe Blow, the ragman, to come mow your grass, then there's only a few points. I strongly urge you to consider at some point in the future, if you're getting into the parks and recreation business seriously, to hire recreation professionals. Engineers are wonderful people, and I love them dearly. But recreation is not what they're trained to do. They may love to do parks and recreation on the weekend with their wives and kids, or husbands and kids, but they're engineers. Parks and recreation is a professional genre, the same as accounting or any other professional sector. And if you are going to have parks, you need to have a Parks and Recreation Department. Something to think about as you're getting into your comprehensive plan. Some other things to consider as you're going into your recreation planning is, you will get extra points on your PARTOF applications if there are connections of your parks to existing greenways, or if there are connections to existing trail networks or sidewalk networks. Because you're an urban environment, it's going to be a lot easier for you to do that, potentially, because you have sidewalk networks. So here's a chance for me to pick up points. In PARTOF, there's three types of applications. There's an application for you to acquire land. There's an application for you to develop land that you already have, or to fix up a park that you already have. And then there's an application for you to acquire and develop. So there's three types, and three different types of scores. They all have the same cap, $500,000. And we have just one cycle a year. And there's technical assistance for that. It's a fairly easy application. But it's not an application that you can just decide, oh, you know, 30 days out from the deadline, let's try for this. Because there's a series of public hearings that have to be held. And that, I mean, it's something you have to plan for. There's another grant that we are getting ready to release right now for accessibility recreation projects. If you are planning to do handicap accessible playgrounds or recreation amenities, like ADA paved trails and things like that, that's an even sweeter thing than 50%. It's like a five-to-one match. And we only have the money, as far as we know, for this year. And we've got $10 million allocated for that. So something to think about. I think the deadline for that, if they ever get it released, the deadline for that will be like sometime in October. So something to think about if you, but this is something that you can't just conjure if you haven't already kind of got it, you know, be thinking about. So this is why, you know, planning is good. For when opportunities like this come up, you've got, hey, we identified this in our plan. Boom. Let's go with an application. There's some other grant opportunities out there already. Land and Water Conservation Fund is run through the National Park Service. We can talk about that at some point. There's also some other state recreational trails program grants and some other things. I mean, there's grants out there. But all of them want to see your planning documents. There's not a lot of money out there to help you do planning. Everybody is saying, listen, if you're serious about recreation, then your contribution to some of this is to identify and pinpoint what your needs are. And part of that is to do a plan. Once you have identified that, then you can come to us with a legitimate request. And that's the plan. That's what, that's what, that's what you're, you know, pinning your request on.
Thank you. I think, before I, I've got a question for Karen, but any questions directly to Judy about PARTOF or anything?
Can you define recreation? Does it mean you have to organize a baseball league? That you have to provide judo classes? That you, because the city used to have a recreation department and did that. And we did such a good job that the majority of the participants did not live in the city limits. They were out in the county. And it was like, why aren't we spending all this money, because we didn't charge a whole lot, to provide recreation for people who don't live in the city? Let's let other people, we'll provide the facilities and let other people do the programming, kind of like we're doing with the Y right now at Patton Park. So what is, what would we have to provide as recreation to be considered?
You mean for staff?
Yeah, you said you need a recreation specialist. I mean, what would this?
You would need a recre, you would need to have.
To do, to do what?
To manage your recreation programming.
Okay, in other words, we would have to provide Zumba classes, and we would have to.
No, 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 no. You don't need to necessarily provide the classes. You would need to have a staff person that is assigned to deal with your recreation issues.
And so to follow up the mayor's question, so it's still up to the local board to decide what? So, you know, like I think where the mayor, so the county currently has, organizes youth sports. So I think what I'm hearing the mayor say is, does it, it may not make sense for the city to get into, to youth sports activities because then you're, you're, you're competing with the county or you're duplicating the county, but if we created a recreation department, we could focus on enhancing our passive, and mayor, I don't want to put words in your mouth. We could focus on enhancing our parklands, maybe doing some things that the county doesn't do or that, I mean, it doesn't have to be all or nothing. You see what I'm saying, I mean, as it relates to recreation?
One thing, think about the word recreation, another way to say this would be creation. It's not necessarily a programmed activity like a baseball league. It could be just sitting on the bench by the creek. That's, that's recreation. So I, I think what I'm hearing is, is that you need, you need someone to oversee all that. If you want to have programming or not, that, that's, that's up to the city. Don't, don't think of recreation as just organized programming.
It's not just team sports. It can be somebody in the public works department that is assigned to make sure that everything is getting maintained. But there, there needs to be somebody that has a recreation title.
And I think, and I'll let Jerry ask then a question about, and then I'll kind of throw in a point from, from a staff perspective, why I think this conversation is important.
So I'm just gonna follow what you just said. So if we, because we currently have someone that does exactly what you just described. So if we just simply change the name of his title to Recreation Director, that's what you're looking for?
Does he have a department or is he in the public works department?
He's part of the public works department.
But you, he didn't have a recreation department?
We have to have a separate box on the overall plan that person that's in that box.
Yes.
They have to have reg-, uh, they have to have, um, or do you check to see if they have the pedigree, all the degrees and things like that in the application?
I'm not writing your job description.
Just ask him, because we want to win when we apply. Uh, my next question then is, and I apologize, you probably answered this, I've never asked it. When you don't get a part of grant, do you get your score back that explains why you didn't get it?
We will come back to you and explain what was, first of all, the reason you don't get a part of grant may not have anything to do with your score. Part of grants are based on several criteria, your score just being one of them. Also, part of grants are based on geographic distribution. Say all the part of grants are scored and everything in the west scores over everything on the coast. They're not gonna give everything to the west. They also will spread them out geographically across the state. So some things in the west might score better than some things on the coast, but because it's, it's not balanced geographically, they're gonna spread it out. So.
Is there any way that you can determine what that geographic equitable balance is? So in other words, if you didn't get it, you know that we had, you had a great application, but.
Well, they publish, every, if, all the awards are published on the website after the awards. Yeah, so I mean, you can look and see who got funded. It's not a secret.
Right, I got you.
So.
I hate to use the word quota, but is there a quota for different provinces state?
No, it's, that's why we have human beings on the authority. They're looking at geographic distribution, scores, and also what turns their crank, you know? I mean, what do they want to fund? Some things they just say, hey, there is no other pool in this county. It didn't score well. It's not necessarily part of the geographic distribution problem, but it's the only pool for three hundred miles. They need a pool, they want to get it. So you see what I'm saying? There's a few different factors they're looking at, not just scoring. So you can max out your scoring and still not get funded.
Okay, this is kind of following with what I think the mayor was getting at, which is you can appreciate from a policymaker's point of view, when you explain it like that, it's hard for us to be go-getters when you say we can max out our score and not get it.
Yeah, I totally hear you.
Because our staff spends a lot of time putting these part of grants, applications together. So I guess, is there another way? Can we talk to members and find out what the flavor of the day is for this year? When we go to make our application?
No, because they don't know until all the applications come in. They don't even know what they're gonna look at.
Okay.
I mean, this ain't Russia, you can call, you can call any of them and talk to whoever you want, but they do not even know what they're gonna look at until all the applications come in.
Okay.
I, I think this is where we get back to why we need to go in and identify things that we need. Like the splash pad, gotta throw it out there. That's something that we don't really have in the area, so that might be something that has a little bit more pull in the eyes of the panel that's choosing these is what I'm kind of hearing. It's, it's about the scoring and also the need for the area. So I think that's why our planning would come into such a play.
Basically, what I tell people is this. You have to ask for what you need, for what your constituents are gonna support. Okay? And how you know your constituents will support it is because you asked them. And how you ask them is by doing planning. You go out there and you do the best you possibly can through a public participation process. You make the best effort you possibly can by going out and asking them, hey, what do you want? And then when you find out what they want, you do the best you can by looking at ways, how can we afford this? By going out and trying to get grants. And then you just ask us for what you need. Yeah.
You mean it said the name of the grant that you guys are going through?
Part of Parks and Recreation Trust.
Sorry, no, no, no. That, you said you were getting ready to release a new grant that had to do with accessibility?
Yeah, it's an accessibility grant and I don't, I don't.
There's no specific name?
No.
That's part of the, the splash pad component. It's that we are building splash pad that is accessible for all of our residents because the current one that we have is not. And so we want to make it inclusive.
Right.
And so we can just look at the website, is that a good way to?
Yeah, it will go on to the same website where our grant is. And, you know, an accessible splash pad would be an awesome project and would be totally eligible for that money.
Can we quote you on that?
Yeah, you can.
We got it on Zoom.
And it would, and it would come, it would come through us, yeah. Yeah.
You heard it, don't forget that when you said.
Oh, yeah, I remember that, the meeting.
Yeah, I know it's tough, I really do. I'm very sympathetic to your, to your laundry. But we never know until all the applications come in who's asking for what. And that is why I tell everyone, write a compelling project justification. As part of the application, you write a one-page project narrative. And that is where you have to really make your case for why you're asking for what you're asking. And that is, and, you know, where you just really have to, you know, pour your heart out why your project is the best one in the stack.
Are you allowed to submit a video for that one-page portion?
You can put a link in there to direct them to a video.
That's allowed?
Yeah. And more and more people are starting to do that. Yeah, sure.
After you apply, are you allowed to send someone to Raleigh and just follow up with you before you look at the cap, application?
Uh, I mean, you can, I mean, I do not make the decision.
No, I don't mean you, I mean the group, I don't mean you.
Probably to the authority. They do not do presentations from groups as part of their meeting.
I know.
Probably the best thing that I would recommend is that you just talk to them one on one. I mean.
Judy, is there a current member of the board from Western North Carolina?
Oh, yes. We have Chad Brown in Gaston County, Beth Hyland in Burke County, and, uh, I can't remember her name. She's in Ash County, Utah County.
Margaret Newble?
Margaret Newble. We have three members from Western North Carolina, which is a shocker because for so long we had nobody and now we have three.
Do you know these people, Mr. Rowe?
Uh, yeah.
Excellent, okay.
So from, you know, and, and looking from, and I will speak later from a staff perspective, and one of the reasons I want to have this conversation is there's, is we, with, with the change in the council over the last eight or nine years, I mean, more of a focus on green space, on parks and recreation facilities and things like that. And, you know, Jerry has always been an advocate, the mayor's always been an advocate, but, you know, there's been a change over the last ten years that there's, there's, there was more of a, more of a focus. And, and my point is, you know, since one of the downsides, and, and I think the council made the right decision at the, at the time to eliminate, we don't need to be duplicating services because that's never efficient. But one of the things is, is right now we do maintenance and parks and recre-, really, market recreation is really an afterthought for public works, right? It's, it's really kind of our, you know, Tom this week or Brent this week or, you know, planning this week, it depends on who it is. We've done a really good job, I think, kind of working as a team to make it work. But if, if you, if we want to create this vision and really, we need a champion. That's, that's just kind of my opinion, somebody that is not an afterthought. Now, is it, is it that we create an apartment with four, you know, five or six, seven programmers and things like that? I'm not advocating for that, but I'm wondering, the question is, and then again, I'm talking in a vacuum like money grows on trees and I realize that there's gonna be a lot of requests. But as we create our vision down the way, is it, whether it's this year or next year or whenever, is, is there an opportunity to create this recreation champion? Whether they're, they're on the park, because you still get some points if it's in public works. I mean, you can have a mid-level manager in public works that is focused on recreation. I mean, focused on, you know, doing capital planning for our parks, doing planning for, hosting these public hearings and those kind of things. So food for thought, I'll leave that, we can park that there for a future discussion. But just as we think about it, there's, there's all kinds of models of how you can do that. But I would just throw that out there because all of you from time to time talk to us about things that you want to be done in the parks and recreation and to make it happen, this may be an opportunity to be more successful if there is a champion, if that makes sense.
I have another question. This, I think maybe for you guys, it's kind of off.
Do we want to let, oh, Kieran, you had a question for Kieran?
Yes.
Do you want to do that and then, then we can kind of go find it out?
Kieran, getting back to this idea, and I know you've basically done it in rural areas, and you may not know the answer to this question, but would, if you don't, if you don't know the answer, would it be something that I think, let me ask you? You haven't, you talked that you haven't done much conservation in urban areas. Do you know of other conserving organizations or conservation organi-, organizations that have, have a model for preserving green space through conservation easements through the nonprofit in urban areas? And is that something, you know, if, if the model's out there that you think current conserving Carolina would be willing to talk to us about?
Uh, we would absolutely welcome the chance to do more in the city. And it may be as much, when I was talking earlier about the tools that we use, I talked about conservation easements, but actually, as, as frequently we're doing just straight land acquisition. And I tend to think that because parcels are smaller and everything in the city, just buying land or working with folks to get it donated or what we call the market sale, the low market price acquisition may be the best opportunity. And so we, we would welcome the chance to partner with the city with this, create new parks or connecting trails or adding to existing resources, buffering existing resources. We're very experienced, as I mentioned earlier, partnering with, probably done with a dozen local governments seeking Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grants, assisting in that development of the projects, and also then seeking additional resources. We're also really experienced with other grant sources that are out there as well as private donations to match money that the city might be able to provide. So we would love to be a partner. Every instance may be unique, what we might bring or how we might add value, but we welcome the chance to do that at any point. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, and, and the idea that there may, we can talk about ways to, because part of our subdivision ordinance also requires now, Lou, correct me if I'm wrong, is the dedication of open space in subdivisions. And so there may be property available, you know, that we, we would need a, I think the idea for us is, is we start having more developments, we're start acquiring, either acquiring or also do, I think they can pay in, they can do payment in lieu of. So the question may be is, do we want all this land donated or do we want them to pay us that we can go and buy land and then put it under conservation? That, that, that's, that's a question that I think is a policy decision. And, and we don't want to make that today, obviously, but it's, it's something that's in your subdivision as a tool, subdivision ordinance as a tool as it relates to donation of land. And that becomes, in some ways becomes a maintenance thing, but it may be some, just depends on how we want to deal with it, so.
Well, I wasn't even aware that y'all had that part of your ordinance.
It's fairly good, it's fairly good.
That's very, it's great to hear and it's a, it's a great tool for y'all.
So council, now you had a question, but you may want to follow up.
I do want to follow that. So I guess my only concern is, is we, we complain a lot of land availability in the city limits. And so I guess starting to conserve land in the city and then continue to annex into, into the county, it might be that we don't have land in the city to develop. That makes me a little nervous. I like using the ordinances that we have currently to kind of protect the land, to allow green space connection, those types of things. But it does make me a little nervous to start talking about conserving plots of land in the city when we already don't have a lot of land and, and then it, it, it kind of, yeah, I just, so that's my only comment. My, okay, my other question is, what availability can you develop a flood plain to make it essentially more of a flood plain, like just a lake? Uh, we have like a large, I don't even actually know who owns the property. You know, when you're driving out sixty-four towards Walmart.
Right.
That whole wetlands that actually backsides Jackson Park. And so that, that is undevelopable, undevelopa-, oh, I guess it's more unusable, it's unusable space. But, you know, I think what potential is there for development of that into some sort of a recreational lake or passive park again? You know, in Western North Carolina, there's huge paddling, canoeing, there's growing, canoeing race teams, what is that sport called? I can't think of the name right now.
Crew.
Crew, thank you. I have friends whose daughter's a crew. And so, you know, again, it's that economic development as well because then you offer something that maybe other places don't have and it's already, the land is just sitting there. So I just wondering what could be done with that.
So you're thinking about taking that and making it to more of an appropriate and managed lake than just a natural resource?
Yes.
I mean, you could, you could do that, I mean, there, there's definitely opportunities to do that. I'm not sure in that location, you know, I'm sure that's a recognized wetland. I'm not sure that would be the correct place, but just my opinion is unless you get parked there. That's a pretty special place. That's a pretty special place, and I don't know if we want to try to alter that at all. I also wanted to say something about your concern about preserving green space when we're expanding it. You can do both. We, we can preserve that space if we allow, if, let's say somebody has a five acre parcel and we're requiring that developer to preserve an acre of it. We'll preserve that acre, just let him do a little bit more in the other four acres, so you can get both. He can preserve that, but still have that. So it can be done.
And I think that's what the subdivision ordinance intends in some ways, is, is there additional property that may not, is part of the development, but is not as high in best use? And can you set it aside as part of the development? Is, is that fairly accurate, Lou?
Which is different than land conservation, though, correct?
Yes. Different, different type of land conversation.
Yeah.
Similar, similar priority, but differently.
What is land acquisition?
So just when we, so when we buy the property or, or the, in, in our, in this case, the developer has to donate it to us as part of the development. Carrie, do you?
Well, I have a question, but I'm the person that lives by the clock, and it's five minutes till 10, and I don't want to lead into a discussion to interrupt the next one, and I wonder if we're going to have a break between the two.
We are going to have a break.
I can speak to him during the break.
Okay.
Because my question is Karen.
Okay, alright. Um, so one final question for Hunter, I mean, and I think, uh, sorry, I'm getting five or six texts, I had to find the right one. Hunter, you mentioned Charleston, Chattanooga, San Antonio. Can you say just in closing, a little bit more about really what gives them that sense of place and what Hendersonville could learn from them? I mean, really just, in your mind, and, and I think it's, to get us thinking as we go through the rest of the day. You know, you talked about the Riverwalk in both Chattanooga and, and San Antonio, which both are great, and, and we all know Charleston. You know, if you had to say, you know, what could Hendersonville do to have that when people think about Hendersonville, as you think about those other three places? What can we do to really set that tone and, and create that sense of place?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know. You know, I, I've been thinking about that, Chelsea in my office, we were talking about that. Charleston, Savannah, New Orleans, they have the history. You know here are those places. San Antonio and Chattanooga, they have the natural, they have the natural resources. They have, they have the natural setting, which I think we're more in line with that. We've got the natural setting, and I think those are the things we can, we've got plenty of history as well, that we can play off of that. I don't know, you know, I, I'd like to say, well, I should know, I'm a landscape architect, but I don't. That's something we need to explore. I wouldn't want to say one thing, 30 seconds, I'll keep it short, is I know paying for things is important, and I know that constituents come and they want a splash pad, or they want a pool, or they want more program sports. But also, I would, I would encourage you to, to keep looking at the big picture, not just, you know, how you're going to get it, get it built. And, and I agree completely with, with John's thing about we need a recreation champion. And I want to say one more thing about William White. And he talks about, you know, when you have these, these outdoor spaces, and it can be a park, it can be a little tiny public park, it could be the Acoustic Trail, or the Greenway, or Southside Park, something big. It's not just the people that use them, it's the people that drive by them every day and they see them, and they feel better about their community. And it's about the people that live there, that they may never go by there, but, but, you know, I live in, I live in Hendersonville, and we have these great things. And so, and from that standpoint, things like these are priceless, and, and they're, they're, they're just as much investment as your community is anything else. And so I encourage you to, you've got to deal with the day-to-day things, but keep that vision in the back of your mind of how we want to proceed.
So, thank you. I'd like to thank our panelists, just give them for the time. Move on with our second session, which is all about housing. So I think it'll be great. We've got about an hour and 45 minutes, and we've got a great set of panelists here to, to talk about all things housing. So let me introduce the panel. We'll start with Patrick Bowen, with Bowen.
Bowen National.
Bowen National, who's done a lot of research on housing, and I'll let, he do a further introduction a little bit about that in a minute. Sutty Adler with Beverly Hanks, will talk about our, what he's seen as a local realtor in our market. Brian Wasser is with D. H. Horton, local, or developer now that's in our community, building houses, building subdivisions, and he can talk about it from a developer, development standpoint, and how they go about making those kinds of decisions and cost of development. And then Ashlyn McCoy is here from Housing Assistance Corporation, and Ashlyn will be talking about some of the things that HAC is doing about to provide affordable housing, and some potential solutions as we hear about our, as, in our, in our housing market. And then Sarah Odeo is on Zoom, you can't see Sarah, but she, she's with the UNC School of Government. And hopefully, we'll be able to get Sarah connected, and you'll be able to hear from her to talk about some of the legal opportunities, authority that we have to, to influence housing, and influence affordable housing from a, from a city perspective, and what the laws allow us to do. And a lot of, there's several information in your folder about, about that. But, so let's go ahead and get started. I'm going to turn it over to Patrick, who's going to give you his, his research.
All right. Well, good morning, yes, good morning, everybody. It was a pleasure to be here. I know when John invited me down and was, have what you need to, to come down, I said, just an invitation. I mean, I love this part of the country, as you're going to see in the next slide in a second. We've been down here quite a bit. Again, Patrick Bowen, Bowen National Research, we're an Ohio-based firm. Even though we are in Ohio, we do work all over the United States, US Virgin Islands, Puerto Rico, all kind of great places. We do about 500 studies a year. Most of that is with housing, most of those are for site-specific projects, but we do about 10 to 12 of these bigger city, county, regional studies. We're going to talk about Henderson County here this morning. Been to Henderson County quite a bit over the last several years, I'll show you that, and the other qualifications. But I want to throw this up here, this is on my bookshelf, and so, you know, you put stuff on your bookshelf in your office, all kind of personal items and things like that, and there's only a few items up there that geographically tell you anything about myself. A few, there's a few items up there that has to do with Pittsburgh, which is where I grew up. University of West Florida Mugg, that's the school of Florida, is where I went to college, and a place called Hendersonville, North Carolina, I don't know if you folks have heard of it. But I had a friend of mine who knew, I absolutely loved Hendersonville, and so he was visiting, and he sent, I got this in the mail one day. So that sits on my desk, or up on my shelf every day, reminded me of a place I'd like to be. I have a great affinity for this area, and again, we've done a lot of research down here, and I'm actually in the process, and John has led me to some possible opportunities to find an apartment down here, or maybe even office space, I'd like to open an office down here. So we'll see how that goes. All right, so we were hired last year by the Dogwood Health Trust up in Asheville, and they asked us to do an 18-county regional housing needs assessment. There was a lot that went into it, and I'm going to show some of the stuff here today, demographics, economics, a lot of housing supply information, rental versus for-sale housing. We looked at access to community services, internet access, federal-state programs, fooding, migration patterns. We collected information from almost 200 different stakeholders across the region. We looked at special needs populations of disabled, homeless, other groups like that, I won't cover that here today. One of the things that's probably most vital to, to Dogwood and others was the housing gap estimates. We estimate what is the need for rental or for-sale housing, different price points, affordability levels. And we gave them a general action plan in terms of how they want to move forward as a foundation. All right, so it's almost like those prescription commercials on TV where they rattle through all those disclaimers, I have a few here, and they are critical disclaimers in terms of what we did. So we only looked at the 18 counties, I'll show you the map here in a second, 18 counties in the region, as well as Indian Reservation. We did not get into communities, municipalities, or anything like that. We didn't look at government policies or programs, or come up with strategies for local governments, and again, I realize I've got some elected officials here that will want to know those kind of things. We could talk about that, but this study did not address those things. Keep in mind, it's a foundation that has resources and funds that they want to put towards addressing housing. And so the state was written more for their purposes and not necessarily governmental uses. This is a critical one here, too. The study only focused on housing needs up to 120% of median income. That's about $90,000. I'm going to show you the data that shows opportunities for higher-end housing, whether it's market rate rentals, or higher-end for-sale housing. But just keep in mind, a lot of the demand numbers, in fact, all the demand numbers we have stop at 120% of median income. So a lot of other stuff that we, we did not cover, that we would if we were studying a county or municipality, cost of land, available sites, the schools, communities, some of the community services, residential, light, crime, things like that. Those things were not included in the study. So again, just to kind of keep that in mind. And one other thing, we did not, this was done in late spring, all research was completed in late spring of 2021. So we issued the study in summer of last year, and started doing presentations last September. The 2020 census was not released at that time. That is a critical piece to keep in mind. So you see some of this data, well, the estimates are going to be pretty good, it's a national demographic firm that we use, but nonetheless, the 2020 census wasn't incorporated yet. All right, so the 18 counties, you can see the list of what we were asked, this is Dogwood Health Trust's footprint, but Henderson County was part of that. So we'll just start off with some basic, again, I think folks in the back can see it, but I'll just point out some of the highlights. I've got some zoomed-in information and details on Henderson here in a second. But in the end, I just want to show a comparison of the entire region, every county. And so you can see here, 2010 to 2020, this is households, not population, households changes, and so you grew by 14.6%. You're second to only Buncombe County, but barely. And I showed you in green, because those are the counties that were growing the fastest, top three. Here's projections from 2020 to 2025, expected to add this many households, 6.7%, almost identical to the growth rate of Buncombe County. So you're growing fast, and that's not going to stop. All right, this is household growth between 2025 percentage-wise, and again, this is just, I wanted to show, clearly, somebody likes maps, so I want to get some maps in here, too. And just to show, you know, relative to the rest of the counties, you know, here's the growth, really off of 40 in, in 26 corridors, central part of the region. And you can see some of the counties are actually shrinking in terms of households. Right, this is closer in now, this is comparing Henderson County with the region, with the state. You can see 2010 to 2020 growth rates faster than both the region and the state. Growth rates over the next, well, at least 2020 to 2025, faster than the region and the state. So you got a lot of growth, it's faster than typically is being experienced across much of North Carolina, definitely across a lot of the region. That's a good thing, and it's a, it's a challenge. And this is probably a key thing to keep in mind, too, you're adding about 700 households annually. And if you want to tread water in your housing market, which you do not want to do, the housing market's got some challenges, you, you know that. I'm not, I'm going to share information with you, as you already know to a degree, but I'll show you the degree to which some of the challenges are. You've got limited vacancies in terms of rentals and for-sale housing, so you need more, but just to keep up where you're at right now, you could add about 700 housing units to the county. Demographics, this is households by head of, head of household by age group. So we broke it out by different age groups, different points in time. The key things here are marked in red in terms of where is the bulk, the majority of your households by age. 58, almost 60% are age 55 and older. I marked in green over the five-year projection period, where is the growth expected to occur? This is mirroring national trends, it's not anything unique to Henderson County or the region. Most of the growth is either going to occur here, that 35 to 44, the older millennials. But here, you have a lot of growth, that's, again, a lot of this is people aging in place. This is not necessarily a reflection of all these seniors moving to this area, you do have a lot of seniors coming to this area. But nonetheless, just the change, whether this is people moving to the area or just aging, either these other age groups over this five-year period, that still is driving housing need for senior-oriented housing. All right, so renter household growth on the left, owner household growth on the right, this is from 2020 to 2025. You're expected to add almost 1,000 renter households over that five-year period, and about 2,500 owner households. I know Brian deals with for-sale housing, and for anybody that's developing for-sale housing, these are good numbers to see. And then we even showed on the map, though, again, Buncombe and Henderson will, will carry the bulk of that growth over that five-year period. So one of the things I know everybody always talks about is people coming to the area, who are these people? And so we have a ton of data in the study, I'm only going to present a little bit here today. And the other thing to keep in mind, too, is if, if you, if you think of, we did this as a regional study with individual county comparisons, there is so much data that we have access to on Henderson County that we didn't get into the report. Because the report itself is probably 500 pages, it's a, it's a large report, and that's us omitting a lot of information. So I do have access to a lot of things, so if you, if there's some data that you all need, and it's not in the report, it doesn't hurt to reach out to us and see if we have that kind of data. This is per-person income, these are people migrating into the area, and this is the typical incomes that they have. Henderson County, and the, I guess the average income, well, that's median, sorry, median income is $30,000, that's begin per person, that's not a household, but it's among the higher incomes. And how about the age groups? You can see the darker blue are the older households, the lightest blue is the youngest household, or persons, sorry. And Henderson's coming in at 31.7 as the average age, it's the seventh highest here, the middle of the pack in terms of age groups. So moderate to low income, generally younger people migrating in. All right, this is interstates, so between the states, we, we have intrastate data as well, people coming from within North Carolina. I wanted to just show who's coming from outside of the state for this presentation. Where are they going? When they come to the area, the darker blues are the higher counts of people, this is over from 20, 2009, yeah, 2009 to 2018. You had about 16,000 people, this is net migration, so you have some people moving out, but you got people coming in, so this is the net difference. You have about 16,000 that you gain by people moving into this area, and that's among the highest, that people want to be in Henderson County. Then we have other data in the report. Now, this is for the region, where are they coming from, what regions of the country, what states? We did not put it in the report, but I have access to data. If you wanted to know for Henderson County itself, where are they coming from, we can show you that information. All right, this is probably one of the key things to understand about demographics. This is renters on the top half, this is owners on the bottom, this is household income by different groupings. And so I marked in the red where the majority of your renters are, and the majority of your homeowners are in terms of income, so you can see, you've got the percentage up there. You have most of your, more than half of your renters earn between 10 and $40,000. Where's the growth going to occur? It's in these higher-income households. Now, a couple of things I always warn folks when they see this data, I don't want folks to draw a conclusion that, okay, look, we're losing households of lower, of the lower-income segments, we don't need more affordable housing. That's not what that says. You'll see in a moment, there's people that are, that are low-income households, that are living in housing that they shouldn't be in, they're living in housing they cannot afford. So housing is much more complicated than simply looking at where are we growing, where are we declining, okay, let's build this. You do need to build higher-end product, but you do need to address lower-income housing, and we'll talk about that here a little bit in a moment. And then where are your homeowners? Again, most of them are higher income, and that's where all your growth is projected to occur. Poverty data. One of the good, it's good news and bad, right? You still have people that live in poverty, region-wide is 14%, but you all, it's at 10.9%. So we graphed it over here, lighter blue, lower shares of poverty, so really, it's as you get out of the more rural areas, you get some of the higher shares of poverty. And then we also showed over here child poverty rates at 17.7, that's still among the lowest, so low for children, low overall. But you still have a lot of folks facing challenges living in poverty, 12,000 people countywide. So that gets back to, again, you may have declining household base of low-income households, but you still have a lot of people living in poverty. All right, housing conditions. Couple of these are follow kind of federal guidelines, overcrowded housing, meaning 1.01 persons per room, or incomplete plumbing or kitchen facilities. Believe it or not, we still have housing, that people are living in either one of these significant housing conditions. So 1,100 households, over 1,100 households county-wide. So 1,100 households, over 1,100 households countywide, that are living overcrowded. Almost 362 households that are living in units without complete kitchens or plumbing. So again, going back to that decline of lower income households, this is still telling, you've got folks that are living in stuff they shouldn't be in, living in. So whether you remedy that housing or you get them out of that housing, it means something else, more livable. That's something to certainly think about. Alright, so this is a lot of data up here. I just circled probably the most critical thing to understand. So by definition, there's something called housing cost burden, meaning people that pay more than 30% of their income towards their housing costs. It's a federal guideline. That's considered excessive. So how many people are percentage-wise are cost burden in the county? 42.8%, that's pretty close to the state average. 18.4% owners, again, pretty close to the state average, so nothing unusual. I didn't have the numbers in the study, but I was doing a quick calculation this morning. That's about, and I do have the data somewhere. That's about 4,000 households each that are cost, housing cost burdened. So again, I keep going back to the decline of lower income households. You still have people, these are going to be low-income people that are cost burdened. In fact, we even put up here, share of severe cost burden, these are people that pay over 50%. If I have a map, you're paying half of your income towards your housing costs. But if you have now with rising gas prices and other expenses climbing, how can you afford housing if you're paying that much? And look, you've got 14, almost 15% of renters, 7% of owners are paying that excessive amount. Alright, multifamily rentals. So you know that there's not many available rentals in the area. But how limited is that? We found, our staff, they, this is what we do for a living. So we called and called and visited properties. We dedicate a lot of resources. We surveyed 34 properties with 2,700 units, six vacant units. And again, a timely example, right before I came here this morning, my wife was traveling with me, and she's, we're trying to find a rental down here. We're part of the problem, I guess, right? We're going to take, we're trying to take a rental instead of being here for business purposes. But nonetheless, my wife said, Patrick, I can't find anything in the county. I think she was looking specifically at Hendersonville. And she's like, I can't find anything. And I said, well, that kind of backs up what we found. Remember, this research was all done generally made of last year, but I suspect nothing has changed. There's still an extreme shortage. I was looking online, again, John put me in contact with some folks that are trying to find me some space, and it's just, there's just not much out there. So anyway, overall vacancy rate, 0.2%. What does that mean? Normally, in a healthy market, you want about 4%, maybe 6% vacant. You're at 2/10 of a percent. That is desperately low. That is not good, that's not healthy. And I could talk at length about what does that do to the market, right? For example, I'm a landlord, and I know that there's almost nothing in vacant. And Ms. Simpson is one of my tenants, and she's like, hey, Patrick, this needs some upgrades and repairs. You know what? Ms. Simpson will leave. You leave, I can raise the rent, and I'm going to find a renter out of a penny into that unit. And so you get units that start to lack maintenance and repairs, modernization, things like that, all kind of other issues. But you can see, it's, when you have such a, for a property owner, this is great news. For the residents, for this community, this is not good news. The other thing to point out is the 1,100, I marked that in red, the $1,116 rent for one bedroom, one bath, based on our survey of market rate apartments. You have to have about $50,000 as a household or an individual to afford that. I think I looked this morning, about 75% of your renters have incomes below $80,000. So a large majority of your renters cannot afford a typical market rate unit, if they can even find one. The other thing I marked up here in red is vacancies by different product type, market rate, tax credit, which I can talk about that if you all like me to. But that's moderate income households, subsidized, the lowest income households. There's nothing available. Well, one of the things I didn't mention specifically, we were here in the region in 2014 to do a four-county study that included Henderson. And then we came back in 2019 to do another study. And then this 21, 2021 data would be the 18-county study we did, but still, this is Henderson County's data. You can see occupancy levels. I said a vacancy rate of 4% or occupancy rate of 96% is probably the highest you want to go to have a healthy market. You were already above that in the past, but look at you now, 99.2%, or 99.8%. Just a quick example, look how much the inventory has shrunk. You had 44, which was not a lot of available apartments back in 2019. You're down to six. How about rents? Check that out. 2014, when we did this research, this was market rate, it's not any kind of subsidize or tax credit project. Median one-bedroom, one-bath unit, 745. One year ago, 1116, two-bedroom, 900. It's up to 1,300. So you're talking roughly 45% increase. I don't, that's a seven-year period. The folks' incomes aren't climbing fast. And then waitlist. I put all the counties on here, but showed, you know, Henderson County, you've got significant waitlist. It doesn't matter what type of housing, market rate, tax credit, government subsidized. You've got over 450 households waiting to get into a unit. So a lot of pent-up demand. Bad news for the market, bad in the sense of the residents. There are a lot of them who are trying to wait to get into housing. That's good news for the development community and investment community. There's great opportunities here in the county. And then we looked at what, okay, so you can't rent an apartment. What else can you rent? How about a non-conventional rental? Which would be anything that's not an apartment. So I put in a single-family home, the duplex, a mobile home, anything like that. Our staff scoured every resource that we could find. We found 15 of those countywide. That's a vacancy rate of 1/10 to 1%. Remember, you want that closer to 4% in a healthy market. So you really don't have anything available. If you couldn't find an apartment, your next choice is these non-conventional rentals. Even that is limited. The typical rent, average collect rent, 935. Throw in roughly $100 for tenant-paid utilities, you're over $1,000 in rent. You would need to have $46,000 to be able to afford one of these, if you could find one. Most renters do not have that income. And one of the things Dogwood had me do, and I'm glad they did, was they wanted me to find out usage of housing choice vouchers. Just real quick, a housing choice voucher is issued by the housing authority. So Patrick Bowen gets one of those. I can now go shop that at an apartment that will accept it, if they will accept it. Apartments do not have to accept them. And so I have that voucher, and the government will then subsidize my rent. I can pay $400, but the rent, $600, the government will pay the difference. So that's a housing choice voucher, a critical piece to a housing market. Well, here's what we learned. You have 480 of those issued in the county, 211 go unused. That is, that means 211 households are walking around with these vouchers that would help them subsidize their rents. Well, why can't they use them? Well, you just saw, there's no vacancies. That's part of the problem. So they can't find anybody to take them. And this is starting to become a national crisis. There's market after market who start looking at this, and this is getting worse and worse. 44% of those vouchers go unused. Well, the other thing we looked at, well, how about, again, properties don't have to take them. They don't have to accept them. 56% of them do, but that means about 44% do not. So that's another challenge that area renters face. If you have a voucher, a lot of properties, you can go to them, and they say, we don't, we don't accept them. And one of the reasons they won't is in a market like this where you have almost nothing available. And say Patrick Bowen owns an apartment property. I can accept the voucher holder if I want. But guess what? I can make so much more because John's going to rent my apartment, and he's not a voucher holder. He can pay more than what that voucher and tenant payment's worth. I can make more money out of John. So I'm going to rent it to him. I'm not going to rent it to a voucher holder. I can make more money. That's part of the motivation behind that, and that's creating part of this problem. In a captive market, landlords can do that. And I'm not playing them out to be available in this. They're doing what they should do to try to make ends meet. And that's what they're in business for. But nonetheless, the market's creating some opportunities for them. Alright, so this one's really telling. Now, this is from the National Low Income Housing Coalition. And so what they did was they took different wage data for the area, took a two-bedroom fair market rent, which is the government's estimate for what a two-bedroom should be valued at in this area, and particularly in Henderson County. So that 1,255 rent, what do you have to work, how many hours do you have to work? If you work certain wage levels, what minimum wage? If you're just by yourself, you've got to work 133 hours a week to pay that. So you'd probably need a roommate or spouse or somebody. So two wage earners, you could do it, but that's, you've got to have two wage earners to be able to pay a typical two-bedroom fair market rent. That's a challenge. Alright, for sale housing. So we looked at historical trends. I won't cover that in this presentation, but I do want to cover what is available. Just like the rental side, I wanted to show what we call availability rate. Realtors look at how many months of inventory is available. We do look at that, but I really focus on what we call availability rate, meaning I've got X amount of available units relative to the whole universe of owner-occupied households. So how many are available? 6/10 of a percent for owner. For for-sale housing, you want that to be about 2% at minimum for a healthy market. So you're well below that. Now, keep in mind, this was a year ago, well, nine months ago, roughly. And so it's likely worse. I just did a study up in High Country, North Carolina, the four northernmost northwest part of the state. Those counties, and their availability rate came back at 1/10 of a percent. That was the worst I'd ever seen. Now, what I said to that audience just a couple of weeks ago, I said, the only reason that's the worst, in my opinion, is because they were the last. The one I did before that, that was the worst. The one before that was the worst. It's trending. If I took all these markets and stacked them up, it's getting worse and worse. My point to say that is, yeah, a year ago, roughly, nine months ago, you were at 6/10 of a percent available. But is that now? It's probably much, much lower. So not much available. Look at the median list price, 449. 449, you got to make $135,000 a year. Most people don't make $135,000 a year. Homes are selling pretty quick. I suspect at 74 days, that was, again, nine months ago. I bet it's shorter now. Alright, this is a breakout of those homes that are available. Look out, very little is available under $300,000. Definitely under 280, so 399 in the county. Those families probably could not afford it. And I always give an example, too, when, because again, I'm trying to open up, it's a branch office. But let's say, I own 32 employees. Let's say, Bowen wants to take the whole company here, we want to open it up in Henderson County. Well, my staff of 32, I could tell you, most of them probably could afford a home up to $300,000. Some probably only up to $200,000. But look at how little is available to them. And then when you start to factor in bedroom sizes, quality, the school district, whatever you're looking for, your inventory is really small. You have so few choices. Now, Bowen, at 32 employees, is not the firm you want to get, right? There's a lot of bigger companies you would like to attract to your region and help grow the economy, create job opportunities. And so housing inventory is part of that equation that I can guarantee you business owners are looking at as they explore whether or not they open offices in different parts of the country. Now, this is really telling, again, because we, I can only do this because we've been here multiple times. In 2014, it's that royal blue. Greens are 2019, dark blue is 2021. Look at the inventory shrink by those price points. When I was here a couple of years ago, presenting up in Asheville on the four-county regional study we had done for them, I said, I bet you if you bring me back in a couple of years, I bet you this, well, again, this didn't exist at that time, this dark blue. If you bring me back, I bet you this will be gone. And it happened. And so it's one of the few times I'm going to exact pre-rate prediction. So it just really did, it shrunk a lot. It didn't matter what price point, they all, the inventory shrunk. Look at this, you had 1,000 units back in 2014. You're down to 227. How about the median price? 273 back in 2014. 2019, 414. Last year, 449. Going up about 9.2% annually. Household incomes are not going up 9.2% annually. Alright, just a few more slides here. This is the housing gap estimates. There's a lot of stuff that goes into this. I won't explain it, but I will give you the final number. So we looked at the demand, again, the need to address all kind of housing. So again, people living in substandard housing, people living in cost-burdened housing, addressing household growth, those kind of things, having more vacancies for a healthy market. All of that gets factored in. You need about 1,100 units over this five-year projection period, this is 2020 to 2025, that generally have a rent of about $1,000 lower, surveying households at $37,000 or lower. And then you can see, as we go up in higher incomes, 240 to 61. Reminder, we did not look at the 120% of median or higher, or higher than that. And if I did demand estimates, this would balloon because of, I showed all that growth of higher income households. If I had done some kind of housing gap for that, you'd have even bigger numbers. For sale housing, same thing, lower incomes, going up, only up to about 90,000. Still, that's at 120% of median. They're all pretty, that's a little bit more balanced in terms of the need. Henderson County is among the highest needs. Back up. Yeah, even here, you're the second highest for rentals and the second highest for for-sale housing. So significant need in Henderson County, but it's across the region. So I know there's elected officials and other folks that will be interested in that regional housing needs assessment we did for Dogwood. Again, we did not provide recommendations, strategies, or any of that stuff. However, I can provide it, John, if you'd like. We have done tons of research on other communities, and so we have case studies. All of Pro Nashville, which you all know, I'm sure, very well, probably one of the most progressive efforts in terms of addressing affordable housing. But all these other communities, very similar situations, high growth, limited availability. And so we've got a lot of good examples, more beyond these ones I listed here. But we can certainly get you all kind of information on what are other communities doing. So if you don't remember anything else, just remember this handful of things, right? Availability, affordability, quality of housing are primary problems. There's a market imbalance between those lower-income households and what they can afford and what's available to them. Clearly show that costs are outpacing income growth. The gap is getting worse. The greatest challenge is for the lowest income households, those that have to work excessive hours just to be able to afford their housing. Housing choice vouchers, I showed that. That is a major challenge for the region, for the country, really. And, you know, think of it this way, too. Those, that money is set aside by the federal government to pay for the, to subsidize those rents. With over 200 vouchers not getting used, that's money that's not coming into this region or to the county that the federal government would pay. And all these, John is, John was my tenant, and John, every month, the government's going to make $200 for his rent, but John can't find a place to use his voucher. That's $200 that could be coming in every month on that single apartment. Multiply that by every apartment, every voucher holders, it starts to add up. Now, one thing I didn't cover here today was we did, because of all that stakeholder information that we got, we talked to a lot of people. The positive thing is, I think because of the housing shortage that the country's facing, but just take the region and the county. For the first time, I think, right when COVID hit, I think employers started to realize what housing meant to them. Right, they have many things as an employer. I know there's a lot of things we've got to think about in terms of running our business and making it profitable and functional. But I think until the housing crisis started to hit after COVID and the shortage that occurred, a lot of employers were saying, you know, we are having a tough time attracting employees. We're having a tough time retaining our employees, and part of that problem is housing. And so for the first time in my career doing this 26 years, employers are, they want to be part of the solution. So government cannot solve it all. Developers, private sector cannot solve it all. Nonprofit groups cannot solve it all. But employers can be part of that equation. So if I was in charge, I would be willing to make an effort to reach out to some of the bigger employers, bring them to the table and say, look, this is impacting you. How can you help us solve this? So with that, I think, was it? Thank you. Good very much, Patrick. Thank you very much.
So just remind the council and anybody that has the notebooks, the summary of the Henderson, of Patrick's study for the region is in your packet as well as Henderson County data that he has. So that's, you have that as part of your, and I'll be, look forward to getting some of this other material. So, so let me ask, let's turn it over to Sonny Eiler. Sonny is managing Realtor, I'll say managing Realtor of Beverly Hills. And Sonny has more recent data as it relates to what's on the market here in Hendersonville and Henderson County.
Thank you, John. Appreciate being here. Thank you, everybody, for taking the time to let me present some data to you today. Great segue. But what I'm going to show you, and the thing I don't want you to do is give analysis paralysis today. So as we go through this, we're going to understand some of this. I think showing it better than telling, but I will send all of these active links to John. John can get it to the council later on. So I'll get you all this data so you have it in. The notebooks that I gave you are just something a little bit extra that kind of goes into the supply and demand issue that we're facing. There's also some information in there of why the real estate market now is different from what it was in 2007, 2009, which we all know was a disaster. It was a great recession, not the Great Depression like we had in 1929. But if you look at house prices in western North Carolina, Hendersonville especially, But if you look at house prices in western North Carolina, Hendersonville especially, the only times that we've lost value in housing pricing and home values wasn't in the great depression and the great recession. Unfortunately, I think where we are now, you're going to see some numbers, a new benchmark that we have made. And the bad thing about it is, talking about what's affordability for our heroes, I'm talking about our firefighters, our police officers, our nurses, our school teachers. It's making it very difficult for these people to function and live in our area right now. So you're going to see some numbers that's going to show you, but we've set a new benchmark of where we are with appreciation. So let me, let me get started here with some graphics. And I think the best way to start is let's just take a look at new listings. Now, what this graphic shows, it shows single family homes in green, it shows our condos and townhomes in blue. It shows multifamily, which would be like your duplexes, triplexes, eightplexes, et cetera. It shows those in black. This is a rolling twelve months, live data, so as of today, where it says twenty-twenty-two, that's the actual data. So it's looking back twelve months at how many new listings have come on the market over a three-year period. So if you look at single family homes in a rolling twelve months manner, in the last twelve months from today, in twenty-twenty-two, there's been two thousand three hundred and two single family homes that have come on the market for sale in Henderson County. And if you notice, that's up just slightly, there's a slight uptick there, it's up five point seven percent. If you look at the next room bar over, it's twenty-twenty-one, and compare that to twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty, you can see that between those two years, in twenty-twenty, we had two thousand three hundred and seventy-five homes that came on, two thousand one hundred and seventy-eight in twenty-twenty-one. So we had a dip that year of eight point three percent. Very similar with the condo situation there, you see that we've got, we had a dip in twenty-twenty-one, it was down seven point two percent, only three hundred and seventy-three for that same rolling twelve months compared now to twenty-twenty-two, up five point nine percent, three ninety-five. Of course, the numbers at the very end overall, our multifamilies were up a little bit there as well. So that's on a rolling twelve months. I think the interesting part, if we take a look at our close sales, here's our close sales. Same scenario, it's on a rolling twelve months from today, so we can go back exactly twelve months. So if you remember the number that's coming on, it's slightly, it's a slightly, a little bit more in the last twelve months compared to what is sold. So what's been happening is with the high demand that we've had, we were not putting enough inventory back on the market. And some of the things that's causing that, it's not just the epidemic of the pandemic and the pent-up demand that happened after everybody decided they could work someplace else. We went a number of years, I'm sure you're probably here from D H Ford, we went a number of years where new inventory was not coming on the market as far as new homes. People didn't build for a long time after the great recession of two thousand seven, two thousand eight, nationally, not to mention locally. So we are now starting to feel the effect of the high demand, the lack of new homes coming on the market for a very long period of time. We are now in a position where we are not keeping pace with the high demand and inventory is dwindling. And I'm going to show you in just a second what that's looking like. But you can see that sales continue to outpace year over year. We were up ten percent in twenty-twenty-one over twenty-twenty, we're up ten point six in the last twelve months over the same time period of twenty-twenty-two. So you can see that the high demand is there, and we're outpacing, same thing's happening with the condo townhome scenario, it's not as dramatic. But it is pretty significant there, and you can see, look at the, look at the hundred and sixty percent increase in the last twelve months in multifamily, that's a, that's a pretty phenomenal number. We got to remember that fifty percent lashes, so really you're looking about a hundred and ten percent change from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two right there. Let's take a look at what's happening with the price per square foot. How about that? This is just on resale. Now, if you start talking about luxury, if you're talking about people that are these higher price brackets that you referred to just a second ago, some of these new builds that are going on in, in the luxury tier, I mean plus, some of those prices are over six hundred dollars per foot. But when you're talking about resale properties that are selling to, you know, the average is two hundred, this is the median price, two hundred and three dollars per foot, that's very expensive. And you compare that with the data that was just shown to us just a few minutes ago, we're definitely outpacing what the average wages are here significantly. Same thing's going on with the condo townhome market there, and we have the same thing going on that's happening in the multifamily as well there. Again, I will send you all this data. Let's take a look at the month's supply, which that is what we look at. This looks a little bit more favorable than what it looked just a month ago. If you look at the overall supply in Henderson County right now, we were down to one point five months. We have been at times down to just days, seriously. But we're down to look at the whole market, it's down to one point five. Now, if I break this down into the price ranges up here that we were looking at just in a previous presentation, you'd probably be surprised that in the lower price ones up to three hundred thousand dollars, the inventory is now in dates. There's, there's not hardly anything to choose from up to three hundred thousand dollars. You can think about affordability for people, our workforce that need affordable housing, there's not a lot of choices out there. And you combine that with the amount of loan rentals that are available, that's why we're seeing some of our firefighters, our police officers, some of our nurses, they're all going to South Carolina. They're all buying down into the upstate of South Carolina, traveling up here as well, that correct state chief? Yeah, so that's, that's what's happening. We don't want that to happen because we have people living in another state or another city and working here, that they're not taking advantage of all the good things that brings people here to learn and live, such as our downtown merchants, et cetera. It takes away from our downtown economy, it takes away from all the economy in Henderson County. Okay? Let's take a look at sales prices. This is median again, my numbers are just a little bit lower than, than what the previous presentation showed. This is straight out of the MLS, this is, this is the median price for February in a rolling twelve months. But the median right now in Henderson County is three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars compared to last year at the same period of time in a rolling twelve months, three hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. So you see, we continue to step up with the median sales price. And again, the point I want to make to once a price point is set and a market is set, we've only had two times in the history of the middle state market in Henderson County where prices have gone down. That was in the depression and recession. So once a new price is hit, or a benchmark is set, it's hard for it to get in the opposite direction. Okay? Same thing's happening with the condominium market, you can see how that price per square foot's going up, or that, close prices, that median price is going up. Same thing with multifamily. Multifamily jumped up forty-three percent, which is, which is pretty interesting, where that's, where that's headed right there. If you look at just the dates on market, this is the phenomenal market part. If you look at where we are now overall, seven days on market. You know why we're, you know why we're having seven days on market? It's because of the strategy that the sellers are doing.
Highest and best.
They're, they're, that's right. They're putting the property on the market in what we call a community food status. That means you can't show until a certain date, so the property goes on on Thursday, on Tuesday. It can't be shown until Saturday, so Saturday, they have all the appointments booked, Sunday morning's booked, they have an open house, and they call for highest and best on Monday. And we end up, the highest number of offers of property that I've been involved in since we've gone to this market right now, we had thirty-seven offers on one particular property in Jimmy Rock. The house was two hundred and forty thousand dollars. It closed, and the offer that was accepted was a significant amount of new buildings, which was non-recoverable. It was a hundred and ten thousand dollars that were advertised. It did not praise, the buyers have signed an appraisal gap agreement that said that they were going to take advantage. And it's because of people are just right now, they're looking, they're tired of being eliminated with these multiple offers, and things that buyers are willing to do right now in desperation. It's, it's a very scary situation. It's a tough situation for management when people are trying to mitigate liability, you know? Because we are dealing with those types of problems every day where people get the remorse after they've made these offers, they go under contract, they want to get out somehow. So we're dealing with situations like that constantly. That's kind of the overview, and again, John, I will send you these links, so you have it.
Thank you, Sonny. So now that we have all this great news, but I think we needed to set the table about really what the market is, and Patrick and Sonny have really kind of showed us where. And this is stuff we, we thought we knew, this is stuff that we see and what you hear from us, but we feel like we needed to give you the data. So now I'm going to ask Brian to talk a little bit about, from a developer standpoint, you know, that they, soon they look at these numbers and they look, they bring them to a community, but what goes into development? And we'll start off there, Brian, about, you know, the development cost, what, what it goes into in setting pricing and those kind of things, and then we'll have some follow-up questions after that. But I'll just turn it to Brian.
So first of all, I'm Brian Wasser, I'm the Vice President and I am Dr. Horton. We are the largest home builder in the country, largest here in this market now currently, closed. So around two hundred homes last year, we'll close around three thirty this year. That's kind of started, the Asheville market kind of runs out. I oversee the Asheville market and also Greenville, South Carolina. I bring a little bit of perspective, I'm from, not from, I'm from upstate New York originally, but I've lived in southwest Florida for a number of years, up until about four years ago. So when I came to this market four years ago, after about a week living in Greenville, which I thought was the most affordable market I've ever been in my life, coming from southwest Florida. So all these conversations you're having here now, we had in southwest Florida ten years ago, as prices. I got up to Greenville about a week later, our regional president said, hey, meet me up in Henderson County, actually, and it was our taproot project. I want to show you this project, there's a new market, let's, let's just see what shakes out. So I drove up here and I've visited Asheville, Hendersonville for a number of years. My older brother went to Bavard College, so I was very familiar with the area, loved the area, jumped on it, we came up here and we started looking at land. And that's led us to kind of where we're at today. We probably have around three thousand option lots on our pipeline up here, we're self-developing two projects. We primarily are not a developer, although we will, we are more of a vertical builder. We'd much rather build homes and partner with people that develop for us. The problem with that is you come to a point in every market to where you have to figure out a way to lower your prices on houses. We are not that builder that wants to build a million dollar house or a seven. We are that builder that has always been that bread and butter of three hundred thousand lots. That is extremely difficult in today's market, it's difficult, vertical costs have gone through the roof. In the last twelve months, our vertical cost constructions on a house, just true costs on the house, not land, have gone up about sixty thousand dollars. So that sixty thousand is probably seventy-five thousand to eighty thousand dollars in, in a sales price when you're selling a house. But on top of that, the land costs that have jumped through the roof, it's, it's become quite challenging. And you know, how, how do you battle that? Well, again, we're not that high-end builder, we, we offer products that we feel fit right in the marketplace. When we do that, we have several different lines of houses. But we not only do home to sell, we do build the rent now, we're building apartments. And it's important because when you talk about affordability, we first have to define affordability and what that is. Ten years ago, affordability may have been a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is not the reality of today's world. I bought my first house in two thousand eight, my interest rate was six and a half percent. It was a sixteen hundred square foot house. I live in a four, three hundred square foot house now, and I'm paying less now than what I did years ago. And, you know, I'm doing that because, one, in Greenville, South Carolina, the property taxes are low, they're low up here as well, coming from that southwest Florida market. Property taxes are low, interest rates are low, even if interest rates tend to tick up here a little bit, which they most likely will, interest rates are historically still low. So, you know, when we talk about affordability, that word affordability can mean a lot of things, and I think we really, we talked about this at the county level a couple of months ago. But we really need to define what that is. But again, you know, my answer to a lot of this is, the way you can get a more affordability is, and no one likes to talk about it, but the answer is density. And there's very smart ways to have density. We can have green space and open space, we can have, all that stuff can be married together to make and build good-looking subdivisions that complement well in, in the communities, in the city of Hendersonville or accounting or wherever else. Part of what we're looking at now to again, try to lower these, what we're selling homes for, is we're adding components of build the rent, we're adding components of apartments. We've got two build the rent properties right now in, in Buncombe County, we're looking at apartment deals now. When you start marrying those together in a subdivision, you start to get very much more affordable on the build the sell side, and that's really the point. But the whole point of that is adding more density. If you take a project that was originally looking at twelve hundred units and you slash that to seven hundred units, that raises prices. And I'll, and I'll bring up the example of Taproot in Henderson County. When we originally looked at that project, our, our average price point was somewhere around two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, townhomes and single families. We're easy a hundred thousand dollars more than that now, for various reasons. Not only is density an issue, but between vertical costs and now the next issue everyone's experiencing on the development side, horizontal costs, pipes and supply and all that married together. And along with that, the bigger issue is labor. You know, time's money too, so the longer it takes you to get a project approved and get your permit for you can actually develop and build, that time of two years, three years, whatever it is, that's money. And I, I think, I was talking to him earlier about it, for smaller companies, I don't know how they're surviving in today's world. From a development standpoint, you know, if you're trying to do a fifty-lot subdivision, we worked with a, a local developer here quite a bit, and, you know, that's kind of his cup of tea. It's that fifty-lot subdivision, a hundred-lot subdivision, and him, I was with him two days ago, and I, he's turned in more to not building houses anymore, he's kind of trying to turn into our developer. And for him to make his numbers work, it's, it's difficult right now. So add all those things in, the timing to get something approved, horizontal costs going up, labor, construction, all this stuff, it, it's very hard to find affordable products. And, and again, it goes back to though, you first have to define what that affordable product is. And no one likes to talk about density, but to me, density is a large part of that conversation. And you can have a, a subdivision that complements the community very well, but you have to, it starts with conversations, right? What I think has been done for years is no conversation. I'll use Greenville, South Carolina as an example. Their, their idea of building was approve absolutely everything, no matter what the cost. So fast forward ten years to where they're at now, now let's, let's not approve anything because we messed up. We didn't look at traffic improvements, we didn't look at schools. To me, that's, that's different. Coming from southwest Florida, when I came to Greenville, I was shocked that when you're doing a subdivision, people aren't doing traffic studies and feasibility studies and all this stuff. Because you do that to have a, to develop something that's, that's a smart community that makes sense. So, you know, again, Greenville now, I mean, that's, that's their answer. The answer is not approve anything. So what are people doing in Greenville, where are they moving to? Well, people are driving now forty-five minutes, they're living out in Woodruff and some of these other areas, to have affordable product, to be able to have a home they can live in. We, we truly believe our company, Dr., who still runs our company, is very much involved, Dr. is seventy-four years old. He firmly believes, one of the founding stones of this company is that every person deserves to live in a house. You know, and so that's, you know, how we build. So Greenville's become difficult for us. We're, we're no longer really building in the Greenville market, we're, we're now in all those submarkets, further out, further out, and we'll continue to go further out. We're down in areas that question that, we're looking at Union County, we're looking at areas to where we can build affordable housing at affordable price points where people can afford to buy homes. Our, again, our, our bread and butter's not million dollars, around six, seven hundred thousand dollars. We're not trying to be that, that market, that segue. We're really trying to hit, you know, I would say now, again, it used to be three hundred thousand or less, we're probably now really realistically looking from three to four hundred thousand. And four hundred thousand sounds astronomically high to a lot of people, but I think that's a skewed number because again, if you look at interest rates and you look at some other things, it's, for, for a lot of the working class, it is affordable. And I'm not saying four hundred thousand dollars is, is an affordable house. I'm just saying that, let's define what that word means and what it is. And everyone, including the city now, the county, everyone is having the same conversation we're all having today. Because as the market continues to go where it is and costs continue to go up, it's, it's not going to get better anytime soon. I mean, you've, you've seen slides from both these gentlemen, and, and you can see the, the days on the market and all this data. People are moving to this area of the country. I mean, by, it's, it's amazing to me how many people are moving here. And they're doing that for a lot of that's quality of life. And you have to supply housing for that. You know, again, I think there's a smart way to do that, and I think it starts with dialogue and conversation.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
And we'll come back and have questions and then answer here in just a few minutes. I want to, at this point, so we heard from, from Brian, the Dr. Horton, as it relates to the, the private market and for-profit. I want to turn it over to Ashlyn McCoy with Housing Assistance and hear how some of the things that they're doing to deal with the, the lower income, the more affordable market, and the same challenges that, that, that they're and the same challenges that, that they're running into, and, and just talk a little bit about what you're doing and, and some possible solutions and, and things, and then we'll ultimately come back with questions.
All right, well, I'm Ashlyn McCoy, the Executive Director for the Housing Assistance Corporation. Thank you all for your insight and research, and we use it all the time, so I do appreciate it. I just kind of want to start off with what we're seeing, like round level, these are numbers as of yesterday for Housing Assistance clients. So again, we still have a 0% vacancy in all of our apartment units. We have 140 people on our waiting list for those units, 82 of them are elderly or disabled. So that goes along with the 58% of the population that needs housing in this, this degree. If you can't hear me in the back, just yell at me, 'cause I do tend to speak quietly. Um, right now, we have 249 people that are working with our housing counselors, trying to get approved for a USDA mortgage that we work and package with. These people are 80% of the area median income and below, so that's $60,100. And below are the folks that we are working with at this time for a family of one to four. As you've seen here, a lot of the same issues that have been presented, there's not vacancies, there's high gaps, the market is, you know, increasing. So what, what does it take for us to build a project? We need to develop a land that is in a great price point, and, and we have to be competitive with for-profit folks. And in this market, that's very hard for us to do. Construction and infrastructure costs, as you heard, have increased, but also there's not enough infrastructure outside of city limits, really, for us to build more dense, smart developments. And land is limited, even in city districts, so that becomes hard. We have to have pre-development fences and nonprofit, we have to have all the pre-development funds upfront, so that means purchasing the land, putting in the infrastructure, getting the permits, doing all, all the upfront work that is on Housing Assistance to do that with. And we have to have local awareness and partnerships in order to make those happen. And I think that's one key point, a lot of people hear affordable housing or low-income housing, they don't realize that they actually fit in that demographic. And I think if more people realized that, they might be, were appreciative and open to the idea of someone in that development living next to them. So some impediments, I appreciate the, well, what is affordable, that does look different for everybody, for, for a majority of our population, that's $250,000 and below, and that's virtually non-existent in this, in today's market. Housing Assistance has seen an increase as well as for-profit developers and constructing single-family and multifamily apartments. But we're still going at a really affordable range for a single family, it's about 210 to 220. And our apartment units today vary, depending on what population we're talking about and what that might look like, if it's a tax credit, public, USDA model, I'm happy to get into that later. But some impediments, I think we can talk about solutions, but what are the impediments that we see? So again, cost of labor and materials that continues to rise, but there's also about a construction labor market out there right now. We are hearing it in our home repair department, we're hearing it all over. We cannot find people to do this work, even at affordable level, much less a private level. So the construction field is seeing kind of changes all around, I think, within the last couple of years. Many people who are in need of affordable housing also need transportation in order to access really great-paying jobs that are downtown. And so having limiting housing choices, where bus services are, becomes a problem as well. I know in city limits, we do have a great transportation system, but that's also, also something that is looked at on a state level when it comes to competitive funding, a lot of tax credits. My sites have to be in a transportation system. And right now, they're actually looking at walkability scores as well, and even our downtown Oka Waha development scored very low on walkability, so we automatically get points deducted from applying for things. So that's a, that's a new change, so keeping that in mind. Again, the median income versus what is the average wage, we really hit on that, so thank you. Use and acceptance of vouchers, that is not my purview, that's not something we do, but we work with partners and Thrive, DCC, IAM, they all feel effects of not being able to use those vouchers and have landlords accept those vouchers. I do want to speak kind of on behalf of them about that, but I'm not an expert. And then we also see a lack of, we talk about family and elderly and disabled housing, but also a lack of supportive housing for folks who are homeless, who are survivors of domestic abuse, foster children. There's over 100,000 people in the western North Carolina area that need supportive housing services that cannot get them. So that is also a big part of the population that we need housing for that we don't see housing. Also like to talk about state housing, that's another part of what we do, we don't just build, we try to keep people in a safe and healthy place and make sure that they can live there for their entire life. Most of our folks, about 80%, are elderly women who we serve in our home repair program. So just, you know, we have increased the staff or the availability of code enforcement officers. We cannot help renters through any of our funding, so that is a gap of helping folks who are in unsuitable housing. And then just lack of funding for the home repair program in general. Local, state, and federal home repair funding, there are gaps, they will only serve certain populations or they will only do certain repairs. When you go into a home and there's about $40,000 worth of work to be done, and I only have 20, what are you going to do? So funding that gap has also been a big challenge for Housing Assistance specifically. Another thing, just from a client point of view, the information of available housing units out there, the process is really hard and it's overwhelming. If you don't have access to a computer or you don't know what that market looks like, there's not one central place for those folks to go to. They're bouncing around from us and IAM and Thrive and just not having a streamlined process about what housing looks like here and where can I find safe and affordable housing, and that was also a barrier. So what can we do? I'm not sure I have the million-dollar solution, but just, you know, a couple of things, public education advocacy, number one. Having a sustained effort to build capacity for affordable housing and access, and accessible housing developments, or that upsets through partnerships, for-profit, nonprofit, government, manufacturing companies. And that was it, that was a very good example, we have, we do have large job sectors out there that need this type of housing. And just coming up with a thoughtful collaborative plan, I can't do it by myself, my team cannot do it by themselves, in order to face the crisis that we are in right now. And just another interesting point, integrating affordable housing units with market-rate housing, that has been done nationally, that is one way to make sure that you are having a vibrant and healthy community across the main parts of the population. And making sure that we are being mindful about that, and so just kind of my solutions, maybe.
Thank you, Ashlyn, I think again, giving some solutions, talking about some of the things that Patrick talked about on the lower end, those folks that are, are having housing issues and can I afford where they live or, or... So let me turn it over, I don't know if Sarah can hear me, there's Sarah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can, I think, let's try.
Uh, I'm going in blind, I can't see anyone. Uh, thank you so much for accommodating me from Chapel Hill. Uh, so I'm just going to jump in, and you know, I think you've got such a wonderful kind of context. Because understanding your housing is, and in my experience, is definitely, right? You can't really make any decisions until you truly understand. Who needs help in terms of where the house move that needs? Is my, are my slides going up? Can you see this?
There they go.
Yes.
Great, all right. Um, so my name's Sarah Odeyo, I'm the Assistant Director for Housing and Development, I'm in the city of Chapel Hill, so I'm sure you're familiar with us, from our work, uh, with Greenville. And I'm just a graduate of the school I was starting up, and I'm privileged to be a woman. So that, Greenville's made me a woman, with the help of, uh, the partnership. Uh, but government, this is our home, and we provide assistance to local government and private, and they might help, uh, helping them achieve their mission on the ground. Uh, it's, we've been working across the cities, uh, we work in all kinds of product types, right? Hotels, as we all know, um, downtown development, um, companies that tend to be companies that are government-owned, and we're struggling to bring in investment to, to get them to what it is they want to see. Uh, the point one, our work is in slot, like a client's residence, a brokerage, and one, we rely, the units are not just specifically a place for housing. So there is a definition for what it means for something. Uh, this is a state and federal standard of what it means for a house move to be able to move for, and it's really simply that they shouldn't be spending more than 30% of their income on housing when they have this. And so rental, that means utilities, less than rent, uh, and mortgage, mortgage insurance, and property tax, plus, and the idea here, that housing should free up space from all of the other costs that a house has. Imagine when this mansion is affordable, as your income goes down a lower, you are left with less than fees. Now, capital care, oh, here's the capital A, affordable, and there's lower key, so unsubsidized, affordable housing. You might have heard it called natural recurring affordable housing, NOAA, which is the great age, uh, this is housing that we're in, to fully, uh, it's important to understand, I mean, going to a beautiful job, illustrating this, that these units are not restricted, right? Because tenants are vulnerable to changes. Subsidized, which is the capital A, affordable housing, most of the time we're talking about building affordable housing, they are talking about subsidized, affordable housing. You have this question, right? You're ensuring that those, that these units are those that, um, need, which is having it unsubsidized, you could have also any rapid, right, company, right? Um, with subsidized, uh, publicly funded, so this is public housing, and I think it is very much the image of what housing is. So public housing, being, you know, built in the 60s, 70s, uh, dependent almost entirely on the federal funding, yeah, budget, right? So public housing is critical, it's a service extremely low income, so either housing is ready, to, without any, right? And it's critical, so the funding, right? So the addition of housing, uh, gives people the impression that it's all available there. But there is also a massive market, right, that deals in managed, uh, so you all have heard Ashlyn, Oka Waha, you know, that is a good example, like, managed, with or without public provision, restricted, or subsidized housing. Now, the spectrum for affordable housing, right, we talked about, heard so many kind of, uh, digital points, that point two different, right, on this spectrum. There is online, kind of, uh, playing, this idea of giving out housing, affordable housing, providing affordable housing to help people. And that is, right? On the other end is the on-point, right? Think about that as, and you need this entire spectrum, right? You can rent out of place, you will never save, you know, and buy a home in order to build one. And so this entire spectrum is very important to providing affordable housing. But there's also the other side of it, which is, it's building, but it's also serving, right? Because you can keep building, 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 but if that unsubsidized, affordable housing stock is disappearing at the same rate as you saw, basically, in the data, you're just going to be stuck giving in one piece, right? You're not going to be seeing any progress, serving the housing sector, and you guys saw the 1,600 unit, uh, being, uh, you'll be a long way off, and also you're going to be one piece of it. So the reason why I'm here is how can you, as a local government, actually participate in this, and this is a deep, higher production or preservation. These are the tools that exist already, right? On the demand side, which is really helping tenants, so we heard about rental vouchers. So rental vouchers are critical. They give people choices and they, we had this 30%, right? What was the 30% in there? They have to spend on this voucher, voucher for the market. This has to go hand-in-hand with production, it has to go in the earlier, because you're running out of tenant that, uh, that owner. Uh, you also have homeownership grant, program to help tenants, and then the one subsidy, or if we call it a, is a home interest. So this happens at any, and then on the private side, there's a free sponsor, so there's really anything on, on the, public, private, and there. When it comes to producing, it's the supply side, you've got project-based vouchers, so those are vouchers that are attached to, and in order to make those affordable to the street, and hospitals, and you also have the public housing. And as I said, public housing is, will be better funded and really at the worst, uh, uh, you know, but, yeah, we've seen that happen, and politics as well. Um, the thing with public housing is there is a new program that's trying to help convert it to a public, private, and that is, all across the states, uh, across the country, and will be very important. On the public, private, we get some producer, is low-income housing tax, right? So you'll, you'll hear me in our lines, and you're probably familiar with the, I will dig into that actually, because it's, uh, to help break one. We've heard already talk about removing barriers to production, so this is where, as the local government, have control, over our, uh, entitlements, have control of the, this infrastructure, uh, really making a difference in the space. So they can allow for affordable housing, and then there is, right, subsidies, this is necessary subsidy, I'll, and I'll do it to this board, and what does that mean? We are needing action, and that's, and then I'm kind of, there are non-traditional, they, these are out there, uh, in May, right, that guaranteed loans that allow banks to apply, really good interest rates for a year. So digging in a little bit more supply side, which is so important to really make things, I'm surprised, I've actually not got, uh, that many, uh, that, that just hinders us, you're, uh, our county, that will get, right? Uh, and the last program, and the last, that we, and to infrastructure, monitor this, it is a tax credit that's provided for the construction of affordable, it is not something that a local government wants to advantage of, it's important to private developers, it's great about this program, that it provides, and we need to project, dependent on the suitability of the site. And so that site suitability is so important, and it's one of those places which local governments, they, so again, the infrastructure, you were earlier, to have infrastructure to serve a site that is in proximity to communities, is walkable. And so if you look, they're critical, identifying, there is a 9% tax credit that is high, so we're not going to, not in it. So we have nine five projects that apply in the lineup are actually according to this credit. But it's so competitive, actually covers ninety. Correct. Ninety percent of capital and need to build. That's huge. Uh, the rest is built by. Uh, there is also a quarter. Now, this is only about forty percent of the capital to raise to build a project. But it's not competitive. And I'll say for the last program, this is probably the number one way that we have seen, uh, local government resources available to participate. Because they guarantee a project simply by providing gap warranty for that. The project will remain available for thirty years, remain covered, owned and managed and monitored by the North Carolina Housing Board. For quality, which is critical. And I'm really at the end of the day, it's serving household at sixty percent of the area. Which is the sweet spot of where local governments are actually allowed to participate. So you hear a lot of different price points, you know, you hear a four hundred thousand dollar house. Um, the town, the city, not actually participate in production. Because it is outside your. So in order for the government to participate, at least twenty percent of the units and projects have to be set aside for the exclusiveness. So if you have a place to find a sixty percent AMI area, you have to call seventy five thousand. Or four percent. So sixty percent AMI. For a two person household, that's a, you know, a parent, a child, a couple, whatever. Uh, thirty, thirty six thousand. So if you're going to do something for a development, at least twenty percent of the units have to be affordable around, around a house. You can subsidize units at a higher income level up to eighty percent. Okay, so a two person household earning about forty. So this is the space that you can actually subsidize. Property is one way, right? Critical infrastructure is another way, aids about. Ultimately, the total payments to the development, if it follows the rules of, right? Uh, cannot be more than the difference between the market rate, price, and the affordable price. All of this should work for homeownership system as well as, um, rent. Be up to. Uh, there are other ways to help. That price point could be higher when you're subsidizing that housing to a company. Uh, but there's less. So what we're seeing is that generally, there's a space that's always, as it was always. And that's that space that eighty percent AMI and what market. Because that eighty percent AMI rent pays, you know, a thousand to eleven hundred for a one bedroom. And the market rate is at, I don't remember the exact way, but maybe fifteen. So if you're trying to provide it to twelve hundred, there's no way for a local government to just. I'd love to pause if there are questions here, but. Um, so to support preservation, again, with all the hippies rules, uh, there are, they have grants. We have older. And unsubsidized affordable stocks, we, in older neighborhoods that are, um, critical to repair. Um, so how do you preserve that while many prices go up too high? Weatherization, which while enhanced property, right? Weatherization and energy. So this is really important because when rental products is unsubsidized, and that's about, right? But there's also the utility, both rent and ownership, utility cost. So you can break down costs of utilities, money, style, energy, right? Overtime, even if the rent goes up. There's still a lot of pain to see in your housing. Uh, it is important to see whether you have lots of units that are, right? And ensuring that you're. And the code enforcement is okay. There are restrictions that may, uh, be enforced. So it's critical on your pathway from here. Uh, if you write the rules and have to follow as a local government. Um, and you go, right? And so it's important to prioritize participation according to where your actual housing costs. Do you feel the company heard, uh, today from the other panelists? And also looking for your own resources, right? Because where you can participate and how you can participate, uh, you can lead with your resources. When I say resources, I say how much money. Um, which properties to have? Do you have sites that you potentially, uh, do well for in life type of projects? That if you provide infrastructure for it, it would be ideal. Uh, so really assessing your own resources. And I'm organizing based on this. There are so many decisions to make. I mean, I feel over. You can, you know, where you want it to be and to. Affordable housing is very, it's critical. That's at that extremely low level and is much more expensive. It's not just upfront building, it's a home or it's subsidized. Uh, but those are based over. Do you want it to be on a rental front, ownership, seniors, families, uh, multifamily, uh, including. Uh, where do you want to locate it or think about the name of the, right? Thinking about the same. Preserve and or. Um, I want to remind you all that you have a lot of power in terms of, uh, the new construction, private development. So local government, we see this a lot, uh, somebody comes home from the family, they spend a lot of money, a lot of uncertainty. To go in private council, you tend to know that it's not what you want to hear and location, uh, that's not the density you want. A lot happens. So I encourage local government, uh, as you saw right now, to really, once you know what your priorities are, once you have the idea, what you want to achieve. Really take control of that early part of the process and think about your sites, what you can do with your site. And then finding the right partner to then team that project. And. Down there?
So Sarah, if you could, could you go back one slide, please? Okay, I want to use this for, uh, questions in the room, if you don't mind. So, um, one of the things that Sarah talked about was, uh, barriers to development and those kind of things. And, you know, really our control is in those, um, a lot, a lot of ways is in those first four steps. And that's for the, not only the for profit, but also the non-profit. Um, and our first session this morning, we talked about sense of place. And about, you know, what, how do we create this sense of place? How do we preserve open space? Um, ultimately later today, I think I'll hear, we'll hear from council about their, their vision for what a great subdivision development looks like. Ryan, you talked about opening a conversation, um, with the elected leaders about having a nice subdivision and those kind of things. I'd like to hear from the panelists and particularly, um, Ashlyn and Brian about, you know, these barriers. How do we get these nice subdivisions, these nice amenities, right? But in a way that helps us provide housing in general, but, and also affordability. Does that make, am I making sense about, um, uh, and how is that? Does it become a impediment to, to affordable or to more housing? So just kind of run with that a little while.
About some of the stuff we're doing in Greenville right now is to this end of adding an affordable component to subdivisions, right? The county of Greenville County is trying to come up with ways to have affordable component to subdivisions. And the ways they're doing that are through, there's leftover PPP money, there's ways to, uh, help on improvement costs as in road improvements and bringing utilities to the site. And, and then within your subdivision, sectioning off a, a component of the property that's got much higher density to, and, and making sure that's a specific price point. They're tying that to some of the zoning as you get these subdivisions approved. So there's been some difficulty getting those approved over, I would say, the last five, six years. But I think the direction they're going is, the big push is, if you're, they don't want to get anything approved, you're going to have to have some affordable component. And in their mind, it's kind of like that two, to her point, it's two fifty, but I think in their mind, it's like two thirty or less, two twenty or less. But they love it to be sub, you know, two hundred, but with cost right now, it's, it's very difficult. And in that same conversation, it's very difficult because of where costs are right now, is, is a for profit builder. To get tied into something like that, how do you control that? You know, for profit and as my costs exponentially keep going up and up and up, it just, it's a very scary conversation. I don't know what the answer to that is unless there's continued backend help from the county level. Um, but that's just kind of some of the stuff we're looking at in Greenville market. You know, how do you do that? Well, you, you can section those areas off if, if it's a two hundred lot subdivision, there's areas to, you know, compartmentalize that specific area and have it, have it, have its own access. So it doesn't, if they're really affect the other part of the property where you're maybe trying to get some higher price points.
Yeah, I'd just like to play up. So if you're not familiar with housing assistance developments, we did build a very dense subdivision at one point in the early two thousands. And we kind of found that most, the homeowners that originally moved in had very small kids. And here we are, ten, twelve, fifteen years later, and all of a sudden, there's not enough room for parking. There's not enough space for the growth of the family, which is where this type of housing is needed, as Mr. Villan pointed out. So, I mean, we, housing assistance, likes to build at about a quarter acre, maybe a little less, as dense as we would go for a single family development. So this city is definitely a product, you know, affordability is definitely a product of density. Um, but I think for long-term planning, for a smart, nice development, you do have to think about that component of it. Is what is it going to look like when these two kids are now sixteen and also have parts of themselves, you know, or a new family, bigger family, you know? Things like that, we have to, we, housing assistance tries to keep, you know, for a front, forefront of our minds. Um, as far as the redevelopment phase, I think the city of Hendersonville, I'm going to give some news here, does a really great job. Uh, we've had tremendous conversations upfront, meeting with staff and making sure, hey, this is our idea. Do you think it's going to work? Do you see any kind of pinch points right off the bat that we need to address for an involvement? So we, we do appreciate this, the initial conversations because, you know, we have a, uh, development coming to planning board on Monday. And if it goes all the way through the phase, we're going to have, we would have invested tens of thousands of dollars into this project, you know, and if I get to see the council, I'm not saying this, but in, it doesn't go through for whatever reason, and that's okay. But there is an investment point before, you know, what, before you have site control at times, so you can see if a project goes through. So making sure that you have great conversations ahead of time to know that a project is feasible from a local government standpoint. Um, it's, it's huge for our.
So let's, and I'm going to turn it over to council here, just a minute, we've still got fifteen minutes or so. But that, let me, let's, little, help, the health council. So having, you know, there's no guarantees. You know, when you're dealing with the public process, there is no guarantees. But, and this goes to you too, Ryan. Um, as, as, and, and ultimately people, even though you're building houses, but I'll let you speak as expert as relates to developer. Having general idea of what the rules are. Trying to get rid of the unknowns as much as possible, I would think is a positive to encourage development and help to control those costs up through the first four levels, right? I mean, versus ambiguity and, you know, I would think, talk about that for a minute, either one of you, so.
I mean, I can only relate to, I give you, you know, two examples. One would be the Clear Creek project, which is Stonecrest and Cantrell Hills, which was originally brought through entitlements by a local developer. Um, who ended up, for whatever reasons, COVID happened, banks stopped borrowing money. We bought him out of that, we self-developed through a development branch of our company. But, you know, I think even Ken Jackson, who a lot of people probably know, when he went through that process, he did have a lot of conversations upfront. The way he works is, hey, I'm going to go meet with council members and, and see if this, this works. And then to tap roof, uh, which was in Penn County, but it's something I was very involved in. And I did the same thing, it was a lot of conversations with every single commissioner, public involved. On having, you know, the general conversation of where we thought that was going to go. And, you know, that's not foolproof. Lots of times you think you have a home run and everyone's in agreement and you show up and it gets turned down. And that's just the reality of the business. But to that point, you know, and I'll use Japeroom as an example, we had invested about one point six million dollars into that project. So that's a lot of money. And, and again, that could have been half that if maybe there was a different conversations upfront. I don't know how we would have had a different conversation, but I think the conversation was density. Um, and all those funds, money, the time to get to that endpoint, their acquisition and construction to where we're at now in the marketplace. It's almost impossible to build anything under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now. Unless you just have so much density, smaller lots, more townhomes, more of that type of stuff that a lot of people just don't like. The general consensus from the, from the public is they don't, they don't like that. Density scares, scares me.
Anything I add? And, and I don't want to cut off Patrick or, or Sonny, but, um.
I mean, I think, you know, one, one of the things I like to harp on is infrastructure. So for a nonprofit or even a for-profit, to want to run a water and sewer line extension, that can blow up a project. So if there's conversations to talk with staff or council about what maybe the long range plan is, or is there interest in helping us do this piece? Specifically at housing assistance, that could make or break a project as well, just.
I'll add to that. I mean, we're, we're living in a different world right now, right? And there's very specific requirements on development, certain pipes, all that stuff, right? Ductile, I mean, you, you cannot get it right now. So we're dealing with the developer in Hendersonville and you're looking at, okay, waiting a year until he can start, he's in our quarter of the property now. That's, that's money, he's going to pay thirty, forty thousand dollars a month in interest if he can even hold on to the products, projects. So those are conversations, okay, well, I, I know that's what the, the code says, right? But maybe we can have a different conversation of plastics or some other type of pipe and move up that only because of the world we live in right now. And it's not just pipe, it's, it's anything. I mean, it's, it's wood, it's, it's, again, all those different supply issues and, and to her point earlier, talking about labor, you know? Labor is, it's amazing to me because we talked about what people make in the market. I can only speak for our company, but we employ a lot of people in this specific market and put a lot of people to work. And those are all very good paying jobs. And it goes back to education is one of them, right? Thirty years ago, we had a big push on trade schools and that just, that got lost somewhere along the line. We need a big push back to that segue of, of trades and training people to be plumbers and electricians and, and, and all those things that just add value to the marketplace. And, and again, all those items help lower things at the end of, end of the day.
Thank you. All right. So I'm going to turn it over to the council for the next little while, so.
Um, at the leadership forum, uh, months ago, we talked about, um, I think it was the Habitat for Humanity, uh, panelist that was there. And he was, uh, he used the term nimbyism, which we are familiar with, but then he said banana, which I had never heard of before, which was the people who were, the build nothing anywhere near anywhere. And so that was the first time I'd ever heard that term used and I thought it was interesting. But, um, from, and, and one of the things you talked about with the workforce that you guys were facing was like, a lot of the skilled laborers had aged out, um, of the profession. And we have really no one to replace them with, um, to do that skilled, you know, type of labor work. But, um, as a developer, and, you know, we've had recently several, um, subdivisions or, you know, things proposed from the city council. Can you, you know, developers have gone through a bad rap. Uh, we assume since they are. We assume since they are a real estate developer that they're just rich, rolling their money. And, but also there's a perception that doctors are wealthy and small business owners are wealthy too. And so a lot of times their profit margins are not as high as what people think that they are. So can you discuss a little bit of like what, what types of pre-development funds and money investments they have? Also, in addition to cutting density and how much that increases, then their cost and then crisis of, I don't know if there's a percentage of how it works, but.
You know, I, we, and I can only speak for our company. We, we, when we underwrite things, and I have thanked out a CFO now that underwrites that for me, but I did that for many years for our company in Southwest Florida. So on the front end, when we're underwriting these projects, you know.
Can you explain what underwriting?
So when we put together our pro-form, and when we try to figure out, hey, does this deal work, right? You know, it spits out, you know, once the form is done, I have a home price, and that goes into a market study. And I figure out where that trend line is in the market. Because we, we want to be kind of within the market. We don't want to be up here, we don't want to be down here, we want to be somewhere in the middle of that market. That's just how we underwrite things. And when we look at development and we look at building, you know, typically, we're extremely conservative. We're, we're just, you know, and I would speak to DR himself, he is like a blue jeans guy in a T-shirt. He's started with one house, and he's turned this company into something that's unbelievable. And he's done that because, you know, he's, he's very involved, he likes to hit the affordable price point in the market, he likes to sell to families. And so, you know, we've got strict returns, like, you know, we borrow money like anyone else, but I'm borrowing money from corporate. Well, who's corporate? Corporate's Wall Street, that's how it works in the public sector. So when we're underwriting stuff, but in a form, we're looking at cash back, trying to get our cash back, we're paying, paying our corporate folks back in twenty-four months. And if we can't cash that back in twenty-four months, well, the deal doesn't work. So there's only certain ways you can do that. You have to raise price, you have to sell more. But all that comes from, if I have density here and I cut that down to here, you start to, that twenty-four months is going to thirty-six months or forty-eight months, and it just prices up out of the deal. We just won't commit those funds to the deal. Nope, nobody, everyone remembers the recession. In Southwest Florida, it was like ground zero. You had, I mean, thousands and thousands of lots and subdivisions where these developers came in and they put on a thousand lots and then just walked from everything, right? No one's really doing that anymore, it's kind of smart development now, and you're phasing things, you're being smart with your money. But, you know, the density, you know, how much does it cut? Well, we talked about Taproot earlier, like Taproot, I'm a hundred thousand dollars more now to where I was when I started that project. And it's probably more than that. A lot of that is the costs have gone up, but a large function of that is my density, they got cut, I don't want to say half, they got cut substantially. Now, you go into the city, and I'll use Stonecrest as an example, that project was approved with pretty good density, and it was complement of townhomes and single families. And, you know, the only thing that's really true about that price is the developer at the time, the, the person who owned it, you know, got into some problems and couldn't really complete the transaction to purchase the property. So, you know, we had to step in, we had to pay him a premium to buy that project. And what's happened since that, well, in the last year, the cost has gone through the roof. So again, we're just going up and up on price. But if that project didn't have the density that it has, and it had half that, I don't think that project gets built today. Because, unless you go back to landlord and say, hey, I can only pay you half, no landlord, that's never a good conversation. And I've had those conversations. And, you know, landlord wants to make the most they can for the property, and that's, that's their right. But again, like Stonecrest, today, if that prop, that density was cut, I mean, that project just doesn't get built.
Can I piggyback off of that question? Just from my knowledge, I guess it would be grim. What, you talked about being able to pay it back, whatever you're borrowing for the project. Can you talk about what a typical profit margin is? Because I feel like I really feel a lot of people that assume that developers are working with a forty percent profit margin or whatever. I would assume that's, you know, that'd be great, but it's not maybe the goal.
Well, from a developer standpoint, most developers, and again, we're, we're really not a development company. We, we own a development company, four-star, we own sixty-six percent of them. The idea was buy a development company to develop for us. It's a weird relationship, it doesn't always work out. But, you know, locally, we have development partners, Ken Jackson being one of them and several others. And most of those guys, and this is pretty much standing across the board, they're now looking at thirty-five to forty percent margins on the development side, which is, again, the reason we're probably developing two projects in, in this market up here is because I can't pay him a thirty-five to forty percent market and still have a price point to where I can sell enough and return the investment to who I need, to my corporate folks. That doesn't work, so that's why we start self-developing. The numbers just look better if we don't have a development. We caught that thirty-five percent profit out, reality of what it is. But most developers, that's what they're looking for, they're looking for a thirty-five, forty percent market. Pre-recession, that was pretty much everywhere in the industry, that was probably more like twenty-five percent. And I think a lot of those guys disappeared through the recession, they came back into the market, and the moon for them. The only way they want to really take that risk if they're going to take the risk and make thirty-five, forty percent. And they take a lot of risks, there's a lot of stuff that can go wrong in development. And I'll use Stonecrest as an example, four million dollars in rock on that project that the original developer did not know about. And I love Ken to death, probably would have been bankrupt, I tell him that to this day all the time. Best thing that happened was us get him out of the deal. Well, we knew that upfront because of some of the due diligence we did, unlike most. We spent a hundred thousand dollars doing soil samples and digging for rock out there. But we knew those costs upfront so we could mitigate it and figure it out. But, you know, it's, most developers are looking thirty-five to forty percent, years ago, it's twenty-five percent. But you just don't see that anymore, because they're not willing to take the risk.
Very simple question. Ms. Odeyo, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
On one of your slides, you had a picture from the News and Observer of what appeared, where, can you tell us where that is?
Uh, the, on the light text slide, the little housing text grid.
Yeah, the very nice looking houses, and I'm just wondering, that is an example of. Because it looks a lot different than our one here, but it also looks pretty cool. So I'm just wondering if you can tell us where that is.
Those are both local, the photos that you saw there. So it's Signal Ridge, and then on the one on top is the Waha Park.
And I'll tell them about the one from the, the News and Observer picture that you cited, at the little box that says News and Observer, it's a little small picture.
It was on the three houses, but.
It's for Raleigh, it's just an example of a naturally affordable house.
That was naturally affordable house, do you know where that was?
In Raleigh.
I mean, like, where in Raleigh?
I don't know.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sorry.
And so Sarah, when you say natural, that is, those are some existing houses where we went in, somebody went in and rehabbed them and preserved them, and now they're still on the market, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spindell, let me add, if you're looking for examples, I was just down in Spindell yesterday, and, it's forty minutes away from here, and on Pennsylvania Avenue, they have, small scale, but they had five homes that a nonprofit was rehabbing, one was just about done. They had multiple homes that Habitat had gone in and done. And they had a private developer build one house, they're about to do a second. Here's the great thing, and I have pictures, I can actually show you if you want when we're done. Right, the Habitat home was next to the Market Rate home, you, you couldn't tell. You didn't know what, which one was which. Habitat would be affordable, right? And the Market Rate one, I think somebody told me that was like, I could be wrong, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, something like that. And I don't know what the Habitat home sold for ultimately, but there was an affordability component to that. Point being is, you could see on one street block where you had three different entities, right? Private sector, Habitat, and another nonprofit group going in and turning the street around. Now, it's in its early stages, give it one year, and I can't, you know, I'm excited to kind of see what that could look like. But beautiful homes, and also more affordable, so, great, good example.
Thank you.
And, and one more thing, and so when they gave me a tour yesterday of the town, Habitat had a huge presence there. And so there were multiple street blocks in other areas, were really nice homes. And again, under Habitat, I think the requirement is, and maybe one of the ladies here might be able to speak to it, I think Habitat keeps the affordability at maybe eighty percent of area median. So this is, these are not higher income households by any means. And yet, you, you wouldn't know that these are lower income households, and these are really nice homes. Good examples if you want to take a tour.
Thank you. Well, it is twelve o'clock, so I want to, let's give our panel a moment. We talked about sense of place, we talked about housing, all things housing. So we're going to round up, as we look at growth and development, we're going to talk about transportation. And this really is a session of back and forth and an opportunity to, we've got three experts up here who can talk about all things transportation. We have Wanda Austin, who is our division engineer. So she is over the division in construction projects and those kind of things, well, maybe not construction, but, yeah, construction. And then Kristen Winkley, who we, is over the, our EPO, planking and this kind of thing. And Jonathan Guy, who's with Kimberly Horn, who's our transportation consultant. So I've got some questions I'm going to ask, but obviously, as we go through, feel free to stop and, you ask questions too. So we can have some feedback, but generally, we've got about an hour and a half to go through this session, so we'll get started. So the first question, and I'm going to allow, allow all three to ask these questions or answer the questions as I go through is, and as I was telling the panel earlier, as we have development projects come before the city council, a lot of times, one of the main things that we hear from opponents of projects, adjacent residents, adjacent property owners, is that this road cannot handle this development, this level of development. The traffic's going to be a problem, the road can't handle it. With your experience, and I'll start with Wanda, can you talk a little bit about roadway and intersection level of service ratings and how DOT uses those ratings to, to determine when to expand, widen, improve roads? And just how each road, I think, has a rating and those kind of things? Just talk about how you use those, and I'll allow, start with Wanda, but then we'll allow, I'll allow Oriya to answer. And I had your two cents worth, so.
So John said he was going to start with the easy question, and I don't know, that one's pretty loaded, so. But there is a rating system, we call it a level of service. It goes from an A to an F, you know, depending on if you're, and there's different criteria if you're depending on if you're on an intersection itself or if you're on a highway. And pretty much to, to kind of put it in visual terms, I mean, a level A is going to be, there's absolutely nobody else on the highway with me, whether it's a two-lane, four-lane, six-lane, whatever. You know, where an F would be I-26. So, you know, that's kind of gives you that comparison there. So, and it really depends on, there's not a good clean-cut answer as to, you know, when you're looking at it, because you have to look at the functionality of the roadway, whether it's a neighborhood street or if it's a collector's street, or if it's an interstate highway where you're moving, you know, freight and goods is the purpose of the road. So all of that kind of puts it into perspective. Looking at intersections, and I, I just pulled this from some of our manuals, because we always have manuals that we have to go to. That level of service A, you know, talking about just average delay is like a ten-second per-vehicle delay. So if you were sitting at an intersection and you had to wait less than ten seconds to get out of that intersection, then that would be a level of service A. And this is that of signalized, yes, signalized intersection. Whereas like a, an E or an F, that goes all the way down to like between fifty-five seconds or a minute to a minute and a half. Or if you have to sit there over a minute and a half, then you're, you're definitely at a, a, a level of service F. Typically, when we start the, looking at projects, we, we don't build to that level of service A. That, there's a balance there between resources and your benefit cost of what you're doing. So it's typically, we're building to that, that lower tier of either an E. You know, sometimes we try to get to a D depending on what, you know, the, what it is.
So that, that theme said, and then I'll, I'll ask Jonathan a follow-up question. But typically, so basically, typically, it's not, the only time you're really going to have an A level of service may be a road that has just been widened, it's the middle of the night, and, right, I mean.
Right.
Have they, I mean.
I mean, you couldn't build every road to a level of service A because there would, you know, more room for housing.
Jonathan, from your experience, do you think you want to add to that?
Yeah, I would, I would just caveat that one statement there. I would say all roads operate at level service A, it's just dependent upon the time of day that you're looking at. And it's how you balance the resources that you have. So if you think about it, there's also a distinction between whether it's a signalized control or an unsignalized control intersection. And during the peak hours, which are our traditional, you know, AM, think of, you know, seven to nine AM and PMP hour, your four to six, so commuting to worker school, commuting home, that's when we have the most congestion. And so those roads are going to operate at a core level of service because it really gets into, I, I think, one way to kind of explain it is think of it as density, right? So the density of vehicles that are there is going to be higher. You're going to have more vehicles on the road, you're going to have less maneuverable, less maneuverability on the roadway because of the concentration cars that are there. Unsignalized intersections, they traditionally will have a shorter delay associated with it before it reaches level service F, and that's because you don't have a device that is creating a right-of-way brake for that. But it's not, it's not uncommon for those intersections to have some of the highest delay in intersections just because they don't have that brake. I think that's, I think that covers what I would want to add to that.
Yeah, so I, I work at the Metropolitan Planning Organization, so overall, we take a relatively different approach. A lot of what we're looking at is trying to see what's coming down the line in twenty-five years or so. But we do have one document, our congestion management process, where we look at what is the appropriate amount of delay and level of service dependent upon the area's context. Hendersonville is the economic center of Henderson County. You guys have the longest contiguous greenway in the region. You literally have Asheville beat by a mile. And so like having, having conditions of, you know, level of service A is not always ideal for condition, or for contexts like that. We don't want to look at congestion on our main streets the same way we do on our interstates. And so for us, what we've kind of laid out in our documents is Hendersonville, and especially the core around the downtown, that's where a little more tolerance of congestion isn't necessarily a bad thing. And, and so I think another point, kind of more to the central question of, you know, development and congestion and how they mix, I think Hendersonville is also in a really kind of unique position in that way, where kind of the efficacy of local development controls and how it applies to traffic congestion mitigation is, is different than other places. I, I was reading through John's email, and I didn't read it well enough, so I did prepare a PowerPoint, and then saw the note saying, don't prepare a PowerPoint. But I was pulling data, and, you know, the, we're able to pull kind of where the, the origin of traffic is for some of the busier quarters, sixty-four, twenty-five, one-seventy-six. And one of the things that really stuck out to me was for US sixty-four, about seventy to eighty percent of the traffic on that road, I think a lot of people say that's the most congested road in Hendersonville. It's not coming from Hendersonville. So you're kind of in a situation of the growth happening here, yes, that's going to impact your roadways. But growth not happening here is also impacting your roadways. And so that's a unique situation in terms of how development and traffic are kind of interlinked.
Thank you. So with all that, we've talked about, talking about level of service and traffic. What, what are the factors, and we'll go in the same order, what are the factors that DCDOT uses to determine when to modernize or widen roads? So really, what goes into that when you're setting up those priorities to, to do a project, develop a project?
So a lot of that has to do with the, going back to the functionality of the road. So today, a road, you know, might be just a neighborhood street. Then you have a development come in, and that neighborhood street. Then you have a development come in and that neighborhood street, you know, might turn into a collector. So that would push it to, we, here again, we have manuals, we have, you know, standards that we go by. So that would dictate what your lane width, then your shoulder width. And so all of that works into what we would look at and say, okay, this road needs to be modernized. Which basically means, does it function as it should, you know, with the current classification? And that can be bicycle pedestrians, looking at, you know, CTPs, MTVs. And just recognizing that, you know, today, it might be a two-lane rural road that, like I said, if a development comes in or if an industry comes in, you know, that would certainly change that classification. So that would be what we would, you know, look at as, to determine if it needs modernization.
You used a couple of acronyms there, so can you explain what those acronyms are?
Yeah, the CTP is a comprehensive transportation plan and the MTP is metropolitan transportation plan. And that is the document, since y'all are in the MPO, that is the document that kind of directs where we think this area's gonna grow. And then we plan to that document the best we can.
And the city council has a copy of our 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So it's in your notebooks for your future reference, so you can have that. Jonathan, anything as it relates to you?
Yeah, I think one thing to add to that would be, and it's a growing trend we're seeing, and that's the infusion of safety. Looking at the, and that's also tied to operational performance, which goes back to level of service, but the actual safety and conditioning of roadways. Does it reach a certain point where you need to address either a sight distance issue that may or may not have been an issue, but now volumes have increased? We're seeing that as a growing reason for that. And then just coming back through the standpoint of growth, but in the sense of development, which is a lot of the ways we see roads change over time. Development occurs and that development either widens that out, they improve, they may just add an internal lane, they may modernize the signal system. There's a variety of different ways in which that happens, but that's, we tend to be on what we call the cycle of functional obsolescence. Where we will see a need, we improve the need, and then as soon as we build that need and we open up capacity, that capacity is immediately sucked up because more comes in because now there's capacity, it's a quicker route now. And so we're right back where we were. So it's a futile attempt, if you ever try to think you're gonna build your way out of capacity or congestion by adding capacity. You're never gonna get to that point, so. Tristan?
Sure, I mean, I think in terms of prioritizing projects, I won't get into the gory details of prioritization and put everyone to sleep. I think Wanda spared us from that as well. But I think the important things are is that, you know, data is a big part of it. The way North Carolina looks at projects, it is a data-driven process. But at the same time, local input is a huge part of it. Hendersonville and Henderson County being part of the MPO, we look to you all in terms of what is the most important local need. Because the fact of the situation, and you know, we say this in every orientation, is that we have no shortage of transportation needs. Really, the process of what we're doing and what NC DOT is doing is we're trying to take out the highest needs. And having local support to address those needs is essential. I think to, also to the point of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, that I think is an interesting thing to note. And that is, you know, we do look at how much growth is coming, where is that growth going? How does that impact the transportation network? So over the next 20, 25 years, we're anticipating around 190,000 new residents in the region. That is another Henderson County, Haywood County, and Madison County coming on top of our existing region. But what we did find is we looked at, well, what if we keep growing the way we're growing? What if we keep growing where more and more of the growth is going further and further out? And to put it simply, our roadway model just lit up red. The problems are everywhere if you keep growing that way. But what we did find is if we had, if we're able to concentrate more of that growth into more of our established, more urban areas like Hendersonville. Vehicle miles travels goes down. People are making, are more likely to make shorter trips in economic centers. People walking and biking and using transit goes up. And so that's what our current 25-year plan for the region is kind of aiming at. The issue is, or the kind of disconnect is the MPO doesn't control land use. And frankly, the land use trends are not going in that direction. So really, we have a plan or an aspirational plan of where things can go and how we can mitigate some of those impacts. But it's, it's different than what's currently happening.
So let's drill down a little bit and say, are you saying, y'all build a plan in an ideal world? Ideal, politics aside, all that kind of, ideal world, is you would limit? And I think what I've heard, and I wanna make sure we've heard what you said, particularly at the council, you would, and I think where we would limit sprawl. Limit, you know, these second-tier or third-tier developments out, away from the urban centers and have more density. Let the cities grow around themselves versus sprawling out and creating, or going out in the rural areas and creating more urban development in the rural areas. So is that what you're saying? Is that what you're?
I mean, for the most part, it's an informative exercise of here's, you know, again, for us, it is how is the growth impacting our transportation network? And we know if the growth keeps going further and further out, it's gonna be more and more of US sixty-four that's going to be addressed. More miles of sixty-four, more miles of twenty-five, whichever road you wanna pick. It's really saying that, and I think it's somewhat intuitive. If, if you're living close to downtown Hendersonville, you are more likely to be making a shorter distance trip. You have many destinations, you have many employers that are relatively nearby. If you are living in, say, you know, the Etowah area, you're more likely to be making a longer trip to very similar destinations. And so looking at that in terms of the regional picture, you know, again, I think Hendersonville is somewhat unique in that the development here is more likely to have shorter trips, potentially more likely to make those trips by walking, biking, using transit.
Just to piggyback on what he's saying, or what Tristan said too, was I think that's, you know, that partnership that we have. And we have to be mindful of that. So it's not just one person or one organization, you know, making these decisions. I mean, and we're not making these decisions in a vacuum, but it's, you know, what DOT does is gonna affect, you know, Hendersonville. You know, what Hendersonville does is gonna affect the MPO plan, you know, so it's all of us working together to get to that goal. The other thing I'd like to add on that too is, you know, I think there's different ways and I am totally speaking out of my expertise here, so. But, you know, just thinking about when you were talking about sixty-four growth, you know, as an example. I think that goes back to that planning aspect and zoning and everywhere else where you think about where do you want? And then that leads back into the Metropolitan Planning Document is, you know, where you want that, making that growth smart growth. So that you're not, you know, so you don't have that sprawl and you have, you know, then you create a problem. And then DOT has to come in and then we have to buy everybody out because we don't have any place to provide for that. So I think there's that, that hand, you know, hand in glove, you know, partnership there that's got to be together.
Hal, and I think this is important, go ahead and get this context out, cause we've talked about, you know, working with DOT and understanding the level of services. But Wanda, this is really probably directed to you and Tristan, the current financial condition of the department, there's been a lot reported on that. How was, how do y'all see that impacting future road projects, you know, where we are today and projects in the future? What is kind of the forecast for that financial model and those kind of things?
So currently, the forecast is not good. We're, we've got a lot more projects on the books than available funding. And so we're in, currently in a process of getting physically constrained. Federal highways requires us to be physically constrained in a four-year document. And so our TIP is actually a ten-year document. We only have to have four years according to federal highways that is physically constrained. So we've been working to do that. I'm hopeful to have a draft, a new reorganized STIP come out in the next couple of weeks, hopefully next month. That will show us where everything's gonna shift. So we know projects are gonna shift our timelines, not necessarily commitment. There will be some commitments that were previously committed that are gonna become non-committed. You know, and unfortunately, I think some areas will be more affected than others. You know, we've not like any, you know, unusual to anybody else, but we've just had a lot, you know, in coming out of COVID. I think, you know, that's, we're seeing the effects of that with the increases in prices and just labor shortages. That's also affecting our schedules as well. So with that being said, we are getting the, the infrastructure bill money that'll help. That's gonna help with some of the inflation costs that we're seeing that are, we've incurred. And so it will help, and then there's lots of other grant opportunities that I think we can tap into in, we being collective in this group. Because that's one thing that the bill really pointed out, or not pointed out, but is the way it's organized is that it's not just DOT, you know, money being funneled into DOT or the states or the feds. But there's a lot of opportunities for local grants that we can partnership with.
Tristan, Jonathan, anything that I add to that?
Sure, I mean, I think Councilperson Hensley has heard me deliver the not-so-cheery news on the finances. I'll try to be a bit more optimistic. Look, I mean, NC DOT is currently $8 billion overprogrammed with its.
Tristan, we're supposed to be getting those. Well, that wasn't important, but it used to be eleven and now it's eight.
Now I'm saying, we're trying to be in the right direction. But I love the shock, wear off a little bit. But look, I mean, I think there was a fundamental choice at the state level. Of we can keep the slate of projects that we have and in some places, we can do that, but we won't have new projects until 2040, 2045, in some cases, 2053. But the idea of what's gonna be coming down the pipe of trying to get back into budget is that we'll have a cleaner slate moving forward. And we know for a growing region that is changing a lot, our priorities and the areas that are gonna be popping up as issues are gonna be changing. We should be more reflexive than saying, "You've got an issue, we'll get to that in 35 years." So I think, I think there, obviously like, you know, losing projects that have been considered committed previously is not ideal. But I think having a clean slate so we can have a better chance of getting priorities like Signal Hill, Berkeley, Duncan Hill, where we know a whole lot of growth is going, that is not a bad thing. Spartanburg Highway, we know that there are safety issues out there. Having the possibility of getting that funded within 35 years, again, that is something that I think can be an asset, especially for a growing region.
I'll just add, you can't have the lens as we used to have years and years ago, the DOT's gonna solve all the problems. They are charged with a different responsibility than what you're charged with. And so you have to look at it through their lens versus your lens and then vice versa too. I think where this really comes down to is that through the age of funding that's coming out, it's gonna go back a lot to partnership that relies on both the local and the state agencies, as well as the MPOs, to pursue those projects for funding, which is why it's not going directly through DOT. Not that they would mismanage the funds or anything like that, but it's trying to bring it down and closer to a closer, finer-grained level that gives you the opportunity to competitively seek that money. And that, to me, is actually a really cool thing, that you now have that opportunity instead of DOT just getting a, you know, blank check of, here's the money we're gonna do, we're gonna build these projects out. Because what happens over time is that projects, right or wrong, end up in the STIP. And by the time they can get funded and programmed, they either may not be needed or it's the wrong solution for that. And that's just the realities of how long it takes to bring a project from infancy to fruition and on the ground. You think of the bypasses that were built all throughout the North Carolinas. You know, I remember growing up in Winston, you know, dreaming of the Winston-Salem Bypass. And all that's going to do is going to bring more sprawl to Winston-Salem. Is that really a good thing? We just heard from Tristan that it's not. But yet those were programmed back in the 60s and a lot of those were designed. I remember doing one of my first plans and the plans were hand-drawn that we were implementing for the interstate running through Larchdale. That was the public hearing map and that's what was being built almost 40 years later. And some could argue that that was not the solution at the time. What should have been built when we built that project? So, you know, I get it, we lose some projects, but actually it's really refreshing because now you get this chance to redo some of those projects. And you're getting a chance to put money back locally if you pursue those grants, it's a really good thing.
So that's a great caveat. So before we go anywhere, so STIP is State Transportation Improvement Plan. So that's just a statewide plan, so just wanna make sure we knew what that was. So Jonathan, I was getting ready to go right here anyway, so Kimberly Horn does a lot of work with a lot of different communities. And one of the things that we've not done in a number of years is a lot of transportation planning. And you talk about this partnerships and, you know, applying for the, and Tristan and Wanda jump in here too, but I'll start with Jonathan is, you know, to apply for this grant money and these other things, what kind of transportation planning should the city of Hendersonville be doing to be in line, to help, to help with prioritization, to help with working with DOT? You know, because, you know, I remember the days used to have the old thoroughfare plans that every community have, you know, those are, you know. I don't, I, there's gotta be one in the city somewhere, it must be in community development or engineering, but we gotta have it. But everybody get a thoroughfare plan, but I, we, I know there's not been an update here. But what kind of planning should we be doing and talk, just talk to that and what you're doing in some other communities and those kind of things?
Yeah, it's a great question and it goes back to what I said, partnership. And, you know, I remember when the prioritization process came about in North Carolina and I thought it was a great thing because it goes back to metric-based decision-making. And anytime you can add data to your decision, it helps to make a decision. Doesn't necessarily, shouldn't be driven totally by that, but it does help. And so anytime you get information that informs that process, whether it's taking level of service analyses that are coming from your traffic impact analyses that are pulling together or you're collecting the most recent safety information from your police department that can be supplemented with the records that NC DOT holds. Those are some small little things that really don't cost a lot of effort, but you, cause you've got that data that's already there. The bigger things are, you know, kind of beginning to look at developing a prioritization for projects within your community and dedicating funding to that, be it sidewalks, be it bike lanes, greenways. And I know you're implementing greenways in your community and that's a great thing. But you don't have to, don't take on the mantra that you've got to go out and widen a roadway to make a difference. Sometimes it's just adding turn lanes will add an immediate amount of capacity to a corridor. It's amazing how much a corridor can jump and go. It's amazing how much a corridor can jump and go from just a two-lane road that has no turn lanes to adding turn lanes at key locations. You can provide longevity for a corridor, you know, ten to twenty years just with turn lane. It's amazing what that will do. But the bigger sort of projects, looking at your CIP and then moving up one level and doing your transportation plans for your community that's based on input from the community and is a true multi-modal plan, it's not just centered around automobiles, looking at bike paths, looking at how that relates back to land use, which is a critical thing. And then also looking at your assets. What do you have available? You know, we, we so often forget that our streets are our biggest public spaces and we design it for one single mode, where we should be looking at it as a variety of modes. And how can we use those streets in different ways when it's appropriate to do that? You know, we see a lot of communities asking us to come in and do bike path plans, do CTPs, or just help go through the prioritization processes. They're getting ready to go work with their counterpart like Tristan. Can you help us assemble data? A lot of times it makes Tristan's job that much easier as well as Wanda's job when they have this information pulled together. Gastonia is a great example, where we've been helping them for several years and they've been applying for a RACE grant. Working with that local division, we helped get information for the RACE grant. But all of the information then went right into the prioritization to try to move that project up. Because there's no guarantees you're gonna get funded through RACE or built. And so a lot of it is just kind of helping them through, you know, not every community can afford to have a traffic engineer. And so a lot of what we do is just to provide advice, guidance, or connect dots with people.
So follow-up to that question for Chris, Tristan and Wanda. You know, I, I don't know how many communities in Western North Carolina or in the division or in the MPO are doing that kind of level. How does that, how could that help you in your mind? Give us, you know, how does that help you do your job? Is that something, you know, that you would feel like would be a responsible thing for us to do? Talk about what you're seeing in the region. Are you seeing that level of planning? Obviously, I would expect the city of Asheville's doing that level of planning and that engagement. Tristan and the MPO, are there other communities that are doing it? Or are we just getting to the right size that we're talking about and it may be something we need to do? So, and same, I kind of, same kind of question, what you're seeing, but maybe with the MPO, Tristan, what you're seeing?
Sure. So the MPO, a couple of years ago, started a pilot program called the Corridor Studies Program, where we have a lot of roads where we get comments of, someone needs to fix this road. And we say, okay, like, we can add some more lanes, but that'll take out homes? And we don't want that. We can do this, and we don't want that. There's a lot of problematic corridors with a lot of constraints, where to me, it would be helpful to us, to DOT, to have a better idea of what is wanted from a project before we get it funded. You know, one of the things that, you know, is, is kind of frustrating at a planning level, and I think, I think that it's gotten much better. But when the prioritization process first rolled out, we had a controversial project that was being proposed. And, you know, in the discussions of, do we fund it, do we not fund it? There was concern of, are we gonna widen it to four lanes? Are we gonna widen it to two lanes? Or just change it and have two lanes with complete streets? And the, the, the kind of conclusion was, let's get it funded and then we'll figure it out. Not the most helpful for coming up with accurate budgets. So I, I think, at least from my standpoint, there are a lot of corridors where there, I think, more community discussion of what's important. Is this a corridor where we want as little congestion as possible? Or are there things along the corridor that we need to preserve at all costs? I think those are things that can help more strictly define projects so that when we go to fund them, NC DOT has more of an awareness of what's, what are the, what are the big things we need to watch out for? What are the things we really need to have in our budget? And I think that could be, that could be very helpful. I will say one caveat that, that was mentioned that I think is really good is, these projects do take a long time to develop. And so we always have to keep that in mind. There are a lot of unknowns that we have kind of at the beginning of, of projects. But things evolve and contexts evolve. And so it, it is always kind of a hard discussion that we've had in the two studies we've done in Hendersonville on Tunnel Road and Hendersonville Road. But to me, that's something that I think is helpful. And that's something that having DOT in the room is essential. And, and I'd, I'd also note DOT, I think, is starting to do a bit more of that with kind of these express designs that they're doing to get better cost estimates. But again, I think there's a lot that, that we can do in terms of better project planning and better community engagement.
Tristan is obviously so good because he just got bullet free off of what I just wrote there. But no, that, the feasibility studies that we're doing, you know, I think that helps us to hone in to those costs, but it also helps us hone in to what, what's really needed and what's desired out there from, you know, the public perspective. The other thing that, you know, going back to the first, I think it's communication. And Hendersonville, Henderson County does a really great job, you know, talking with Lonnie Watkins, our district engineer. And, you know, when something comes up in, in that partnership, you know, they're going back to that conversation of, you know, letting us know what's going on. And hopefully, we're doing a good job of letting y'all know what's going on so that we can, you know, have, you know, hopefully don't have these conflicts between, you know, a major intersection coming in or a major development coming in and it conflicting with each other. One thing that, you know, I was sitting here thinking about, just the, the different solutions and, and, you know, not building a road just for cars, but other things. That's one thing that I've noticed here recently and I've challenged my folks to do is to think out of the box. And when we have, and in particular in our safety side, you know, when we see that there's a problem, a safety problem or an accident location, don't just always go to the one thing that we've always went to, but kind of look at it from a holistic standpoint. And, you know, and it may be that we need to cut our shoulders, clear our right-of-way, buy some right-of-way to move something out of the, the way so it's not setting, you know, three feet off the white line. So I think those are type of, you know, things we need to start looking at instead of just saying, oh, well, we've got a whatever problem, let's do this solution because this is what we've done. So I think that's a challenge moving forward is, is to look at our, our transportation issues and, and don't just always build bigger roads or wider pavements or throw a sidewalk down. Or, and I love all of those things, we need to do all those things, but I think there's places for those things. And then you were talking about other regions. I don't know of another, in the Tin County area, I don't know of another entity that, that has really looked at it and has that plan. I think a lot of people have them in their heads. And that's a good place to be dreaming, but I think it's also better to have that plan so that you have that goal and, you know, what you're, you know, what you're going toward.
So I'm gonna hone in on the community transportation plan, which is what you just mentioned and we've all talked about. The way, what I'm hearing you saying and, and I will, our team to understand is, this would be a plan, we would look at all the transportation corridors in our community, whether it's a city street or a state street. And we would get public input, go out, go out into the community, start to prioritize where we think there are issues. You know, whether we think, you know, we know that growth is gonna be, I'll use North Main as an example, which is North Main. We know that this area, so ultimately, in our mind, with transportation and expertise, planning, expertise, we look at ideally, you know, maybe it's not a widening project, but maybe it's a, you know, maybe, maybe it's widening the shoulders or whatever the case may be. We would come up with an eye, what we would like to see over a period of time. And we would do that around the city and then also include multi-modal, bicycle, you know, where we can put bicycle lanes, those kind of things. We would have a community plan that ultimately the city council would then adopt as part of, like any other master plan, like a water and sewer master plan, any other master plan that we would update on a regular basis. And then we could use that to help DOT, you know, prioritize projects. Yeah, because some of them are gonna be state streets, some of them are gonna be local streets. And then we would determine to identify projects and go after grant money and whatever. Is that what, is that what I heard?
Yeah, I, I think you did a good job somewhere on that. And I think what it does, it's not only just a plan that hopefully that you adopt, it would also be something that the MPO would look at as well. And of course, a partnership, you would work with both NC DOT and the MPO to develop that because this needs to be both an up and down cycle of information. I think the, the one step to that, to add to that is that it's, it's, it's how does that then impact all of your other codes and ordinances that are out there? So, you know, using that if you go through a street prioritization of what is important on that street, be it bike path, cars, freight, however you're gonna do that. But then looking at how you can begin to codify that so that as you do have development that comes in, your development is then responding to the attributes associated with that street so that the petitioner is not then facing something that's counter to what you want for that street. And what I will, will say is that most, it's interesting, ninety percent of the calls that I get from developers looking for property, they've all pulled a CTP, they've all pulled your land use plan, they love the information. They want more information because the quicker they can ascertain if this is the right value for them or not, or they wanna go here because it fits their ideals, the better off they're gonna be. And so it helps you on the backside because then you're not dealing with development that may not be in alignment with what you see for a corridor.
Tristan, what do you think? I'll just give you a chance to, you think you wanna add?
I, I mean, I would just add that I think the city of Hendersonville, in a lot of ways, is ahead of a lot of other local governments in terms of planning. You guys have a very robust bicycle plan. The pedestrian plan is underway, I believe, for updating that. And so I, I think the, the core pieces, I think you guys are, are definitely further ahead than, than some other places. And yeah, it's how can we make sure that you all have the best and most up-to-date information when prioritization considerations are made and other funding considerations?
One thing that I think about, and, and I'll jump to the next question here, but one thing when I think about, and this is, I'd like to hear your feedback on this, is one of the things that I think about with the community transportation plan, I'll use Spartanburg Highway as an example. You know, we, there's been a lot of, no, there's been some talk here lately, particularly about how hard it, you know, we, we've seen more, and this is part of the study the DOT did on traffic sa, the safety study, pedestrian safety study is. Now, that corridor has the suicide lane in it. And there's been lots of conversation about, you know, how do we improve that area for, to avoid wrecks, to avoid, to make it more friendly for pedestrians and those kind of things. I would think, and, and I want your feedback on this, that by doing a community transportation plan, that gives us the opportunity to educate and talk to the public upfront instead of just going in and dropping a project, it may get a lot of backlash for our elected officials that, you know, I mean, it allows us to say, hey, we've identified the problem, community, build some community support, and then we can bring, then bring the solution, if that makes sense, versus just bringing the solution without even talking about the problem. Does that make sense?
That, no, that, that, that makes complete sense. And I think especially with access management, of, of what you're talking about, it makes a whole lot of sense. You know, I, I'd say once a year, someone at the MPO asks, what's the most dangerous road in the region? And my general response is, it's one of the five lanes that's up there. And, you know, so, but there is, to me, that goes back to the idea of partnership between NC DOT and locals. Projects like that are, they tend to be controversial. When I first started at the MPO, I would, one of my questions to NC DOT was, why aren't we pursuing more access management? And I remember the response being, because you're going to basically put NC DOT out there to get hammered with tomatoes and, and we need more than that in order to do projects like that. So I do think that better education, better coordination, and strengthening that partnership can help those projects be more successful. And those are projects that we're gonna need. And I'd, I'd also make one last add that a lot of times those access management projects, it's more than just the corridor. It's looking at, can we have developers that are coming in look more at parcel-to-parcel connections rather than having everything dumped onto a single corridor?
Let me stop here and see if the council has any direct questions about anything we've talked about. I've, I've got a couple more as it relates to working with the MPO, but any specific questions for council, from council?
I have kind of a question. When we are talking about a community transportation plan, I think it's important to look at the aspect that we have a TAC in Henderson County, which is the Transportation Advisory Council Committee. And because a lot of our roads that are in the city literally feed directly into or out of the county or another municipality. And I think we need to be good community partners and making sure that we're all on the page because it's, it's affecting everyone who lives and works here. And, you know, most of the city roads are used by folks who live in the county or outside of the city as well. And so just, you know, making sure that we're being inclusive and using all of those resources for establishing some sort of a community plan. Because I think, and we've proven that before at the MPO, when we come as a TAC, we are a much stronger unit and have a, a much higher ability to get things funded or to move things along when we have a community agreeance on, you know, road projects.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. Just, you know, going back to, I think, seeing that what we do, you know, on one level does affect everybody. So it may not just be a Hendersonville community plan, it may be a Hendersonville community plan, and then there may be a Henderson County community plan, you know, that, that kind of feeds into, you know, that would then feed into an MTP that does, then feeds into, you know, the, the STIP. So, I mean, it does just kind of all work together. And I think, you know, it's not gonna be an overnight solution. I think education, like Tristan was saying, is, is a huge part in getting that local buy-in from that local citizen of, this is what we want for this area. We wanna create, you know, the phrase that was coming to my mind was sense of place. You know, you, you've got these, you know, highways, these five-lane highways, we pick on them, that, you know, is a very functional highway, you know, facility. But then, you know, so you have to think about, well, what am I, what am I trying to do in, with that facility? Am I trying to just get people from that end of the five-lane, from this end of the five-lane? Or in between there, do we need to create that sense of place and, and maybe, you know, do something different? Access management or whatever to slow people down and get them to something, you know, there. So I think all of that has to work together.
Yeah, sure. So one of the ideas that we heard about in our meeting in February was from Johnson County, no, sorry, from Wake County, and they're gonna float their own transportation bond. So if we were to do something like that, how does the DOT view that? And how does that fit into this? And do you get rewarded for, you know, the taxpayers taking the initiative to try to alleviate some problems? Or do you get punished for leading the way? And, you know, punish is too strong a term, but you get frowned upon for doing that. Because this is no criticism of any state agency, but, you know, we would like to get things solved sooner than thirty-five-year scale. You know, and maybe the way to do it is if the money is in our pockets and we can goes, you know, right in and go fix something that we like to fix.
So I will take the lead on that. Um, I don't think there's a penalty per se. You know, and this kind of leads into, you know, how can we, you know, move projects? You can move projects by having, um, local funds go into that. Because what that initially does is, for us, if it's partnership, it's gonna lower that benefit cost ratio. So therefore, it, it's gonna make the cost, it's gonna make it less costly. So therefore, you know, in the data-driven system, that make, that gives it more points, you know, from that aspect. If it's less costly. So from, from that aspect, you would help a project if, you know, if you have local funds in, in that project. Now, if it was a totally, um, locally-funded project, um, we've seen that from, in my most recent experience with that is, um, from the Eastern Band Cherokee Indians. You know, they came to us and they said, we, we've got a problem with US nineteen. You know, we would like to modernize that roadway. And they paid for it, um, we did partner with them and provided some, a reimbursable agreement, provide some inspection, um, for their, that construction project because they didn't have the construction, inspection, um, expertise. So there can be partnerships to, to work that out. And I don't think it's, it's not viewed, um, viewed as a, a negative thing. It's just viewed as, you know, a realization that NC DOT does have limited funds and we can't solve everything today.
And the one that was described with, um, what highway was it, Maggie Valley or?
US nineteen is.
Nineteen, yeah. So was there an existing project? Or did they just say, hey, we wanna, we wanna do this and they came up with a project?
Yeah, no, there was not an existing.
Right, so they, they planned it out and paid for it?
They saw the need and they, they had a plan and then, you know, they, they solved the fu- the funding for it, wherever it came from, but then, you know, we helped them out and we can.
And that's okay? Okay?
I will just quickly note that especially with bond funds, I do believe there's usually statutory limitations on when you have to spend those funds by. So to get the, the point advantage in terms of prioritization, you might be trying to get a project funded that's going to be outside of the window of when you have to use those, those bonds. That would be the one thing I would caution. But I do think we have communities, uh, Asheville did, uh, a transportation bond recently. And so they, that has accelerated a number of projects for them, uh, for transportation, but also beyond transportation.
City of, uh, Charlotte has done that for many, many years. It was on a two-year cycle. Every two years they would vote on the, on the bond referendum. Uh, the city of Greensboro's done that, most larger municipalities have been doing that for many, many years. As a counter to that, it would be a, um, kind of a representation of, uh, what South Carolina does. They have the ability to implement localized sales tax. And so York County was the first to do that. York County is just south of Charlotte, so it's essentially Charlotte. Since nineteen ninety-seven, they've put one billion dollars' worth of infrastructure on SC DOT streets by doing a one-cent sales tax. It does not tax local food dollars, so if you go to the grocery store, you do not pay for that. But it picks up on all your users that are coming through your county, be it Lancaster County, be it Union County, North Carolina, be it Chester County. And that's how they saw it. Every seven years, they come out with a list of projects, they pay as they go. They earn the revenue, they move the project forward. They earn the revenue, they move the project forward. They've been the model for South Carolina. And we don't have the enabling legislation in North Carolina to do that. Maybe at some point in the future we will, but it's very similar to what you asked about from the transportation bond. There's a lot of value to that. The last thing I'll add is that I think it's, it's known as the carry model, where carry advanced money to advance a NC DOT project. And that's always another resource or way, if you will, to advance a project is using local funds to advance that.
We had a meeting about that, what, when was this, like three months ago or something? And we, with the DOT board member, Mr. McGrady, we were talking about a bond referendum. Cause it was about the North Main corridor?
Yeah, we've just, yeah.
And I think we were waiting for your back.
Yeah, we were just bouncing ideas off how you could, thinking about the corridor and thinking that there is no project, you know, for anything on North Main. Oh, wait, it was really the intersection. And Tristan men- mentioned that, um, that whole Signal Hill corridor, Berkeley intersection out there, North Main and turns to Clear Creek on the other side, that whole, um, trying to move that project along.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd also point out that, um, the, I mean, we've talked about kind of DOT's kind of big overall funding issues at the moment. But there's other pots of funds that are out there, uh, also within NC DOT. And so that's another thing to keep in mind, like the, uh, Clear Creek Greenway, um, that the city's working on, that's, uh, twenty percent of the funds are coming from the city, eighty percent are coming from the NPO. There is, uh, I think something that is gonna be an exciting opportunity with the infrastructure bill is there are a lot of discretionary grant opportunities, um, that cities and counties are going to be able to apply for it. So that's another opportunity as well.
But I assume the, a lot of that money, you need to have some kind of planning document or a, or a project or something on the books.
I would assume so.
Yeah, I would think in those cases, I would, we just take line a narrative that this is what we wanna do.
I, I very much wish that was the case. But, uh, yeah, you know, a lot, with a lot of the new grant programs from the infrastructure bill, we haven't seen the specifics come out on what's needed. But I do think that a lot of those grant programs are, uh, things that western North Carolina can and should be taking advantage of. You know, there's, there's programs for pedestrian safety, uh, multiple programs for pedestrian safety. And we know that Hendersonville has, uh, uh, higher pedestrian crash incidents than a lot of other municipalities in North Carolina, uh, western North Carolina as a whole. And so taking advantage of that, um, and the, uh, also resiliency programs. We've had some flooding issues, uh, around western North Carolina, to say the least. And so how we can take advantage of those grants and make sure those are going to local priorities, I think is, uh, gonna be something we're gonna need to work.
For those grant opportunities, do those funds need to be like the match funds? Is it helpful to have like a transportation fund locally that you set aside money for? So that when you apply for those grants, that they expect the funds to be there? Are those funds, it's, is the match always expected to be of, like, already there?
I would say generally it's better for the funds to be there, uh, sooner rather than later. At least with the NPO's grants, it's, uh, it's a reimbursement program. So with Clear Creek Greenway, the city of Hendersonville is going to be paying for the project and then going to NC DOT and federal highways and saying, we spent the money on what you approved, give us eighty percent back. And, uh, again, we still haven't seen the specifics on some of the other grant programs, but I'd assume most of them will work in a similar fashion.
But a lot of times it's, it's just a commitment, you know, that, that you're gonna have it, you know, and you're, you know, they don't necessarily go through your budget and make sure that you've got a line out on this, this is for X program.
Right.
You know, but when you get the money, you gotta have it.
One last question for me. Tristan, from, from your perspective and, and, uh, Wanda and John, please chime in with other experience. You know, we, we've, Councilor Hensley is on the NPO, we're part of the TAC. What can we do to, are we, how can we improve on engaging at the NPO level? Are there things that we need to be doing? We said, you know, we talked about the community transportation plan. Are there things that we need to be doing, um, to, particularly as we see growth going forward, to, to make sure we're at the table and, um, doing what we need to do to, to move the community forward?
Yeah, I mean, um, I think that there is a lot that the NPO does that, um, you know, we, we talked about how we look at growth projections, where the growth is gonna go. We talked about looking at transportation priorities and making sure Hendersonville is at the table and, uh, being clear about those priorities is, is really, you know, what, what we need from you all. Also, I would say that the city serves as a bullhorn for the NPO. It's, it's kind of a two-way street. We need input from you all, but when we're doing our public input processes, not to be overly self-deprecating, but the NPO is not a headliner. Usually when there's an NPO event, we have to describe what we are first. But, you know, utilizing our local governments to make sure that the word is getting out, I swear, we try to simplify things as much as possible. That's where things are really effective. The Village of Flat Rock, I've, I've said this in like ten different meetings, they must have the best leadership of any, uh, community newsletter. Every time something of ours is mentioned, the responses just skyrocket. And we've, we've seen that in other communities as well. But overall, I mean, uh, I think you guys have been at the table. You know, uh, Councilperson Hensley, uh, has been very involved at the NPO. I'll just make a note and, uh, I'm not, uh, I'm not trying to win anyone over here, but you guys really do have exceptional staff. And that has been, I think, a huge asset for you all and also for us. But I think it is a question of, you know, the NPO has planning funds. If there are things that you all, uh, if there are studies that you all see as priorities, that's something where the NPO can help provide funding assistance. If there are, um, you know, things that we do in our population projections or growth projections that would help inform some of the processes of the city, or ways we can do things differently, let's save each other some work. So, uh, but again, I think overall, I, I see you all as great partners and how we can help you all more, uh, I'm always open here.
What has he gone to?
I would just echo that. I mean, you know, a lot of times you get to the end and, and on an evaluation, they say, well, what, what was good about this? What was bad about it? I don't know that I, I, I think our relationship's always been really good. I wouldn't say always, in my memory, it's been good. I don't know, I've been hearing that. But I think carrying that forward and just making sure that we continue to have that relationship and, um, you know, and please, you know, if there's anything that we can ever do for you or we're not doing for you, you know, let us know, you know, don't, um, you know, don't be silent, you know? And, and if I can say the same thing, I won't be silent and I'll make sure he knows. But, um, I, I think just that, you know, cause I, I think that, that, um, I think, you know, the city of Hendersonville has been, you know, involved. And I would just encourage y'all to continue to be involved and continue to have that voice. Because it's, it's easy to get lost and, uh, you know, you are the next, I think, I would say the next biggest entity after Asheville probably, you know? So, you know, that's, that's a big place to be, you know? Because you do have an influential, influential place, you know, in the NPO. And I, I think, um, you're sitting on the cusp of a, you know, a, a, exciting times, I would say.
Any closing comment? I'd, I would just say avoid the pitfalls of, of some communities that you see either of these two individuals as enemies. You know, and I know that, I'm not suggesting that's occurring, but, um, a lot of communities will do that. And they'll pit one against the other. Don't fall in that pitfall. It, it's, it's not gonna end up good for anybody when you do that. And I would say, just to echo what Tristan said, I think it is goes for DOT as well, is they have unbelievable strengths in, in their areas. And leverage those strengths that they do have for needs that you might have, be it data, uh, be it partnership, uh, lean on them for that partnership. Cause when you build that relationship, they're gonna lean on you as they're trying to implement projects and you can be there to help them through that. So, um, keep that partnership strong.
So are you saying we're not at the same table?
Not, no, not really. I mean, literally, no. No, I think, I think that y'all are. I think it's, uh, there's a, there's a lot of communities where I do see that, and, and not just necessarily in North Carolina, but throughout the southeast where we work, that you will see just this bitter fight between DOT and the NPO and the city. And nobody likes anybody and nothing gets done. And it's really sad when you see that.
Yeah, I, I mean, just generally, I think there, there are two different kind of philosophies on how NPOs should function. And I think some people believe they should be a check and balance to DOT. And, uh, you know, and, and yes, that, that kind of, uh, regulatory power is there in a lot of ways. But from my viewpoint, I think NPOs function best as regional decision-making bodies when NC DOT is involved and very involved. They're the ones building the, the vast majority of projects. If we aren't listening to their input, um, something is wrong. And I, I think I also get to take that philosophy, mainly, I've said this in far too many meetings, but Division fourteen is fantastic to work with. I have really yet to hear anyone say anything different. They are fantastic partners for us, uh, I think, as well as our upper governments. And that is something that is, uh, very refreshing.
Well, thank you, Tom. Talk about the, the homework that you did, some of the thinking that you did. And I've got the clicker here and I, I can flip for you. And, um, you know, again, just a chance for you to talk about, uh, what you're seeing in the community or other examples around growth. Again, this whole conversation is around planning for growth, leading to your comp plan you're gonna be doing. So we'll just have you share, um, share examples. And then we'll have a chance to just do a little bit more of a debrief from the, from the panel discussions today. And then for you to just, you know, uh, talk about what's next in terms of what your expectations are for your comp plan. So that's what we're gonna be doing over the next, um, segment here. And, uh, what do, Mayor, is I'll start with you and I can, uh, just advance this.
Okay.
How do you open up?
I did not get to do any pictures, but I just put down some of mine. My thoughts is, uh, what, what we would like, I wish we had neighborhood like mine. There are small lots with smaller houses, big lots with bigger houses. So you, thinking of my daughter's neighborhood, they are ethnically and racially very diverse. Economically, it, uh, everything is the same economic way. It, you know, racial, uh, cultural, all of that is, is very, very different. But everyone earns about the same amount of money, the houses are all alike. Whereas my neighborhood, I've got section eight housing in foster home, which is fine. I don't find it. We've got, we've got a variety of people. We've got people with young kids, we've got people like me who are, are retired and alone. People can connect with one another, but it's not economically feasible for most developers. That, you know, if you could have a development where you had bigger homes with families next to an affordable housing, smaller lots, smaller houses, um, that's the kind that I wish we could have, but we never see it because they don't build it. They built everything just about alike, uh, cause that's the most effective. Unless you get some condos or apartments, but they're all over here and the other houses are all over here. This is pie in the sky dreaming. It's not gonna happen, but I wish we could see it. Lots of trees. We, people talk about traffic. Well, if you've got a nice wide street with nothing on the sides, people will go faster. If you've got those trees on the sides, people tend to slow down. So, um, I'd like to see us require they put street trees. That maybe right now, they're not very big, but ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, they will be and you'll have a much pleasanter street. Again, do I have one more?
Yeah, yeah.
Something, so get commercial development, again, landscaping, trees, uh, minimize those curb cuts and driveways instead of. Minimize those curb cuts and driveways instead of one piece, one commercial operation having three driveways. DOT allowed them to do it. I'd love to see fewer that way. Maybe that suicide lane in the middle, you could have just part of it planted and you would have only a few places to have to turn. Minimum parking requirements. We may be requiring too many. I'd rather see green space and trees than more parking spaces. Those are my thoughts.
All right. Any questions, clarifications? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Right, Councilman Hensley.
So I had a bunch of photos and, oh, okay.
I'm just gonna decide so we can all hear each other. You don't mind?
I'm just gonna read the email that I sent to John along with these photos, even though it's sort of like my version of a hodgepodge of words thrown together. So here are images and I can explain. I guess I would like to discuss also a lot of development on Spartanburg Highway. Many people in our community want and feel the need to maintain our small town charm. However, we're growing at a substantial rate. I propose that we maintain a historic, we maintain our historic districts and consider modernizing with charm the areas that lead into the city. So things that I would really like to see is more mixed-use development, shopping and businesses, offices and residential combined, lots of residential. Dense with proposed minimum workforce units in the developments. Obviously, again, reaching higher density. Walkable green spaces. Some of the images that I have shown are higher in elevation than I would prefer to see, but generally, a similar idea of clustering. And then also having that, the residential and mixed-use component. So this, I feel like, gives us a great opportunity to create infill. And I've got, I'll show some simple slides about the infill. Increase agglorum and sales tax revenue. And then I feel like it also gives us eligibility to have more affordable housing. We're just like, I feel like so much of the city gets focused on Main Street and then that main corridor 64, but we really actually have a lot of entries into the city that I think we could be exploring development and kind of more, I guess, sprawl, but it's still sprawl according to the MPO walk-up model. And I think I sent slides, I think when I first got onto the MPO board, about a walk-up model and what that looks like. And according to the MPO, walk-up model is basically anywhere you can kind of get to places easy. It's Spartanburg Highway, we have DSS, we're gonna have a connection center. There are medical offices there, there are pharmacies, grocery stores, there are schools within a mile of that area. Let's see here, like I said, this is kind of my, you know, it's a little ramble. I do support some sort of incentive to existing property owners on Spartanburg Highway in those areas, Asheville Highway, to improve the aesthetics, clean up properties, conform to some design standards, engineering standards that we have set forth. Because these are areas that are entering into our corridor and into our communities. So, okay, and then, so just, these are some of the photos. I just like how there's a lot of green spaces and vegetation along. I mean, these are modernized strip malls essentially on that area. But again, on the right, you can see more residential and multi-use. I love how this is, you know, these are increased dense developments. So you're, you know, putting more townhomes and multiflexes closer together. But then there's also lots of smaller kind of city parks and subset parks along the way. Again, just creating different sources of, here's an example of an infill. 340 unit affordable housing that was just kind of in some vacant land in the city already. Obviously, these are taller buildings than what we would wanna see necessarily in Hendersonville, but I love the green wall and, so again, here's just some more examples of just infill development that I really think that we should continue to focus on. I know that we are already working in that aspect, but I really like the idea of creating some dense and then giving kind of a more community feel by being able to have people living closer together. I mean, these are gorgeous subdivisions, but we don't have a lot of areas like this available. But again, just maintaining a lot of natural vegetation and trees and then allowing homes to be more community feel. Oops, okay, that's not me. Sorry, Debbie. I was like, wait a minute. I recognize that picture.
So I have to apologize again to Debbie. I spelled her name wrong and I put a good deal after.
I'm still that person. Okay, I got, I got a couple of pictures, more than a couple of pictures. But this is a affordable housing development that's in Oakland, California, which is west. I'd like to see something like this come more southeast on this side of the, out of the side of the country.
Can you just talk about what it is you like about that?
Okay, okay. Oh, this.
Just the, yeah, the one before.
One before, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just, yeah, there you go. Just, yeah, just share a little bit about what.
I'm just gonna read what I got. So it's affordable housing, it's green pass, it's pocket parks, it's open, open space. It's also incorporated with a lot of complementary green strategies, including solar power for on-site generation of electricity and hot water. Couple of pictures here. What did I do? Oh, okay. This is inside. But this is inside a 401. To the apartments, this is another hallway leading to the apartments.
Is this slide there?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Lindsay, you wanna go?
I'll be there next. Yeah, you gotta hand out and then we'll put Jerry's presentation out.
Okay. I'll read that. All right, so everybody should have probably this. Yeah, do you want me to go somewhere else?
No, I don't want to go back.
Mine did not include a lot of pictures, so it's mostly random thoughts that I just threw together in this document and sent to John as I thought of them. So things that I, I found, and there's a link on this. I can send this document to all, whoever wants it to, so you can get the link. But it's a sustainable neighborhood program that San Francisco's doing. So a lot of their, and I sent the council members to begin with Sustainability Plan, that they have a lot of guidelines and things that they're adding to their code to encourage developers to use sustainable practices. And I would like to see us do more of that. The next thing I included was inclusionary zoning, which was brought up earlier, where, you know, a minimum percentage of the units that you bring in in your development would have to be within the affordable guidelines. I think that's probably one of the best ways for us to ensure that we'll have a variety of pricing for housing. The other thing is in some sort of overlay district, either just in historic areas or more strict design standards. When I speak to community members, I feel like they don't necessarily care as much about what is in that building. It's what that building looks like and does it look like Hendersonville? Does it have that historic charm? And I think aesthetically, being able to keep on brand, that will really help us be able to grow, but also, you know, just keep our small town feel. Then I came across, they call them pocket neighborhoods. And they're like a specific type of neighborhood, but I also like the idea of calling higher dense neighborhoods pocket neighborhoods because I think that sounds better. And I think people will be more apt to like that more than they, you know, when they hear density, they immediately get the message. So anyways, there's a couple of pictures in here. They are pretty dense rows of townhomes, similar to the picture that one of the pictures Jen showed. And I like these because they let us have density. There's green space or park sort of in the middle of these clusters. And then also, these in particular have a nice feel to them. They're aesthetically pleasing, I think they fit within, you know, the brand of Hendersonville. And then I had a second picture here, it was a similar sort of thing. So these clusters of houses with green space in the middle. So it's not like all the houses are shoved into one space. They're kind of like, I don't know if anybody's been to Legoland, but they have a developed, like a place where you can go and say called beach houses. And so they have these like four or five units around these little parks. And I think that that helps also build community. I was also thinking about smaller footprint houses, not necessarily tiny homes, but in the 1,000 to 1,100 range. We don't need as many, you know, 1,500, 1,600, 1,700 square foot homes. Something that's a little bit smaller. The biggest thing that I put on here that I don't like are the neighborhoods that the mayor mentioned. I find that typical neighborhoods nowadays, all of the houses look exactly the same. None of them have any character and it's just, I don't know, it's not appealing to me. So I would like to see us try to get more diverse in the neighborhoods that we build. So that could be by adding different levels of housing. There's apartments, there's townhomes, there's the clusters of houses. I don't really know what that is, but when everything looks exactly the same and lacks character, I think that's when we start to lose our sense of place.
Do I want this at that?
Yes.
Should I? It's all yours.
All right. So unfortunately, John gave the teacher some very specific questions. And so that's the only way I know to approach this is to, with teachers, try to answer the question. And then I had, of course, to give it a title slide, so there you go. The innovative small urban community in Hendersonville. And as far as I know, no one else in America has used that term yet. So we could copyright that if we would like to. So the questions were, what I like, what do I like about this development? Will this development fit in Hendersonville? Can we build this develop, these developments in Hendersonville? Will this development, what will it look like in 30 years? How will the development cost impact affordable housing? Costs impact small businesses? Well, how will the development impact the long-term health of the community? And what is my legacy? I'm not messing with number eight. So the legacy one I didn't try. And I also did not do two and three. How will it fit? Can they be built? I only chose things that were actually in Hendersonville. So there we go. So just by way of information, we've been talking about this all day. I just wanted to point out, we all know this, but looking at how people get here, you know, you can see people from all over the United States, all over the world, from North Carolina, from Anderson County, and they find out a little town of Hendersonville right there. Also tying into, as I was thinking about this, the MPO today, this is our metropolitan statistical area, which unfortunately is still just named after Asheville. Maybe one day it'll be named after us, but to remind us that we are all metro. Not big metro, but it's, as far as urban planners go, we are metropolitan and we need to plan accordingly. So what I did was I chose several places in town, threw some ideas about why I put it on here. And then with each one, there is a rhetorical question. We don't have to talk about it now, but I just threw it on there to think about. So if you've ever been to Glenbrook off Black Street, really nice development. Mr. Wasser talked about how people don't want to live in townhomes because they touch each other. Well, this one, they all touch each other. I happen to like that, I've lived in that before, I think it's a great way to live. But if people aren't going to buy them, I can see there's a challenge. It, you know, very nice landscaping, this is definitely not affordable housing. They definitely are gonna demand local businesses to meet their services. I think this is still gonna be attractive in 30 years from now. Once again, it begs the question, okay, that's not affordable, but how do we get something that looks like that and which we can incentivize as affordable housing? I don't know the answer to that. This next one is on the corner of Third and Black. Some of you may have seen this house going up. It's right where the Greenway is gonna be. Beautiful little house. Actually, I happen to know, John, do you know who's building this?
Yeah, he is.
Yes.
Name him too much.
So this is excellent example of urban infill. Little tiny hut, little tiny house, not a tiny house, but a small house. Perfect, right next to the Greenway. Local builders are building this, okay? They're gonna patronize small businesses. It does raise one issue in Hendersonville, and that is, should at some point, not this house, just in general, should there be a limit on short-term rentals? My personal feeling is it's incredibly difficult to police, but, you know, you have to think about another members of people living here that have homes in their neighborhoods that are short-term rentals. And what impact do we wanna do? Do we want that in Hendersonville? So this is a nice one on Oak Street, okay? It's a beautiful little house tucked right in on the street. Honestly, John, if you hadn't given this project, I'm not even sure I would've known this house existed.
That's a housing assistance.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't even know this was here. Until I started riding, I said, "Okay, John, let's ride around, ride around, check everything I can." So this is great, okay? So obviously workforce housing, as I put it right there, patronizing local businesses. I agree with you, Barbara. There should be more trees on this lot, because there were like no trees. And I know a bunch of trees came down to build it, but that's perfect. That's gonna be, people are gonna be buying that 40 years from now. And I think that's Hendersonville, going back to what people like.
Do you wanna go by the pictures?
Yeah.
Well, and you're gonna show the next group. But this particular project, we worked with Housing Assistance just to remind the council. Our utility department ran the water and, we did the water and sewer, if I remember correctly, in that neighborhood. And then we went back and paved the street that runs along the side of, well, which is Oak Street.
Yeah, it's Oak Street. Like I didn't even know that was Oak Street until I got to know, I said, "What street?" I'm like, "Oh, this is Oak Street."
So that was one of our partnerships with Housing Assistance.
So not far from that one is this one on First Avenue. And so just some comments. This one has like a built-in neighborhood. I thought that was exactly, they talked about what the people like, community or parks. So this has a park built into it. The one thing I would say about this one is if we're going for more density, there's not a pointer of this, is there? It does make the question of, do we need to require homes to be built closer together in town? I like this, but if we're going for more density, do they need to be closer? Because I believe, Barbara, in your neighborhood, there are some places that are five to eight feet apart. I actually checked on this before I came.
Well, a little further than that, but enough room for a driveway.
Right, so the, but the density of Druid Hills is awesome, it's great. And do we need to contemplate putting that in other places around town? But once again, this is another good example of what we'd like in the city of Hendersonville. They're gonna look good 40 years from now, people like those. So this is an interesting one, interesting. It's on the corner of actually Third and Northwood. It's a duplex, so we've got density here. It did, one concern I have, as I rode around, is, is potentially something like this going to become the location of a big mansion? I actually have one near my home, there's about three streets over from my home, as you're walking path or towards the middle school. Somebody went in and leveled a home and built a big giant house that doesn't mix with the neighborhood at all. And I could just see where someday someone with a lot of money would take a place like this, level it and build a big giant house there. There's no way to regulate that, but that's a concern I have as people will come more and more attracted to Hendersonville. They're like, "I'll just buy a small house, I'll buy a small house, level it, build my big house there." But to me, this is exactly what we're trying to promote. Duplex, good location. Once again, I agree with you, Barbara, more trees are needed. So this is Dairy Street. Once again, I did not know there was a street called Dairy Street until I went riding around. And this is an interesting little area off of Spring Street. Several houses have been built there. It's a beautiful house, you know, several little houses there. Once again, if we're going for more density, they probably should be closer together. I don't know if it's affordable, workforce housing, but it's certainly a place, I think that if we were hiring an employee, they would want to live there and work for the city of Hendersonville. The one thing I'll say about this particular location is water comes, there is no question, a lot of water comes down the hill right beside. a lot of water comes down the hill right beside it. I don't know how to deal with all that water, but somewhere the water goes somewhere. And the question is, should we be stepping up our efforts to, to improve stormwater drainage in the city? Uh, so more, you know, so that we are protecting the homes that we have? Almost not. I just had to throw it up there, tiny houses, question mark. I don't know. So, I, I will share this. The guy that lives next door is a very good friend of mine. So he's the one that sold these lots. Um, from what I've learned, people that live there are people that are like, they've got a new job, they're going to stay there for four or five months till they find a place to live. That's generally who's been living in the tiny houses. I don't know what to say, other than there's a whole development somewhere in the county. I've been to it, of tiny homes, maybe that's an answer. I don't know.
It's right around you.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's very clever. So, I, you know, I had planned to end with Strick Garden Lane, and so here we go. Uh, I just think what has been developed there is, to me, the gold standard for what we're looking for. You know, multifamily housing, next to single-family housing, that's affordable. Now, they can't all be affordable like this, and where the entire thing is affordable. But finding a way to, to promote this, to me, is what I would like to do on council. And I already said it once, do we need to float a transportation bond? Because I think what would improve getting places like that is if the road around them is not so small, that it's hard for people to get it out. And here we go. I even have it up there, John, city-county partnership. The Gray Mill Apartments, I mean, we did a great job getting that done. How do we do more of those, and how can we involve the county in that? Because it's, I mean, I checked before I came, there's no vacancies, there's a huge waiting list. They can't, they can't, they're turning people away immediately when they try. So I know that's urban infill because it was a factory, so we can't like make up a factory, but that's our goal. There we go.
That's a round of applause for everybody, right?
Yes.
So, um, a couple of questions for you all. As, as you hear each other talk about what you, um, what you saw, what are some of the themes that, where, where do you feel like you're aligned? When you think about how you want to grow, what the future looks like? Let's start with where you think you all are aligned.
I would say green space and trees. So we're all just talking about green space and trees.
I didn't put it up there, but the, your development and your development, they're really cool looking right on each other. Oh, yours as well, sorry. Where they were townhouses, I mean, I love that, if people will start living there. Like if you were in Charleston, you would be there. So I don't know how to get people started wanting to live those, but I think they look great.
I mean, I would rather live in a townhome than a condo. That's always better than having people up above you, looking at the end of this night view. In my mind.
So is, is density one of the themes that you all?
It's a big one.
Yeah?
Well, it needs the needs to, of like something that she was talking about, just a smaller footprint. Um, I mean, my family of four lived in a thirteen hundred square foot home for many, many years. And honestly, we were fine in that amount of space. I mean, we, we have plenty of space, we, we didn't have any issues with that space. So, um, it, we don't have to have like massive homes, you know? We have to meet our needs and, and then maybe have more community areas outside your home where you can, you know, have recreation and improve your quality of life in that aspect, as opposed to, you know, being in that, always in your home and focusing everything there too.
Other areas, where else did you see alignment?
Can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
Every townhome that's been built in Hendersonville has been sold out almost immediately.
Okay.
So I mean, it's, they're saying that people don't want to live in townhomes, but yeah, as soon as they're built, they're immediately sold.
Sure.
No less than a home builder, not a townhome builder.
Yeah, I agree too.
I think, I think too, that we keep talking about is affordable housing, like we hear.
Yeah.
Um, but just to be like realistic about that too, as the cost of construction, every construction developer or construction engineer that I've spoken to in the last three months say that they can't build anything for under two hundred and twenty-five a square foot. So, you know, we're even talking about that smaller footprint of a thousand square feet. That's still over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to develop that, and that's not including the price of the land. Um, so again, you know, the, the idea of having homes for sale under two fifty are, it's not, it's not feasible. I mean, at, at this point, I just don't see it happening. Um, my husband sent me a link of a Habitat for Humanity home that is right now pending for two hundred and eighty thousand, um, which is up from forty thousand for the prices that they were going for back in the fall.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so it's a challenge, yet that's something that came out in all the, all the things that you, you put out there. What other things, when you think about how you want to grow, what, what it looks like, things that you like?
I mean, I would say that we had similar themes of design standards, and that, I mean, a lot of us seem to echo that we didn't want cookie cutter neighborhoods, because that's what loses the, the sense of place and the charm. So I think, I don't know if we all agree on what the design standards should be, but we all agree that there should be something, right?
I'm gonna have to be city, I'm, my city attorney squirming in her chair back there.
Sorry.
Because legally, we can't put design standards on single families.
On single-family homes.
Or two families.
Or two families. I think, one of the reasons, like for example Druid Hills, is they weren't all built at the same time. So they were built over, as, as the styles changed, people built a different house. I think that's a challenge when you like to put bang subdivision, because we're going to build a bunch of houses right now. But I agree with you that if you, if we have a requirement that, of sizes with regard to affordability, that in some way will create the variability, because they don't all be the same size, you know?
I, I would say too, like some of those neighborhoods that are kind of cookie cutter, um, Riverstone and, um, Fletcher, a lot of people live there and love their homes. And we approved a subdivision off of Fifth Avenue that my husband was freaked out about, because it was going to have a lot more traffic. And, um, we've walked up through there a lot, and, um, I know a couple of people who have now purchased homes in that development who are very happy with their homes, and they're, they are, you know, when you look at it, it's very similar appearing homes to the ones that are around it. But those, people love those homes, and, you know, that also can be a good affordable home for a lot of families and younger families. So, you know, just because we don't really like the aesthetics of it doesn't necessarily mean that families may not want to live there.
So for you?
My daughter loves where she lives. Yeah, yeah. I, I'm just the one that thinks, huh.
So there's a place for that, it's under mixed?
Yeah.
Can I ask?
There are houses being built right there, um, Pace and Beach, um, that is Housing Assistance. And my friend is having a house built there. She just got approved for two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and that's, that's affordable to her.
Yeah. Yeah. Jerry, you?
I was going to ask, so legally, we cannot require design standards on a single-family or two-family home?
Or anything that is in that volume of the building.
Sure.
Okay.
That is the building. But with regard to the land, we can have all kinds of design standards, can we not?
Like trees and sidewalks?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, okay. So I would say, one thing I would say then is a lot of times, when we call cookie cutter, um, they don't have a lot of trees. So, you know, that's one way to require more tree plants. Of course, you're limited because streets get big, or so much space, but that's one way to augment that.
And landscaping is though, it's super expensive. Um, I mean, people, I mean, even in very minimally, under the house that we built initially, the landscaping, and we were very minimal at what we could afford to do for landscaping, and it was astronomical, just to maintain the trees that we had, cut the, cut down to the one that we had to have for the footprint of the house, but then even to do shrubbery around the house was really expensive.
Right, I have so much trees.
Yeah.
Yeah. Some of you had some things around mixed-use development? One just, you know, did you see that? Is that an area where you're aligned?
Yeah.
So where do you, where did you see some differences, or where did you see some tensions when you looked at some of the concepts? Or did you see any, really? So I'm going to, I'll ask, you, so you had an idea about historic, and then maybe sort of farther out, the idea of maybe having some, some areas that are modernized?
Yeah, I think that it's a good way to, um, honor the people who, it's, to have balance, but just honor people who really want to keep that small-town charm, which we have so much of that in the central district. Um, but we also have areas of our city that are modernizing, that, um, we are getting more industry, more development, um, more families moving here, and they want amenities, and they want to be close to shopping, and grocery, and dockers, and, you know, so just kind of gearing our growth towards those corridors, where, you know, that's like newer Hendersonville as opposed to historic. But then we're also, you know, dedicating this historic area to maintaining this like cozy charm.
Yeah.
And you can be modernizing with charm, um, as well.
Mayor, were you going to jump in?
Oh, I was just going to say, uh, with connectivity of sidewalks and walking paths and things like that, I know if, if there, a development goes in, the developer has to put in sidewalks there, but then you've got these stretches that are not contiguous, and we, I think maybe we may have to put the money in and buy the right of way and put those connections in, because it might be thirty-five years before now the development goes in and makes that connection.
And you were talking about like those sidewalks, kind of, you know, where, where it was like outsider.
Yeah, where it ends, um.
I agree.
You know, and we, if we want it to be walkable, we may have to put those connections in ourselves, rather than waiting for something to develop and then make the developer put it in.
Or we some of the requirements for the developer to encourage them to do it at the same point.
Any, any other tensions that you saw, or different ideas that came out as you all were looking at?
I feel like we were all pretty aligned.
Now, of course, since you, you know, this is the big picture, you know? It's always the nitty-gritty things that can, can be tougher. Um, from this exercise, did you, was there anything that you learned as you thought about it? Or drove around, Jerry, you found some new street names and?
Yeah, I know, Dairy Street down.
I mean, when you, yeah, so when you, when you just went through this exercise, was there anything you learned or re-learned about how you're, how you're growing right now? Things that you didn't know?
The market is not waiting for us. The market is happening. You know, so like, for example, with some of those areas, if, if we want it to be denser, we've got to change. People just, they're just going to start building, buy a piece of land, start building. Whomever that might, whether it's Housing Assistance or a private person. So if we, if we want to make more density a requirement, we have to act now, because the market is not going to wait for us.
I think that the challenge we have is what we've seen. We want to approve more density, and the people who live around there are talking about the greedy developers and the traffic, and how can you do this to us? We have to have our, our reasons and, um, I know some of the emails I've gotten have been, don't you listen to the people?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
I, I think Barbara, one of the things, I say we, this is not just the council, this is, I, I would say probably local government, is something is too much, and something is not enough, and something is in the sweet spot.
Yeah.
Whatever that is. For the people that want to build anything, and the people that want to build nothing, they're not part of the discussion. Yeah, I would say, those are not part, but the reality, I think maybe this is something we should take on ourselves, and, and you know, we have our presentations in the fall that we'll be doing. Um, but to make the point that, okay, the neighborhoods, the historic neighborhoods, they're not going to be, the new neighborhoods aren't going to be built that way. That's why they're historic. Um, doesn't mean that we need, um, you know, neighborhoods that, the phrase we do use in cookie cutter, as far as like, you know, the same thing over and over and over again. And, and I, and I don't know, I don't know the answer to how to do this, but somehow or another, we need to find a way to talk to our constituency and say, look, we're going to have to make some adjustments here for the twenty-first century Hendersonville, and let's figure out that density level that we're going to be, have as many people as possible comfortable with, and that's the direction, and I, I guess I'm feeling that's what we're here to do today, is figure out what that is. Even if the roads aren't necessarily built yet, with the idea that we know we need to fix that. Um, or we keep thumping around at trying to figure out what it is, and then it's over. Because the builders have all come in. But I do think one thing is clear from today's discussion, because we got the nice version, the developers are meeting in another room somewhere else in America, and they're like, that market is hot as fire, we got to get in it. And so from that point of view, I do think we can make demands of developers. Not aesthetic demands, but demands of developers that maybe we couldn't make twenty years ago, because everybody wants to be in here. And, and I think we're, we're within our right to do that, because we are such a hot market. We know developers are going to be coming. And I, I think, um, I'm not saying, I guess it's a subjective decision of whether or not it's reasonable or unreasonable, but we can sort of decide, okay, it's not the twenty, it's not the nineteen nineties, it's the twenty twenties. And this twenty twenty Hendersonville, these are the things that, the design, uh, design standards, the, the density standards that we're going to try to meet. And I think we can demand that. And I think where one developer may get turned away, another developer, from what they've said, they're lining up, ready to come to Henderson County, or Western North Carolina.
Yeah, just to open that up, other reactions to what Jerry said?
I mean, I had the same thought, that I think because we are such a hot commodity, I think that's what I read my thing, that we're a hot commodity in a desirable area, we can be, the demand is there for us. So I think, within the parameters that we have, we can be a little bit more selective on the things that we want to see and have. And, um, we even heard that whenever we talked to Holly Springs, one of the things that they wished they had done differently was be more selective. And so I think, that was like my number one takeaway from that conversation, was that, yes, we do need the housing right now, the market's not waiting for us, but if we're reactionary instead of proactive, I think that's where we're going to run into the issues with some of these other places who are a few years ahead of us, you know, are having pitfalls.
Yeah.
In the conversation of balance, also, while we do need affordable housing, what is labeled, you know, thirty percent or lower, there is still a massive need for more housing outside of that realm. And so, you know, being, um, considerate when we're making those, um, votes about, you know, approving homes that are outside maybe our comfort range, or, you know, what we consider the affordable range, but are still homes that my friends are buying, four hundred thousand dollar homes, who are working-class adults, who have college degrees, who are, you know, wanting a slightly larger home in a nice subdivision. Um, and so, you know, they're not wealthy people. They, they work their behinds off, they have student loans, they, you know, but that's what their level of comfort is. And so I think we need to keep that in mind too, that there are people who are moving here who want to live in that aspect too. And so just keeping that balance for everybody, and not just kind of only focusing on one, one type of development or growth than the other.
Do you think?
I don't think it's a difference between affordable, still affordable housing and workforce housing, because you, in, um, affordable housing, you have a one income. Whereas in that workforce, um, you have a two-income family. Most of the time, affordable housing is a one-income family. It's a, it's probably a parent and children. So I, I just think that it's, it's different.
You look like you have a question, maybe?
Oh, I just was confused a little, I didn't understand the, is there a definition of that, as far as who, who lives in?
So there, there is no really clear, the, the word workforce and affordable are used sometimes interchangeably. So there's, there's a variety, you heard Ashlyn talk about, um, folks that maybe be, maybe are sixty percent or less of the median income. Those are the, those households, affordable housing in that realm is, is the low, um, low-income tax credit. Also, folks that are living in what used to be traditional, um, housing authority. Uh, the traditional is really, in some cases, it's thirty percent of the median income or less. So you've got kind of this thirty percent or less is, is living in traditional, um, affordable ha, um,
kind of this thirty percent or less is, is living in traditional, um, affordable ha- um, housing authority, federal housing, the old federal hu- housing model. Sixty and less more likely are gonna be qualifying for the vouchers, qualifying for the low-income tax credits. I think when you hear the term workforce housing, that is more likely eighty percent of the median income to the hundred and twenty percent of the median income.
But it's not dependent on family size is the definition?
Well, the, no, it's not, it's dependent on income and, um...
Right, okay. That's what I was confused about, sorry. And what percentage of the homes that were in demand, um, 'cause I think they said, we're like, we need, we need like twenty-five hundred currently, what percentage of those were in that, that area? Do you recall that number?
I think it was in the poll and report, I think he had.
Yeah.
It was like over a thousand of those.
One hundred in the rental.
Yeah. Yeah. So there was eleven hundred in the rental needs and then I think there was like thirteen hundred-ish or maybe twelve hundred in the purchasing.
Yeah, 'cause they had, he had two for the, for sale and it was like split fifty-fifty, I feel like.
Yeah.
So what, just going back to this question of density, when, you know, people were, you said that having some more density is gonna be important in the future, what would be from, you know, from the discussions today, what would you see, say the reasons are? You know, when someone says, "Well, why should, why should we be more, have more density in Hendersonville?" What would you say?
Well, I guess because we have a lack of space. We only have so many pieces of land that we can put houses on or apartments on or, or whatever else. And we don't wanna, as they said earlier, we don't wanna sprawl it everywhere because now we're gonna be creating even more transportation issues than we had before. And so, we have no choice but to do density. Not only does it have the cost, but also because we just have a lack of space, we can only get so big.
Well, and I'll go along with that. I mean, I think it's safe to say that when we drive out to the city of Hendersonville, we like same fields and apple orchards. You know, driving over here today, you know, I was like, wow, sometimes I forget how quickly I get out to an apple orchard here. And I think if we, if we go with, continue with urban or suburban sprawl, whatever way you wanna refer to it, um, that aspect of Henderson County will be lost. You know, we, we don't have the term, we don't use the term greenbelt here in Hendersonville, but there is a sort of an understanding that, um, when you drive around this county, you get to see agriculture or at least, you know, places that don't have, that are not built up. And so one way to preserve that is to make the places that are built up denser in the sense of that. And that's why I like, I think townhomes are the best way to go because they're, they look good and they're as tight as you can possibly get them. Um, and I agree that, I, I mean, I think people would enjoy living there because a lot of people that move here have moved from a place that had townhomes. So they're, they're accustomed to that. It's not like they've never seen them before.
And pushing the conservation easements for those green spaces.
Yeah, I, I agree. Yes.
Farms and things like that.
So density helps create that sense of place that you like. It helps, um, you know, you have limited land space for, you have to do it. It helps to manage the costs that you'll have to pay for your infrastructure.
When, um, when, when we talk about affordable housing too, a lot of, and I, I met with Housing Authority, maybe Jeff and I did one year and a half ago, and, um, 'cause I didn't realize that they had just undertook that huge loan, right, on the properties that are, um, right off of, um, Four Seasons. And my thinking was that it would be a great opportunity to redevelop it into more affordable housing, except going up. Because, you know, right now, there's a, I don't know, just an example, a five-acre parcel of land that accommodates seven to eight families versus if, when these buildings come of age and we would enter into a situation where they would either sell the land or redevelop it, that would give us an opportunity to redevelop the land, but go up so that we can accommodate more families in a smaller area. But then we can also have, like, we're right on the trail, um, which eventually should connect to Community College and, you know, it's central. And so to be, for me, to be able to, it's like more paying for your buck because then we can accommodate more families on the affordable housing level, um, without purchasing new land or acquiring new land, but it's already existing land that we could just redevelop.
So you sound pretty clear on, you know, why, why density is something to consider. Again, it sounds like you're aligned.
Small urban density.
Is it trademarked, right?
I'm just saying that, yeah, I mean, we're not talking about downtown actual intensity level.
Right, yeah. Um, asking about the session today, so you had three sessions, you had the first session on sense of place, the second session on housing, the third session on transportation. You know, just what did you take away from the sessions today as you think about how you wanna grow? What were, you know, what, you said, for example, when you had the session, Holly Springs said, you know, planning ahead, you know, there were some things that you took away from those conversations. What'd you take away from the sessions today that you think are gonna help you as a plan for growth?
I don't, we are not metro enough to have a lot of public transportation. My mom uses the Apple Country Transit every day. She's in a unique situation. Um, so.
That's a good boon.
Not here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But my mom is not like most other people that are living here in Hendersonville. So I, I think, you know, transit-oriented development with the idea that people are gonna drive their cars is the reality. And that's why I asked the question about the bond. I think that there are some things that maybe are drastic changes, but we need to make, while I recognize, I think it was Mr. Winkler that said, "Hey, you know, a little traffic coming through town, it's not a bad thing." I, I recognize that. It's easy to say in this meeting here, but I'm not sure everybody else feels the same way. 'Cause they're like, "I came to Hendersonville 'cause I used to sit in traffic for thirty minutes getting to work." So I, I think anything that we, I think that our unique situation is we're the crosscut, the twenty-five and sixty-four. And I think to maintain our small-town field, we need to be proactive in transportation, whether it's our own money or what. But I don't, I think waiting on DOT is going to miss the boat.
And be proactive in order to, to do what?
To create projects that we think we need, um, and go for them, you know?
Jerry, I one hundred percent support that.
Yeah.
I had a meeting back with them about ways of, you know, leveraging bonds and that type of thing. And I one hundred percent support making that investment in our community. I think the people that live here wanna hear that we have, we are solving, that we are offering solutions.
Right.
Because we can continue like hitting the can down the road, blaming it on DOT all we want, um, but the fact is, is if we continue to just complain and do nothing about it, then we're not creating any solutions either. So.
And as far as I know, I don't, that's the only way I know that we can do something.
Yeah, I support that.
Is we float a bond and tell people, you know, I don't know what, how we'll do, how that affects the tax rate, but this part of your tax rate is gonna pay for some projects to hopefully make your drive around town easier, you know?
Other, other takeaways from today? I know, it was a lot. So we started, so we started, the fir-, the first was around sense of place and parks and that conversation. And you all talked about green space in your, you know, in your vision for the future. Anything from that first discussion you all?
I mean, yeah, I, I mean, we've talked about this before. As I know, I've specifically talked about it with John. I mean, I think we have to get a Parks and Rec department. Maybe we, we don't have sports.
I, I had lunch with him.
You had lunch?
Mark. Yes, gentleman along here.
Mark, March.
No, are we?
That's our new park, there he is.
Are we?
Yep.
So we, because, I mean, just because it's not fair to put all that on public works, right?
Okay.
So we are talking about how we wanna add more green space, we wanna do these conservation easements. And I know at least two parks that I'm trying to get started. And so, that's not fair to put all that on public works. We need a dedicated, whether it's a person or two people, I don't know. Um, we need a dedicated department to do that. And I think that was one thing that was pretty abundantly to me. I don't even really need to have a conversation about it. Um, but I also think overall, the biggest thing I took away was we really need to sit down and look at this map and say, "This is where we wanna see some, um, mixed-use development along Spartanburg Highway out here. This is where we'd really like to see conservation happen. This is where we'd really like to see, you know, the overall plan." Because then you could take those things and go, "Okay, well, if we wanna build development here, this is the road that we're gonna have to change." And looking at it from that bird's eye view to, that's the only way we're gonna accomplish all the things we wanna accomplish. Because right now, it just kind of feels like things are coming in. And while we don't have a lot of space to develop, I think we can be a little more proactive on where it is. We wanna see that stuff happen so that it doesn't keep springing up on people.
Right, surprising.
'Cause I think that's why the, the knee-jerk community reaction is always like, "Ah!"
Yeah. So your manager's smiling at that comment, I think. Anything else from that first, um, conversation?
I, I'm gonna follow, I, I mean, I, I was not trying to pin, pin, um, Judith.
Yeah, Judy Francis.
Judy Francis down. Um, but it does seem to me that if we really want to try to get a part of grant, like, we can't just send in the project. Like, whether it's us or someone, we need to send some people to meet with some people and say, "This is why this is a great project for you to support." Because just the way she described it, I told her, I said, "It sounds like people reading essays for kids, people coming into college. You know, what is the, what is the flavor of the day this year?" And it seems to me that we need to make some face time with some of those folks because, you know, many times that part of grant is the difference between whether we do it or not. You know, having that extra, however much money is exactly what we need to subsidize the project so that we can do it. So I, I, that's one takeaway I had, talking to her.
Yeah, I think particularly looking at parks, looking around the city and trying to spread it out, um, 'cause we don't have anything east and we're getting a lot of development east. Is there someplace there that we could, um, look at, at buying and putting a park in out there?
So then, then we moved to affordable housing. That was a lot of data, a lot of, a lot of information. What were your, what are your takeaways as you think about that session, that discussion? In what way?
I mean, yeah, I come back to the quote that Barbara, I think you said, when you read the minutes from Mayor Nehof and what, I forget what year it was, "We have a problem with housing in Hendersonville." Twenty-five years ago, yeah, um.
It's not gonna go away.
Yeah. I, I don't, I, I don't see it going away. Um, but I agree that we have a responsibility, I think, to work towards having places that at least our employees can live around this area and work here, but for no other reason than that. Though I think there's more reasons than that, but that we have a place where you can work here and you can also live here.
Other, uh, takeaways from the housing conversation?
I feel like I have a lot of thoughts. I'm not really sure I can, like, put them together and get them out my mouth right now. Debbie, we take a lot of talking time and you, I don't, you feel like we can't like hear you and.
Yeah, thank you.
Feel free to speak up and talk because you're.
I did it today. I'm in a learning curve, but I did it today.
I did think it was interesting that Ashlyn and Brian, being a for-profit and a not-for-profit, shared similar concerns, right, with the way the development is going and the upfront costs that they have and, um, the infrastructure and, um, I still wasn't, I mean, a thirty-five to forty percent profit margin on any project is like awesome. I don't know too many other industries that are really like, feel like that's my bottom line. I know that they have a, a high risk, especially after the Great Recession, but I don't know. I, I, I think we need, the other overall thing I took from this was partnerships. The partnerships between the private developer and the nonprofit and us. And partnerships between NC DOT and NPO and us. And so like, all of that was, everybody needs to talk to each other so that we can come up with a solution. 'Cause I know I've talked to a couple of developers that were like, "I would love to help with some sort of workforce housing project. I can't do it on my own though." And so how can we get everybody to sit down and talk about it?
And you've got some examples. You had a photo of one, right?
I did.
You did?
About workforce, oh, well, I mean, that, that was, yeah, that was housing assistance.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I think another thing coming out of today is, uh, we need to find out from a legal point of view, how can we incentivize, I agree with you, um, when you said, Ken, that, you know, everybody's not a workforce or affordable housing. So, you know, developers that have, have both of them in there. And how do we incentivize the part that obviously is not making as big a profit, that would be the affordable housing. How do we incentivize these developers to do that? And legally, I don't know all the ways that we can, but there, I'm sure there's somebody, some creative legal mind that's come up with a way to incentivize that.
Yeah, and I definitely think there's ways of doing it. Like, even some, I forget, somebody was talking about, they were driving through a neighborhood and some of them were habit had and some of them weren't, and you couldn't even tell the difference. And, you know, like, again, some of our subdivisions have great opportunity to, you know, do either some duplex-type units or townhouse-type units to squeeze in a little more density, make it still feasible for the developer to do the project. And then, I don't know, maybe there are granite countertops in those townhouses and they have less, you know, luxury items inside, but then do bring it down to a price point. And, and then it can still be a congruent neighborhood and still allow people to have a neighborhood feel, even though they're not buying the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, they're buying the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar, um, townhouse. But everybody lives in a community and that's part of building diversity in a community as well, so.
And, and you can make an argument, that is the culture of Hendersonville because we're fortunate, you know, Housing Authority in our town is scattered throughout our town. Yeah, so it's not a, you ride by Housing Authority neighborhood, it's no big deal, you know? And there's certainly, you know, a precedent that, okay, if you're gonna build a neigh-, a neighborhood, then you need to take that into account when you're building a neighborhood.
Anything on transportation? That was an easy one, right? It's only eight billion dollars.
I mean, we've talked about it many times.
I was.
The transportation, the transportation.
I was, I was trying to say, you know?
So we talked about it many times.
Yeah.
Didn't wanna get into transportation, but we're gonna have to. Like, the time is now before it gets too far out of control.
So, um, John, are we okay for a few more minutes?
Yeah, just a few more, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So one of the other big questions for you, so this is all leading towards the comprehensive plan. Maybe, John, you could say just a minute or two, just make sure everyone knows what a comprehensive plan is because we wanna get some guidance from you about what you wanna make sure you get out of that. And also, just maybe a little bit about the process that you wanna make sure you get through.
So, like, for that is, and Lou, you, I'm gonna let Lou talk about it. Come on up here, Lou, this is your baby. 'Cause they need to see your face, they need to see your face. This is.
Uh-oh. So, yeah, I mean, I, I, obviously a lot of what we talked about today, a lot of what you all talked about, uh, has the potential to be a part of a comprehensive plan or for the comprehensive plan to begin to indicate direction. And in fact, the comprehensive plan that we currently have does touch on a number of the elements that you all have talked about today. Um, one of the goals that, uh, I've been working through in terms of developing the RFP was, number one, to understand what we wanted that document to accomplish. And today was very insightful in terms of kind of identifying that. Um, but specifically, you know, what kinds of outcomes, what, what, what do we want each of those chapters to do and, and how involved are they going to be? I always think, because of Main Street, about things from a work plan perspective and the idea that, uh, the comprehensive plan is not something that we would adopt and then that you all would see only, uh, in reflection in rezoning requests and things like that, but that it would be coming back to you more regularly for sort of updates on action items. 'Cause much of what's in the current comprehensive plan is in fact goals and action items and strategies for addressing the issues and concerns that were identified back when it was first created, but weren't necessarily, you know, pursued over time. And so some of them remain undone. I imagine that some of them may in fact show up, uh, when we redo the comprehensive plan. But the goal then would be that perhaps quarterly or, or, uh, you know, some interim of time that we'd be coming back and reviewing, you know, here are the chapters that guide your land use decisions, but here are all the other elements that we've talked about in the development of the comprehensive plan, you know, parks and recs, the establishment of parks in multiple parks of the city or, you know, whatever it might be, transportation or corridor improvements, and here's where we are on those. Uh, so that it would become more of a, an action-oriented plan. Uh, so that would become more of a, an action oriented plan that helps guide staff, uh, in our interactions with other community members, and is a document that, you know, ultimately would be used beyond just the planning department. So obviously, there is a component that's very much driving how we review a rezoning or a development request. Um, and we want to focus, uh, you know, acutely on how that piece of the puzzle works, and that that translates into the zoning ordinance. So that's another piece that I would sort of talk about, I think there's, there are categories in our zoning ordinance that, um, you know, I, I think they were likely created, you know, when the zoning ordinance was first adopted, and we've amended and added categories over time. But we haven't ever gone back through and said, is each of these zoning categories actually accomplishing the types of outcomes that, that we wanna see? So, I'll use, I'll pick on C three, uh, which is our highway commercial. Um, you know, it's, it's almost to the point of being boilerplate zoning ordinance language, um, so, and yet, it's all over the city. Uh, so, you know, those kinds of things where you look at what your future land use, what you all wanna see happen, and then look at your zoning ordinance and say whether or not that's actually accomplishing it, so that's sort of the one piece. And I think the others are kind of the other chapters, and how those play out. He didn't tell me I was gonna have to do this, so hopefully I did right there. But I do think, in terms of, uh, where we're going with that, that RFP has been underway, we've met with our long-term planning subcommittee with the planning board, uh, to start to talk about that process and what it would look like. Uh, it would involve an outside consultant, and so the idea is that we would use the RFP to kind of establish what our goals are with the comprehensive plan, and then reach out and start to look for somebody who can help us do that. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so just again, any questions about, um, about the comp plan, or anything you wanna make sure, guidance you wanna give staff as they put this together and think about the process and the end product?
Um, when it, when we're talking about affordability, uh, we had talked about last year during our, uh, planning retreat, offering credit repair and credit counseling to our residents, and, uh, we had a meeting about that with, uh, Bank of America, I believe?
Yeah, Mr. Dale.
Mr. Dale, and they have a, an amazing program that they go into communities and offer, and it's a financial literacy program. Uh, and I think that that is really helpful for a lot of people to help prepare themselves for financial literacy, and, um, maybe being able to purchase a home, or, you know, getting into some credit repair and those types of things, a lot of credit can be repaired very easily, with just sending letters and making small corrections, and so I think that that's something that we should continue to offer as a community to help better educate our residents. Um, and then, you know, we talk about like the voucher programs and those types of things too, and I know some of this is not something we can directly control locally, but, um, you know, so we talk a lot about subsidizing up to the rent price, but, you know, are we talking about wages also? Like, wages ultimately need to increase, and, um, you know, we have done an exceptional job, I feel like, as a city, identifying that and increasing the wages for the people that we can directly affect, but then that still leaves out, like, the teachers, um, the nurses, um, the other healthcare support workers, CNAs, you know, those types of employees, and we, we have a lot of those workers in our community, and, um, I think too, just continuing to advocate with our elected officials at higher state levels, uh, about the need for those types of things, and, you know, I know in the healthcare industry, across the board, we're continuing to see fee cuts by Medicare and Medicaid and different insurances, which then cuts revenue for hospitals, um, like institutions, nursing homes, and those types of things, and then, but then those organizations are still expected to become and continue to be competitive in the workforce industry. And so, you know, continuing to advocate for better pay, and, you know, where we can, that also kind of helps meet that, that gap, and not just depending on a subsidy, because, you know, people have the ability to go out and work and get jobs and earn money. And, you know, I do just think that the wages need to be, continue to be adjusted up in that aspect, for people to accommodate, you know, the inflation and rising cost.
I feel like Jennifer, if you remember something that also I've only talked to Matthews and Holly Springs, both of them mentioned how important it was for us as municipal elected officials to be talking to elected officials above us, and Holly Springs said they have a legislative action committee, and I, I feel like we've reached a point in our community that we should probably look at doing something like that too. Because there are a lot of things that are impacting how we are able to solve some of these problems, and it, it could be incredibly frustrating, I know from a community member's standpoint, but as an elected official, and I'm sure as our staff members, to be essentially handcuffed when you're trying to solve problems. And so if we were to have some sort of committee, or we have a couple designated council members that would go and talk to various elected officials, I think that would really help keep communication lines open.
So, John, I think we've covered the questions that we wanted to, um, just reflecting from today, given you a chance to talk about the homework that you did, um, turn it back over to you, I think we're just final comments.
Yeah, just final comments, so thank you for today, um, I, hopefully it's been helpful, um, listening to these thoughts, and I know we've given you a lot of information, but, the idea was that we were building this foundation, because we are in this period of growth, that we could give you, um, again, just general educational information, and the notebooks were put together in a way that this is the information that you can use, you can refer to as you go forth, I mean, we can, and we can update it from time to time, and you've got Patrick Bowen's data that he had, and that'll be good for, you know, a year or so. You've got the, the transportation plan that is about, you know, that we have from, uh, that'll go to twenty forty-five, now we can update that as the NPO does, and there's some articles in there from the School of Government, that, you know, Jerry, your question about short-term rentals, there's some, there's a blog in there, those,
Yeah, I read that.
Those, those things are in there, um, but, you know, and so that just gives you an idea, we have those resources and we can make them available. Keep your notebook, you can refer back to it, um, there's other sources from time to time that we can provide to you, and we'll, we'll be happy to do that, so. Realize that this is a long game, this is about, you know, Hunter started out today talking about San Antonio, Chattanooga, and Charleston, I mean, that, you know, it was a long game, right? It's, you know, in some cases, and so, while we need to get on some of these things because we are in this hot period now, a lot of this is, is creating a vision for the long term, so, um, it will take us a little bit of time to do that, but the idea is we're creating a long-term vision and long-term plan, so, and we, we can't be, we can't be everything to everybody, and I think that's important to remember too, is we take that away. Um, is there is, you know, right now, we're, we're, we're talking in the vacuum, and we had this conversation about vision and had this conversation. When we walk out these doors, the doors today, we will come back to reality, and Brian will tell us how much money we have and how much money we don't have, and so, and he's only back two days, so I can say it, so.
Just you are, you're good. You need a good bar graph.
Yeah, so, so just remember, just, just remember there's limitations to, to everything, and so we'll try to phase it in as the community grows, so. Um, I'm just gonna close with reading, um, a short paragraph, and that I think will kind of put a, a fine point on today. And it's from a book that I read, it's called, um, Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community, um, and, 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 and the book is really good, cause it talks about things not to do, and this is one of the things that, I mean, that is, the theme of the book is what you shouldn't do, and, and, and how you should make your community a great place, and this, the author, this is in his prologue, it says, "Communities have to make conscious choice if they want to be successful or not. Communities have to analyze their own strengths and weaknesses. Communities have to determine what it is they can and must do to be successful. Communities have to be, um, have to believe they can be successful, and that their plan, and in this case, I'm talking about the comprehensive plan, will make them successful, and that they must follow through on that plan, and communities have to believe that they can achieve their goal with, and, and, and in this case, he said with or without government participation, but obviously, we're talking about government. So I just think, to end of the day, um, as we develop this plan, it's about setting that vision and, and carrying through with it, and, and making the community, um, the plan can change and evolve, but we just need to set that vision, um, and set a path to meet that vision, so. I appreciate your time and dedication today, um, and Mayor, we're gonna get out of here before four o'clock.
Thank you.
So, I can keep my job for another little while, so, um, so, uh, thank y'all, and I appreciate you, have a good day.
Thank you.